Thanks, how are you doing?
I'm tired.
Again, joining us, Jesse Cotton Blake as well. Good evening, staff, trustee Phillips joining us as well. Good evening, okay, so we are waiting on trustee Lada, trustee Cuevas and superintendent Duffy to join us. Welcome Superintendent Duffy. So let's get started, welcome to everybody who's watching from home, thank you for joining us tonight. I would like to start by calling our meeting to order on November 18, 2020, for a regular meeting of the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education. Welcome trustee Garcia Avila. Thank you all for joining us tonight, I hope that everyone is in good health and doing well. We continue to meet via Zoom for all district and board meetings as authorized by the Governor's Emergency Executive Order issued on March 17, 2020. The West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education will conduct board meetings via video teleconference until further notice. Thank you, please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, thank you. And I apologize if I'm running out of breath, I had seven parent teacher conferences today and my voice is running out a little bit, so I may need a little bit of support with the conversation as we continue on today. Again, welcome and thank you for joining us, I would like to share some basic instructions about how we will use Zoom today and involve members of the public, we'll be having live public comment via Zoom. It is our hope for members of the public to be able to participate and share their public comments with a board in a space conducive to respectful public forum for all. During the meeting, all board members and the superintendent will be on video throughout the board meeting. Staff members are also present and will be on video when they present. Members of the public will not be on video and will be muted throughout the meeting except for public comment when they have raised their hand on Zoom and are unmuted. In order to comment on an agenda item at tonight's meeting, members of the public should raise your hand by pressing the Raise Your Hand button on the Zoom app or by pressing star nine by telephone when the board reaches the item on which you want to comment. If you are calling in with your phone, when your name is called, press star six to unmute your phone. When we get to the item, a member of district staff will call your name. Comments will be restricted to the amount of time allocated by board policy. Your hand must be raised before the first speaker is done with their public comment on an agenda item. After the first comment is shared, there will be no additional raised hands on Zoom accepted for public comment besides the ones already raised. In order to be recognized to speak, you must be using a first and last name, thank you, now we will share these same directions in Spanish. Please note that the meeting agenda can also be translated on the webpage where it's posted by clicking on the button labeled English with a little globe icon next to it to translate the meeting agenda into multiple languages. And we also have interpretation services available via Zoom by clicking on the globe icon on Zoom. Superintendent Duffy, can we please have roll call?
Yes, President Hernandez Jarvis. Trustee Laura.
I don't think trustee Lada is here yet.
Okay, let's make sure, she might need to be let in, so let's make sure she can get in. Trustee Panas.
Present.
Trustee Phillips.
Here.
Trustee Cuevas.
I see that someone with a screen name as Val is here, but I'm not sure if that is Jesse Cuevas. If we could check, that would be great.
Trustee Garcia Avila.
Here.
Trustee Cotton Blake.
Here.
Great, so we are waiting for trustee Cuevas and trustee Laura to get in. Trustee Cuevas says the Val is her and she is here, she just texted me. So we'll make sure we get her formally, but sounds like she is with us and then we are just waiting for trustee Laura.
Great, thank you Superintendent Duffy. Okay, and I see, I don't see trustee, okay, I see trustee Cuevas, I see her screen in there. Okay, so Superintendent Duffy, do we have a report out of post session?
We do not.
Thank you. So board, we're at the item for agenda review and adoption. Are there any changes, items pulled that you would like or anything else that you would like to change before adopting the agenda?
President Hernandez Jarvis.
Justy Panas.
I would like to pull C4. Update on cash flow.
Noted, thank you. C4 is pulled.
We do have two items that may involve a lot of parent participation or student participation, I'm just not sure at this point, that would be the Lake item and the Summit Renewal petition, so those are two that may have multiple speakers, but I can't confirm that at this time.
Thank you Superintendent Duffy.
President Hernandez Jarvis, I would like, I would like to pull C2 and C6.
C2 and C6 and C2 is, C4 is update on cash flow, C2 is contracts and C6. Got it, thank you. For C2, it's all of the, all of the contracts?
I have a question about two of the contracts, so one is the youth code and the other one is the Infinity Contract.
Okay, so we can, we can just pull it and discuss it then at that point. Okay, so item C2, C4 and C6 have been pulled. I think that because in the agenda we have only two discussion items, we have the federal program monitoring that we want to hear first as a first item in discussion since we had to roll it over from the previous regular board meeting and then the next two items are the ones that Superintendent Duffy mentioned that may have large participation from public speakers, so maybe if we can adopt the changes and keep the rest of the agenda as is, so we can go through it in that order, that would be great, is there a motion?
So moved.
Move by trustee Panas, is there a second?
I'll say.
Second by trustee Phillips, and if we can have student trustees vote first, beginning with trustee Garcia Avila, trustee Cotton Blake, followed by trustee Lada, trustee Cuevas, trustee Panas, trustee Phillips and then myself.
Garcia Avila, yes.
Thank you, sorry.
Cotton Blake, yes.
Lada, yes.
Welcome trustee Lada. Trustee Cuevas, could you unmute? I'm not sure if trustee Cuevas has the, I think.
I'm here.
Are you here, okay, oh, I see you, excellent, okay, thank you.
Hernandez, yes.
Thank you, trustee Panas, yes, and trustee Cuevas, was that a yes as well to adopt the agenda changes?
Yes.
Thank you, Hernandez, oh, sorry Phillips, trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you, Hernandez Jarvis, yes, so the motion passes unanimously to adopt the agenda with the changes of C2, C4 and C6 pulled. Thank you, thank you board, so now we can go to our next item which is B6, approval of minutes from the November 6, 2020 board meeting. Are there any corrections or clarifications to be made on this set of minutes or is there a motion to approve them as they are?
President Hernandez, I had one correction. In the very last paragraph for section D adjournment, it says that the President Hernandez Jarvis will work with staff and Mr. Friedman to negotiate the selected firm in order to complete a contract to bring to the board for ratification of the December 16th meeting instead of December 18th meeting.
Instead of December 16th, it says December 18th?
Instead of 18, it says 16, that's the very last paragraph before section D adjournment.
I see it, thank you.
With that, I'll move the minutes.
And trustee Panas, can you clarify that one more time, it's just November 18th, right, that's the only change that you said?
Yes, that's the, yes, it should be November 18. Not December 16.
Got it, thank you.
With that change, I'll move the minutes.
Is there a second? Second by trustee Cuevas, thank you, can we please take a vote?
Garcia Avila, yes.
Lada, yes.
Cuevas, yes.
Hernandez, yes.
Phillips, yes.
Hernandez Jarvis, yes, the motion to adopt minutes with the changes, with a change suggested by trustee Panas for correction from the December 16th to November 18th date on the last paragraph before adjournment passes unanimously. Up next, we have the student board member report and trustee Garcia Avila and trustee Cotton Blake, we moved it up, we moved up this so that you can have a chance to speak before we go later into the meeting and then there's not really a lot of time before you have to head off, so thank you to the agenda setting team for helping to lead this as well.
Stephanie, you can go ahead if you'd like.
Okay, sick. I don't have much report, I've been taking care of myself a lot recently, I feel like over the years my mental health has declined a lot and I haven't paid a really close attention to it and I've been doing so much in the community and it's been really draining and I forgot really how to take care of myself, so I've been doing a lot of reading, doing a lot of journaling, doing a lot of meditating, I've been working out and I'm super proud of myself.
Thank you so much for sharing that and thank you so much for centering also the importance of mental health, we really appreciate it. Thank you trustee Garcia Avila. Trustee Cotton Blake?
Yes, good evening WCCUSD family. This past weekend, I had the opportunity to attend and engage in the Race and Equity workshops that were hosted by the Office of African American Student Achievement. They were giving out some extremely strong and important information regarding race and equity and how to build as a community and the community we have here in the district. I also assisted in hosting the second speaker series in conjunction with the Office of African American Student Achievement, which was featuring Dr. Shiroki Hawley, so that was a great experience as well with a lot of strong information for not just staff but also students like myself. And it's college season, I'm excited to tell you that I've started submitting my college applications. I've also attended quite a few college informational sessions as a rising scholar with the Young Scholars Program. I can't express the importance of the Young Scholars Program and programs like it to help youth connect with colleges and learn more about our options and opportunities in the future. And I am proud to know that WCCUSD is committed to continuing to fund this very important program. Now, also pertaining to my studies, we're nearing the end of our first semester and now as a senior, it's truly set in that I will be graduating this year as I took my senior portraits yesterday. So we're moving forward and I love to see it, so thank you.
Thank you so much trustee Cotton Blake for sharing that and congratulations to, you know, on this, on this year being very special even with everything else going on, finding ways to continue to push and make things better for yourself and for everybody too, thank you. Thank you both, thank you trustee Garcia Avila and trustee Cotton Blake for sharing your student reports and please continue to take care of yourself and of yourselves and do, you know, all that you can to continue to improve our communities and support and give back, thank you. So up next, we just finished our student board member report, we have resolution number 47, 2021, resolution of commendation to Valerie Cuevas for dedicated service to students, staff and the community. And Mr. Superintendent Duffy, would you like to to introduce this item?
Absolutely, it would be my pleasure to introduce the item, so tonight is the last board meeting of trustee Val Cuevas. One meeting before the last meeting of three of our other trustees as the board transitions and the new board starts officially December 16th. Because trustee Cuevas is not able to join us on December 9th, which is our closing date of the current board, we are honoring her this evening for her six years of service on the board. So I'm going to read this resolution in honor of trustee Cuevas. Whereas the West Contra Costa Unified School District covers the cities of Richmond, El Cerrito, San Pablo, Pinole and Hercules and the unincorporated areas of Bayview, Montalban Manor, East Richmond Heights, El Sabrante, Kensington, North Richmond and Tara Hills and whereas West Contra Costa Unified is a middle-sized urban Bay Area school district serving approximately 30,000 children, 75% of whom are English learners, low income or foster youth students. And whereas in 2014 Valerie Cuevas was the first Chicana of indigenous Mexican-American descent publicly elected to serve on the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education. And whereas in 2017, she became the first person of Latinx ancestry to serve as president of the Board of Education in the history of the district and at a time when one out of every two WCCUSD students shares Latino ancestry, new generations of LGBTQ youth are standing against intolerance and leadership representation matters as children's early experiences shape what they imagine to be possible. And whereas as a firm believer in the innate potential for all children to succeed, she championed increased district funding directly to school sites via the LCFF for increased academic tutoring, school community outreach workers and school library resources. And whereas Black and Brown youth deserve equal opportunity to thrive in West County schools, she successfully advocated for comprehensively designed restorative social emotional learning supports for students and training for school staff through the passage of the district's positive school climate policy. And whereas student and teacher success are fundamentally intertwined, she chose to increase positive investments in staff effectiveness via teaching and learning professional development, competitive compensation and new academic programs such as the Stige Elementary redesign, the Mandarin School, the International Academy, the International Baccalaureate Diploma Program and whereas her strong commitment to public accountability in the WCCUSD School Construction and Bond Program resulted in the creation of the Community Driven Facilities Master Plan update that ensured the rebuild of the Michelle Obama and Lake Elementary Schools, identified and directed funds for immediate needs across every school in the district, audited and implemented an effective facilities program management program and adopted more cost-effective design-build practices. And whereas driven by an unshakable faith in American democracy and the political enfranchisement of all parts of the district community, she increased civic engagement and public participation in school district governance issues via support for moving to trustee area elections, the creation of a board level governance committee, the establishment of the citizens budget transparency tool and the inclusion of more students, family, parents and educators in the district local accountability plan process. And whereas an ardent supporter of diversity, equity and inclusion of all WCCUSD students, families and school communities, she championed board-approved resolutions honoring Native American Heritage Month, LGBTQ Pride Month and a safe haven resolution in support of students who are undocumented, Muslim or persons of color and their families and protocols on immigration and customs enforcement access to schools. And whereas as an external ambassador of the local West County community, she was appointed the chairperson and led the California School Boards Association 2020 Annual Education and Trade Show Planning Committee, represented WCCUSD on the CSBA Delegate Assembly Region 7A from 2018 to 2020 and served on the California Latino School Board Association Board of Directors. And whereas as a collaborative servant leader, she served on all WCCUSD board committees during her two-term tenure of service, especially when requested by the board president, including governance, school governance, safety and facilities. And now therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education, students, faculty, parents, staff and community extend to Valerie Cuevas our sincere appreciation for the last six years of dedicated service. And I will say on a personal note, it's been an absolute pleasure to work with trustee Cuevas over these years through my entire tenure in West Contra Costa Unified School District, working through really tough, challenging, complex issues with trustee Cuevas, agreeing, disagreeing, pushing each other to make the right decisions in the best interest of our community, so thank you trustee Cuevas, thank you for your service, thank you for your passion, energy, commitment. You've definitely made a mark here in the West Contra Costa Unified School community and I know the families, the students, the community and I'm sure your fellow trustees, thank you very much for your service, so it's been an absolute pleasure and you know, we've got one more board meeting with you tonight, so we will, we will enjoy it and move through our items together. And with that, I'll turn it over to our other board members and then we can see if there's public comment.
Thank you so much Superintendent Duffy and thank you trustee Cuevas, thank you profoundly, I would like to give an opportunity first to have our board, you know, say something to you, share what they want to share with you and then have the public also share their, their comments with, with you as well for your service. If we can begin with trustee Garcia Avila? Thank you.
Okay, cool, I don't want to cry but like Ms. Cuevas, you are such an inspiration, I remember looking up to you when I was smaller, you know, as a little LGBTQ little kid, just imagining being like you, you know, you stand up for what you believe in and you are such an inspiration to me and I don't want to cry and I'm just so happy that I got to work with you even if it was like for two, three months, it's been such a great time, so thank you so much.
Thank you trustee Garcia Avila, thank you so much. Justy Cotton Blake?
I just want to say in the short time that we've worked together with each other, what stood out to me the most about you, you, you've always been on the side of right. You've always been on the side of the students, you've always wanted what's best and what will grow for the students rather than a political agenda or anything like that, you've always wanted what's best for us and that really stood out to me as many adults I don't get to see nowadays with that same kind of mentality, so that really inspired me to know what I wanted to do and how I will support my own community, so I want to say thank you for that.
Thank you trustee Cotton Blake. Justy Lada?
Yes. Trustee Cuevas, I just want to say it's been an honor to be able to have served with you, I consider you to be a real role model. That's the kind of thing I look for in a person, is this a role model for young people and for leadership and you definitely have all of those qualities and I wish all the best for you and we'll stay in touch for sure. Thank you.
Thank you trustee Lada. Justy Panas?
Trustee Cuevas, it has been such an honor to serve with you. You are all for the kids. I have patterned so much of my thinking and behavior based on what you have been modeling and it's been a wonderful experience. You're just an amazing leader and in fact, you know, I'm on the school board now because I was so enthusiastic when I first campaigned for you, for you when you first ran and when the next election came up, I decided I want to be on the board with that person and so you're a large part of the reason that I'm on the school board, so thank you so much, it's been an inspirational time for me.
Thank you trustee Panas, trustee Phillips?
Trustee Cuevas, I would like to thank you for your years of service to this district. I learned a lot working with you and I wish you the best in your future endeavors.
Justy Phillips, thank you, trustee Cuevas, I, I think that your leadership speaks for itself, I think that it has been outstanding and you have shown at every turn and every tough decision that you really are here for the kids and no matter, you know, any other forces, external things that are like here, vote for this, vote for that, you stay grounded on what's at the core of what you believe in and what you have shown day in and day out and the honesty that you bring to this work too and passion to this kind of service. And I just, I've told you before and I'm going to say it again, you were one of the first people who took me seriously not just as like, oh, this little mom, oh, this little teacher, but like she's not a kid because I had, I had adults tell me, you know, like, you're too young, you're too green and it's like, what does that even mean? Like, when is it a good time to, to be involved in, in public service if people keep on telling you you're too green and you don't see people like you? So I, I think that you were one of the first people who really took that inspirational role very seriously and took people seriously from the get-go, no matter their background or who they are or their language. So I really thank you for that and I'm so excited to hear about everything else that you will continue to do to make this world better for kids and for everybody. So thank you, thank you so much and would you like to have an opportunity to speak right now or would you like to hear the public first and then take it all in and speak from that, what would you prefer?
I don't want to hold up the show anymore than I already am, so let's, let's go ahead and move the program along, let's, let's hear from the public and then we can move on.
Thank you trustee Cuevas and after we hear from the public, it would be great if you wanted to, to share anything with us, thank you so much. Mr. Aurelio?
Yeah, so we have seven hands raised, it's up to eight. I'm going to suggest two minutes because it's growing right now.
Let's do two minutes, please.
We're, we're over 10 already, so the first speaker is going to be Carolina Zani. We're, we're over ten already. So the first speaker is going to be Carolina Zani. You may unmute and begin your comments. Is Zani? Or Zani? Are you able to unmute? Carolina?
I think, I don't think we can hear clearly.
She is. She's not unmuted.
Maybe we can move on and then if the person.
I will come back to that one. Leslie Reckler, I'm going to. Let's see if you can unmute. There you go.
Hello, good evening, board member Cuevas. I want to thank you deeply for your time and dedication to serving the students and families of this district. And I, I don't know if you know, but one of, I mean, I just wanted to bring to your attention just one of the things that really strikes me about your time as being a trustee is that I've been able to watch you really grow over these years. And I think you came onto this board maybe with some perceptions or thinkings about how things work here. You know, what our values were, and I think I've really seen you change your mind about some certain things. And I really appreciate that. And I think you walk away richer from the experience, and I certainly walk away richer knowing you. We mailed to your house a PTA certificate, so I don't know if it showed up, but it is on its way. And the customary bouquet of flowers, and those unfortunately were fake. And it didn't occur to me until after. I was like, I could have sent real flowers. What a ding dong. So look out for that. And I'm wishing you the best, and I'm hoping that you'll check in on us from time to time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Reckler.
Our next speaker is Roxanne Garza. Scarza, you may unmute.
Hi, this is Roxanne Kario Garza. And I just wanted to say I remember working with Val before she was on the board. I think she was with Ed Trust West and worked with our original, we are the Experts Parent Group in coordination with BBK and others. And just her energy around helping these parents understand the impact that LCAP could have around closing equity gaps. I remember her clearly in the BBK conference room and the energy and the sparks just like coming out of her body during that first training session with parents. And just how much I appreciated her energy and commitment to the parents who, and students really from Rise that were just learning about LCAP in that first year. And I also remember coming, going to her swearing in, and she did it at Verde Elementary School. And it was, yeah, I, I remember feeling chills knowing that she was the first Latina to, to, to take this role. And I would concur with what others have said about her passion around what's right. Heard a lot about what John Lewis said this, this year, and I think she personifies the kinds of values that, that he talked about, about getting in good trouble and about raising the, the values issues and the moral issues around policy. So, thank you Val. We are going to miss you in the Bay Area, and we'll come down to SoCal to see you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garza.
Our next speaker is Demetrio Gonzalez.
Good evening, everybody. I was having such a hard time writing something to say to trustee Cuevas, and I almost didn't speak because it was hard for me to get through just the paragraph I had written. But, you know, I, I just want to say thank you for everything that wasn't just mentioned on the resolution, but for, you know, always keeping us grounded to what's the most important of our work. Like our students said, them, them and our students. I met trustee Cuevas seven years ago, eight years ago, when she was advocating for our African-American students at a Blackboard event. And since then, she's been a mentor, a friend, and a role model to me. And I've seen her be a fierce fighter for equity, school autonomy, support for educators, and always keeping it as real as you can under realities of our district. And I'm just incredibly thankful for your encouragement all these years and for telling me to run and do this work and follow your lead. So I hope I can make you proud and I can continue to be a voice for our community like you have been. So, thank you for everything, and I'm truly going to miss you up here.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez Hoy.
Our next speaker is Guadalupe Aniana.
Hello, board members and trustee Cuevas. I just want to say thank you. Thank you, I think, for, you know, everything that you have done. Thank you for always being there. You've been, I think, a really, a person that's always willing to work and communicate in partnership with parents. Especially me, you've always been accessible, you know, to my needs and, you know, to just having conversations of, you know, everything that's going on. So I thank you for that. I think, you know, you're saying the, the example of what board members are supposed to be like and really take on participation, you know, having that communication with parents and being accessible to us, to our needs, I think, not just during the board meetings, but you know, after. And, you know, really making yourself, you know, follow through. I, I, you know, I appreciate that, and we're going to miss you on the board. You know, I'm going to miss seeing you and, you know, kind of all the, you know, all the interesting comments you have to say, and I think you're really passionate about it. So I, you know, coming from a person who's also passionate, yeah, I, you know, I'm going to miss that, I think, seeing that on the board. But I congratulate you and I say thank you very much from the bottom of the heart, you know, from a lot of us parents. And, you know, I wish you nothing but the best, and, you know, hopefully we'll be able to stay in contact. So, thank you, this is our Cuevas, and, you know, wish you nothing but, you know, positivity and send you great vibes your way.
Thank you, Ms. Aniana.
Our next speaker is Marissa Glidden.
Hi, thank you for having me here tonight. On behalf of the 1,700 educators of United Teachers of Richmond, I want to thank you trustee Cuevas for your, all you've done for the district, for students, for educators, for families. Personally, it has been such an inspiration to hear you speak with such passion. It's rare to see people in positions of power be able to stay so focused on what matters most despite what's going on around them. And you've always stayed true to, to your values and stayed true to our students, and for that I am so grateful. So, thank you so, so much for all you've done for us. We wish you the best, and we hope to stay in touch. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glidden.
Our next speaker is Zalon Harrison.
Hi, Ms. I am so, so happy to hear that you're going to go do better things. I remember when I first met you, and we met with Madeline Kronberg over there at the Teachers Union. And you, you were always like someone mentioned, you were, you asked about all the kids. And I just, all your support that you gave with the resolution and your passion, and I just want to thank you as the exiting asset chair, we have a new one coming, but just, you know, thank you for everything that you did. And I appreciate you thinking about all the kids. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Harrison.
And it says.
Mr. Aurelio, you're muted.
Mrs. Harris Gash, I'm sorry. Trying to use the spacebar.
Good evening. And I like that the young person talked about self-care, and I, I have two things, and I just, my capacity is limited tonight, so I really need to prioritize my self-care. So to board member Cuevas, I just want to say continued success in your future endeavors. And thank you for the time that you have given to the district and to our students and to our community. The second thing that I would just like to mention is about the superintendent search. And just maybe somebody said it before at another meeting because I've missed a few. But the expectation is that in that application pool, that there are black men and that there are black women. You know that I'm a child of this district, and I don't know if we've ever had someone black lead the district. Doesn't mean that other people are not qualified, but moving forward, that the expectation is that this, this firm finds, seeks out from coast to coast. I don't care if they have to go internationally, but that we have some black men and black women in the application pool moving forward with the new leadership. I still love you, Mr. Duffy. And so also I want to say, I guess this is my, my third thing with the capacity that I have, is just please remember that Kennedy High School is your highest need high school in the district. I love everybody, but yes, Kennedy is my heart, and that, please continue to give my, my new principal, Mr. Scott, who was hired right before school started, please continue to give him authentic support. Because it's more than a notion to be at Kennedy and keep us together and hold us together. And he is doing a really good job, but he also needs support that comes from the district level. I pray everybody has a wonderfully blessed holiday season. Take care of yourself. Self-care is so important. And I look forward to the next time that we get together.
Thank you, Ms. Harris Gash.
Our next speaker is Yolanda.
Good evening, trustees, superintendent Duffy. Thank you so much, trustee Cuevas, for all that you have done. You have been such an inspiration to me. I'm always listening for your voice, and it will be so missed here. As an out lesbian, you have inspired me and have made me proud as a gender non-conforming lesbian to have you there representing us. I know that you are looking out for all of our students, particularly those of us who are surviving in the intersections of all of the madness that's going on around us. Thank you for making sense of that and for being a strong, steady presence in our district. You will be missed. Good luck to you. Thank you.
Our next. Sorry about that. Our next speaker is Veronica Martinez. Martinez, you may unmute. Begin your comment. Okay, I'm going to move on to the next one. Jose Sanchez. You may unmute.
Si, me podrías traducir, por favor? Mi nombre es Elisa Benájera. Mi hijo es José Sanz. Él está ahorita en la SAB. Que siguiera abierta la escuela.
Disculpe señora, esta es, no es la, la, el sámen. Ahora va a ser más después, si quieres esperar para ese tiempo para hablar. Está bien. Está bien.
Gracias. Es para, es para el artículo E2. Ahorita estamos, todavía más, más temprano en la agenda. Así que de seguro como en unos treinta minutos tal vez, o treinta, treinta y cuarenta. Gracias, perdón.
Let me try, let me go to Ivy Winston.
Thank you.
Ms. Winston, I believe you can unmute.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Val. I just want to thank you from the depths of my heart for the services and your commitment. I remember before you were a board member, when you would come to meetings to give us knowledge. You've led fiercely, fearlessly. I admire you mostly, your passion, your drive, your commitment, your courage. And there was no limit as to what you would do when you first started out for our community. I mean, even as far as coming to my house and having meetings in my garage, you know, in, just to get the work done. And I just want to just tell you that you have been a source of encouragement to me. I've learned a lot from you, and I thank you so much for all the work that you've done for the community and also for me personally in far as my growth and development. So I want to thank you again for everything. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Winston.
President Hernandez-Drivas, that is the last public comment for this item.
Great, thank you, Mr. Aurelio. So trustee Cuevas, I think, I think you have heard loud and clear from everybody. It would be great if you could share some, some insight into your experience reflection. Thank you.
Well, that, that has been truly overwhelming. Thank you, board president, and thank you my fellow board members and, and student trustee board members, superintendent, and of course, all the community, those of you who spoke tonight. It's, it's always difficult for me to hear nice things simply because I, I feel embarrassed about the fact that there's work to do. So who's got time for that? But I've been reminded in life that part of that is in being a willingness to accept the gift, the gift, an expressive gift of appreciation from other folks. And so I thank you so much, everyone who's been willing to come on this journey the last six years. When, when I think most about the work here in, in West County, it is very much driven by the fact that, that we are a district that very much is a representation of everything that is right about the west part of the East Bay and the west part of Contra Costa County. There's this tremendous history, tremendous accomplishment, tremendous passion and strength, and just assets. And all I've ever wanted was to help be part of, of the reminder and the work to help our school systems match everything that was right and is right about our communities. So, thank you again. I think that I'm, first of all, want to wish our incoming board members, I know that it includes a possibility, because I have been watching the results of Mr. Panas as well, and as well as those who are leading right now. But I will hope that, I do hope that, you know, looking at the notion of what does it mean for a community to come together, that I hope through my tenure, I've demonstrated to you that building and leading together for the sake of better outcomes means abandoning what we think we know about each other and truly focusing on what is it that we want for each other. And I hope that we'll all give each other the opportunities, whoever sits into the governance roles in this district, to really rise to the just the true nature of what is best and good about West County. And that is that at our heart as a community, I believe we love each other, we care about each other. We get distracted sometimes, but I have never felt more welcome in my second home. As you know, I was born in Southern California and came up to the Bay for work and landed unexpectedly in Richmond, and Richmond has been my second home and will always be my home. Given my parents are getting older, my future does include more time in Southern California. But that doesn't mean I'm never going to forget that my home that I made as an adult that I truly appreciate the way you opened your arms to me is always going to be West County. So, thank you so much for that. In relation to giving each other a chance, I've never thought more about what the possibilities are for our future as a district than what a man who had a tremendous amount of impact on me, who was the leader, not the only leader, but certainly a significant one, and that is Dr. Martin Luther King. And this is not the first time where you, I've talked about Dr. King and his influence on me. But, you know, he said in 1967, it really boils down to this, that all life is interrelated. We are all caught in an inescapable network of mutual, mutual, mutuality. I'm probably missing that word up, because we don't use it very often. Mutuality tied into a single garment of destiny. Whatever affects one directly affects all indirectly. And so my, my parting words for West County is that there's wisdom in our, from our ancestors, not just from Dr. King, but from the ancestors who are proximate and close in our community, who throughout human history are constantly reminding us that the path forward, the path forward is always about going forward together, thinking about each other, building beloved community. reflecting upon ourselves and the ways that we are contributing to building that beloved community and strengthening that inner connection. And so I hope that as the district moves forward, please know that you will always have me in your corner. And I'm always available to continue to cheer for the success of our students, for the success, success of our school communities, for the success of our district. And I'm always going to be available and reminding us that always fall back on that notion of our single, our destiny is connected to each other. So thank you again. I've truly appreciated the opportunity to be here with you. And I won't hold this on anymore because as our public comments demonstrated, the work of the district continues and it will always continue, no matter who's sitting in these chairs. Our children will always be meeting our leadership and our support. So thank you again, everybody. I really appreciate it. And let's get back to work.
Thank you so much, trustee Cuevas, and thank you for bridging that, you know, the, the, the path that we're on now with the, with the transitioning into the new board and all that that brings and all of the opportunities and possibilities. Thank you for really framing the, the summary of your service as a continuation of the work and handing over that to the next people who will walk this path. So thank you so much, trustee Cuevas. Thank you for your service and thank you for your leadership and inspirational role and and very transformational service that you have done in West County.
Right. I think this is a reminder, if one of my colleagues would be kind enough to motion for the resolution, that would be great.
Yes. Is there a motion to approve the res?
President Hernandez, I'd like to move resolution number forty-seven, twenty twenty-one, resolution of commendation to Valerie Cuevas for dedicated service to students, staff, and the community.
Oh, my God. Is double second trustee. Let's see. Trustee Laura, would you like, I don't, I wouldn't, I don't want to ask to resent anyone to withdraw any seconded, but I think that trustee Garcia Avila may have gotten to it. Just a second. Thank you. Thank you both.
Just, just a quick point of order. I think that trustee Laura has to keep her second. They could both second, but trustee Laura kind of has to keep hers.
I think for, in, in our bylaw, student board members can actually make motions and I believe that they can second. We can, we can clarify, we can clarify, but we can keep trustee Laura second if that's, if that's what we need to do. That works. I know we're all enthusiastic about it. So if we could, if we could take a vote, that would be great. Thank you. Garcia Avila, yes.
Cotton Blake, yes.
Laura, yes.
Just, just at the sake of, again, it's not my nature to be self-serving. I'm going to abstain. But I do want to clarify, I believe the word is mutuality.
Anna, yes.
Phillips, yes.
And then this Jarvis, yes, motion passes. Everybody, yes, with trustee Cuevas abstaining. Thank you all so much. Thank you, Superintendent Duffy, for reading this resolution as well. And thank you to all members of the community who have shared their, their words with trustee Cuevas. Thank you so much. Great. So now we move to public comment for all items that are not on the agenda. So if we have some members of the public who are here for specific items that are on the agenda, such as the federal program monitoring or the public hearing for Summit of Vice Charter renewal or for the Lake Elementary School item or for the racial equity community council, community oversight council. Those items are a bit later in the agenda, so this public comment is for any item that is not on the agenda. Thank you.
It looks like we have two hands raised.
Great. Thank you. So we can put three minutes on the clock and if we can get started right now, that would be great. Thank you.
We will start with Carrie Schulman. Carrie can unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you for having me. I'm a parent of a second grader and a kindergartner in the district. And I wanted to follow up on some comments made by school board members at the last meeting. Several people said that they would not tolerate any COVID risk, but life is full of risks. Every time you get in your car, every time you leave your house, or heck, even when you're just inside your house, there's a risk of death. About a hundred and twenty thousand people die every year from household accidents alone. Waiting until there is no risk of COVID means that my kindergartner probably won't be able to return to the classroom until she's legally an adult. Several people also mentioned the Harvard study as a reason why schools should remain closed. This study has received heavy professional criticism because of faulty methodology. Instead, we should look at the data from schools that have actually been open. A recent article on the NPR website cites research done in Spain where schools are open. Here is a direct quote from the article. Nowhere the research found was there a spike that coincided with reopening. What we found is that school being open makes absolutely no difference. The conclusion of the article also says that, and again, this is a direct quote from the article. Children under the age of ten are generally at quite low risk of acquiring symptomatic disease and they rarely transmit it either. Another example is the Bethlehem, Pennsylvania school system, which has been open to in-person learning for over ten weeks. This district is similar to ours. It is the sixth largest district in Pennsylvania and sixty percent of the students are eligible for free or reduced price meals. However, their positivity rate is currently eight percent, while our positivity rate is only three point six percent. Despite their relatively high positivity rate, they do, they have not had a COVID outbreak in any of their schools. According to their city's health director, there is no evidence of spread in a school. Instead, the few positive cases they have had are linked to family members or activities outside of school. The state of California has given guidance on when schools can reopen. They say that the countywide positivity rate should just be below eight percent. They also say that if you are looking at more granular data such as individual zip codes, you should be using even higher positivity rates. It's completely absurd that our district has set their thresholds at three percent for individual zip codes and all surrounding zip codes before we can even begin the first phase of reopening. I know that we are currently experiencing a spike in cases and I don't want anyone returning when it is not objectively safe. But I also know how difficult renegotiating the MOU and creating a reopening plan will be. So it is critical that we begin this process right away. For the sake of our children, please use science instead of fear to guide your decisions. Please change the MOU and make a realistic and attainable plan for opening our schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Richie Cook. Mr. Cook, you may unmute.
Hello. Yes, Richie Cook. I would like to humbly ask Valerie Cuevas to reverse her decision on the last item that was voted on. It's never too late to toot your own horn. And I want to thank you for your service on the board. Also, I'm very concerned about the school district going back too soon. One life is just one life too many. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Aurelio, and thank you to members of the community for sharing their public comment with us. So we just wrapped up WCCRC public comment and we're next to the consent calendar. We had two items that were pulled and that was those were C2, C4, and C6. Is there a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent calendar?
Move, we move the consent. Well, we accept the consent calendar except for C2, C4, and C6.
Is there a second?
I'll take a bet.
Move by trustee Bana, seconded by trustee Lara. Can we please take a vote? Garcia Avila, yes.
Cotton Blake, yes.
Laura, yes. Bobas, yes.
Hannah, yes.
Phillips, yes.
And now this Jarvis, yes, motion passes unanimously to approve the remaining consent calendar items with exception of C2, C4, and C6 that were pulled. So now we're on to communi, committee communication. First item, superintendent's report, item D1.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. And again, congratulations and thank you to Ms. Cuevas. While my superintendent, oh, I forgot, I'm pulling up my own report now. We changed this protocol. So hold on one quick second. Let me get.
I'm ready if you want me to just to share, Mr..
Oh, that would be great. Thank you, Mr.
Okay. Okay.
While we're pulling that up, thank you so much. We didn't get to the superintendent's report last board meeting because we went really late. So this is a combination of some report from the fourth and the eighteenth. So what you see on the cover here, all these boxes are the really exciting grand opening we did online for the Michelle Obama Elementary School. And that was just a fantastic event. So this was a great event, great news for this district. Lot of coverage, just so exciting, both being able to name the school, Michelle Obama, the really innovative design of the school in terms of both having a traditional and flexible approach and just an exciting time for the community in that neighborhood that's waited a long time for that school. So thanks to the board members, Mr. Phillips, community, everybody who did such a great job with the video. So there's plenty of links that you can find on our website on this item, which is linked to the agenda. Just absolutely fantastic. So something the entire community should be proud of, from the design to the bond, to the name, so many great things. So that was from last, last meeting as well. So yeah, we can go to the next slide. Thank you. So you know, we've last meeting was the day after election day. So I was certainly going to mention, you know, all of the different things that happened on election day. I think those are sort of settling in now. And as I've said before, we will have a board transition that begins December sixteenth. And just reminding folks that I participate in a weekly superintendent's call with all the superintendents in our county to really get on the same page about what's happening with health, safety, opening. We talk to the county health every single week as part of that call. So just, you know, for the public to know, we're very plugged into what's going on with county health and health around our district. And that's certainly informing many of our decisions. I also wanted to mention that we are currently still accepting applications for our redistricting committee. So as many folks know, the district is now in areas. So each trustee now represents an area, a specific geographic area. And after the census data comes out, we will need to redraw those areas. And so we have a commission that does that and we are accepting applications. So we still need applicants from Area Two and Two that are from outside the district, but live in Contra Costa County. And there's plenty of information posted on our website as well. So we are wrapping up, have wrapped up parent teacher conferences. Sorry, that should have been a separate bullet. And as trustee Cotton Blake mentioned, we had from Friday through the weekend, PD Workshop on Race and Equity sponsored by the Office of African American Student Achievement, some wonderful speakers, workshops, keynotes. That was, that was great. And I did note that Contra Costa County is now officially in the purple tier sadly due to the increased spikes in COVID cases. This was a holdover from last week, but just, you know, we do have some data that I wanted to share around the hotspots that we've given out. We've given out over five thousand hotspots, which, you know, if that was perfectly even math, you know, that's more than one out of six students in our community. So that's a lot. So you can see where those hotspots have been given out. You can see the great need. And later today, in the board meeting later this evening, we're going to talk about an idea to try to work with our local officials to build out a larger community Wi-Fi coverage. So that's a really bold sort of ambitious project that we're hoping we can take on in partnership so that some of these neighborhoods could have connectivity much more easily and would be part of the infrastructure of our community. This is a thank you through Tracy Logan and her team. We've got, we're getting additional three thousand hotspots coming. So we're seeing, we've gotten some donations, thanks to the West Contra Costa Ed Fund. Ed Fund is just doing great work right now on our behalf. So you see Chevron, Red Oak Realty, Travis Credit Union have all come forward to, to give us additional hotspots and we are partnering with the T-Mobile Project Ten Million for affordable hotspots. We can continue on. So upcoming tomorrow, huge day. Thanks to trustee Phillips for connecting us and others. We have been able to put together a really big, robust immunization event tomorrow that's happening at Bissell for about, we're trying to get as many of the seven hundred students who have not been immunized over there. It will also include food. We're beginning our turkey giveaways. We plan to give away ten thousand turkeys this year, which is really fantastic for our community. But tomorrow, we start early over at Bissell and in the Bissell parking lots. So again, thank you to trustee Phillips and others for making the connections so we could build this out. And for the staff, the scouts, the community outreach workers have been amazing contacting all of these families. I mentioned it before, but new board member seated December sixteenth, last meeting of our current board as it's configured, December ninth. Deanna's having a virtual concert on Friday, November twentieth. That's this Friday at seven. That's, I think it should be a great event. One thing I wasn't able to get to because we didn't do the report. Last week was National School Psychologist Week, so we do like to celebrate the various employee groups and their work. And we have an incredible school psychologist team, really intact team. One of the best I've seen in, in my travels, just very strong. And so we thank them all for their work. And, you know, we heard just two public speakers on on opening or closing schools. And, and I, I do want to say that I really believe, I think it's highly unlikely that we're going to be returning to school as a whole district. Everybody back in its traditional format in January and February. And something we might want to consider either with the final meeting of the old board or the new board is to actually maybe establish something like that so that our community knows with a little more definitive word, you know, that we are probably, or we are definitively not going to be back for either this month or two months just to let people know a little bit where we think we stand. So we'll keep an eye on it. We'll get some direction from our board and see what we want to bring back. But again, tomorrow immunizations come out. If you can, please spread the word. And, you know, we continue to work hard for our students and community. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Duffy, for that thorough report. And thank you trustee Phillips for helping to put together the event happening tomorrow as well to benefit as students and families in our district. Thank you so much. And up next, our second committee communication, item D2, in memory of members of the school community.
Sir Aurelio, can you also bring that up for me? Thank you very much. The district would like to take time to recognize the contributions of members of our school community who have passed away. The district requests the community to submit names to be reported as a regular part. The district requests the community to submit names to be reported as a regular part of each agenda. Former Lake Elementary Instructional Aid Patricia Lawson passed away. Ms. Lawson's years of service to the district included 1974 to 2020. Our thoughts go out to the family and friends in the loss of their loved one. We'll pause for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you Superintendent Duffy. And our thoughts and, um, our thoughts and condolences go out to the family of, um, Ms. Patricia Lawson. Thank you. Up next, we have our discussion items and reports. And the first one is E one, federal program monitoring. And this is an item that we, um, are having today that we actually had agendas at our last regular board meeting but did not get to. So we are prioritizing it today and starting it as our first discussion item.
Just want to share that this item combines both academics and budget. So we're going to hear both from Mr. Aurelio and Dr. Wald through this effort and some staff.
Thank you for that clarification.
So, um, I'll, I'll go ahead and begin if we go to the first slide. To start, so the federal program monitoring is done every two years by the California Department of Education. It's had many names. It used to be PQR. It used to be CCR. It's had lots of different acronyms. But what it is, is it's a review of all of the compliance and implementation of federal categorical programs. So we're talking about Title One, which the districts get for having students that are at risk, free and reduced lunch students. Title Two, which is for staff development. Title Three, which is for our English language learners, and then some of the other title programs such as Title Four for innovative programs. When they come out, they review multiple different programs. Last year, even during the pandemic, 132 school districts were selected for reviews, and 66 of them were done either online or in person as we go forward. We were in cohort D, so we had an online review last year. As the team came out, they came out towards the end of the year. We had already begun looking at some of these pieces before they even started. In fact, one of the things that we did in the fiscal office when I entered and looked at the budget that we had back in June that we had to clean up, and you'll all remember those machinations of position control. We recognized that people were all over the place in position control. And in many cases, their funding was not aligned to where it should have been. And so it was budgeted here, but it needed to be there, and something else was budgeted in the wrong place. So we began to make that movement long before the FPM came out and started to review. However, their job is to look at what was in the system and what is being changed. And their responsibility is to call out those findings. I myself, as the business official, believe that audits are essential and findings are never a bad thing if you learn from them, if you correct them, and if you build a plan to ensure that you've got the right protocols in place moving forward. And so there are quite a few different areas that were reviewed in this report, and we're going to talk about them in some detail tonight. Are all of them perfectly fixed today? No, because we've just assigned brand new staff to take on that responsibility, just like last year. It took a whole year to start to build the pieces to get it right. In some cases, it's going to take that time to build the coalitions and get the input. So as we go through it on the next page, there, we take a look at each of the reviews. We know that we're going to be reviewed, not this year, but next year again, and we anticipate it'll be an onsite review. And they're going to look at every one of the different findings we had to make sure that not only have we implemented what we said we would do, but that we're doing everything with fidelity. So that's our focus this year. Next slide, please. So the programs that were reviewed, compensatory education, Title One, English learners, our expanded learning programs are after school, fiscal monitoring, the policies we had in place to make sure that dollars are spent with accountability. Title Two for supporting effective instructions, and then uniform complaint procedures. Next slide. So as we look at the types of findings that were in there, in compensatory ed, we had two that were compliance and one that is called a duty statement. A duty statement is not a job description, but it's what the person actually spends their day doing. And that time needs to align to the percentage of funding that they receive from any different categorical funding source. And then you have compliance, English learner, 10 of them were compliance, one was fiscal, where we had individuals or programs that were coded to Title Three that should not have been because that is not the appropriate use. And then we had programs coded to LCAP that should have been Title Three, so we had to switch them around. So we'll go to the next slide and I'll start to get into some of the details as we go. So the major outcomes as we look at it. The first thing is that we defined that we need to revise our English learner three-year plan. Kristi Rosingio and Ruben Aurelio will talk about where they're at. There's been comments that the plan is only a couple pages long and it has a lot of TBD in there. That's exactly what it should be. We just hired Christie to be our director because the natural fit of having early literacy with English language learners is an essential natural fit. Her job is to now go and work with all of our stakeholders to expand that plan to be the right plan as we go forward. So that was one of the things we had to do. The other thing that we did, and we started it right when I entered the district, we addressed soft money positions. We noticed them. We went through that process and we reinstated positions with the appropriate ongoing funding. That was something that started before FPM. It was built in to all of the different reductions we did as we were doing our $30 million in reductions so that we could change that compliance as we go forward. And then the other thing that we're looking at is the site deficiencies are being corrected where we had not provided enough guiding documents for our site administrators to allow them to ensure that each of their steps were done as well. So if we go to the next slide. On the Title One, we receive approximately $9.4 million in Title One. One of the duty statements discussed a director that was serving schools and teachers that did not receive Title One funding. So what that meant is you cannot have Title One as your only funding source and serve a non-Titel One school. You have to make sure that there's a split in the funding, which, when you think about it, is common sense, but you don't think about that when, you don't think, how am I paid when you're trying to do your job to serve kids? The other findings were some parent and engagement policies were missing, not that they weren't doing it, just the policy wasn't able to be located during that review. And a couple of school site councils did not have an other category elected by other peers. So it was just a missing step in the election process, not a large finding. Next slide, please. And so we're in progress of addressing those policy pieces. The director funding was journaled and that position is not being utilized in the district at all this year. So there is no more resolution because one, we changed the funding appropriately and we don't have the position today. Next slide, please.
I believe this is where I take over, Dr. Wald. All right. Thank you. And good evening, everyone. President Anders Jarvis, trustees. Um, I do want to say before I jump in, it's been a pleasure being on, working with you, uh, trustee Quebas, and you will be missed. So I am here with Kristi Rosingio, who is our Director of English Learner Achievement and they're seeing where we're both going to be sort of bouncing back and forth and talking about these things. So the, the greatest number of findings were in this category for English learners. And so we will be, and I know Dr. Wald already has mentioned that we're in the process of reinstating and redeveloping our three-year English learner plan. And that is a work in progress. I really want to, you know, stress that it is a work in progress. This does not happen overnight. We are working frantically to make sure we correct the actions that we have found through this process of FPM to ensure that as we move forward, and sorry about the dogs. As we move forward, we are correcting and improving the services we offer to our English learners. So specifically, we're going to go through a couple of the items and, and Kristi I know is here as well to speak to. Hold on a second. Kristi, can you take over a quick second? I'm going to shut my door.
Sure. Good evening, Board and Trustees. So this gets into some of the specificities around the different findings for, um, English learners. The first one was around, um, an ELAC roster, the ones that were audited. They were missing some evidence. There was one site, excuse me, was missing evidence. And so it surfaced the need to ensure that all of our staff is trained. And that is something that, um, the training has actually already happened and we're in process of, in progress of submitting all of the evidence of that to the state.
Thank you. And that also continued with the, the findings around the M doc and making sure those are aligned and meeting the requirements necessary.
Before we go to the next one, I can add also that the mandatory training that was held included both the protocols and the tools and templates needed for sites to hold the processes in a way that's as easy as possible for them. And that going forward as part of the three-year plan, we plan on doing a needs assessment to see that not only are we having training for all of our new principals every year, but ensuring that as new policies are coming out, that all principals are not, are not out of compliance because we have not held the correct training.
Thank you, Kristi. The next two items on this list, one was directly related to the Single Plan for Student Achievement. And in the 1920 year, there was a component of the, the missing component around the ELs. And that's been corrected. And that is, as we move forward, you will know that the new, the SPSAs, the site plans do include the frame specifically for English learners. Now, item number 10 actually specifically is being addressed in one of our consent items this evening. As we shifted to distance learning and we made some changes to how our elementary folks are scored and graded within the report cards, we no longer use letter grades. For example, at the elementary level, we have narrative-based report cards back in the spring and into the fall. We needed to make an adjustment to our reclassification criteria so we can ensure that our students who need to be reclassified have the ability to be reclassified. And so later this evening, or actually, I believe it's already been approved by you on the consent calendar, um, the updated reclassification criteria. And that's going to allow us actually to move quickly, uh, before the deadline of mid-December to reclassify over 300 students who have the ability to do that. So we're very excited about that.
One additional component that we are updating is in relation to our students with IEPs. There is a new assessment that is coming out, um, through the LPAC that is specifically for students who might have, um, a cognitive disability that would impair them from passing the LPAC that has nothing to do with their language skills. And so that's also a part of, uh, what, what we are updating to ensure that all of our students, our needs are being met in terms of reclassification.
So I, item EL 03 is an error in how our ELs were accounted and reported. So as we've been digging and Kristi and I have done a little bit of work on that, and she's definitely dug, we found a series of numbers and it looks like some students were double counted or triple counted. And so we see a discrepancy of 18,000 plus English learners when the reality is we were more around 10,000 English learners. So it's really just an accounting error around reporting of, of students. And so that is being corrected.
And then O three was slightly different. That was more around ensuring that, um, all students had taken the test and students who had not taken either the LPAC or the SPAC that we are accounting for the reasons why and ensuring that completion rates are what they should be. And so, um, that status is currently in progress, but we're far along with having the, um, having the protocols outlined for when we're doing our training for LPAC and for SPAC for this year, if we're administering those assessments, that is very clear of what, um, the expectations of sites are. Um, the part that is not yet done is the training for all of our site years, which is a hugely important component.
And, and Kristi, just to follow up, the LPAC results and the numbers there, that is for the summit, if not the initial, correct? I just want to make sure we distinguish between the two. We are currently holding the initial LPAC for our new ELs, potential EL students. That is something we're in the process of doing, and we're doing some testing at Dejounte on in the cafeteria. Moving on to EL 09 and EL 12. And this is, and Kristi, you're going to speak to the plan there?
Sure. So for 09, this was where there was not evidence of, uh, comprehensive evaluation of the programs that we were putting in place. And so in the three-year plan, it is laid out, the ways in which all the ways that we are funding services for our English language learners have very clear measurable objectives built in to make sure that this is not a mistake that is repeated. And then for professional development, this was the same where there were professional developments that were held in prior years, but the documents that were submitted didn't have the clarity of focus and a lot of the components that were, that were necessary. So that's something that's been, that's been, um, clarified with the staff and also in the three-year plan.
So EL 14, which is the site evaluation of program effectiveness, that is going to be addressed and will be, continue to be addressed as part of that three-year plan in clearly identifying the, as ELD in distance learning, I do want to address that in our current schedule, we made it a point to articulate where ELD is held daily. Our, if you look at our schedules throughout our distance learning module, we specifically named in ELD block for, for that reason. So that is really clearly articulated in our program.
I can also add that part of that lack of clarity is not specific to West Contra Costa, but part of a broader issue of program alignment to the ELA and ELD framework where content and English language supports are tightly aligned. And so, um, this is also something that we're addressing in both professional development, but also in the ways we're supporting instruction at the same.
Thank you, Kristi. And Dr. Wald, I think we turn it back to you for fiscal monitoring.
So, um, at, as we jump back into the money side, I, I just want to reiterate where we talked about the double counting. A couple of board meetings ago, we brought forward a couple of contracts to start addressing our data issues. One of the problems of practice that we've recognized is while we have some input systems, we don't have adequate enough output systems to provide the data that is necessary to make the right decisions. And so part of our work over the next 12 to 18 months is to build those systems and really make sure that everything's validated. We're already moving forward with the fiscal one. The Power BI is 80% validated on the first run for the internal look. Then we can bring back to the board a contract to do an external facing piece. So we're already starting to build these pieces. We get $14.5 million a year in federal categoricals. These are above and beyond LCAP to help at-risk students. One of the big findings was internal control and time accounting. And what they're called is PAR forms. It's the time on task that an employee does. If you are 100% funded by a federal categorical, then your duty statement needs to align to the rules of that categorical and twice a year, semi-annually, you have to sign off on a PAR form. If you are split funded, whether it's 50/50 or 60/40, you have to sign off daily that your time equals the amount that is focused on Title Three and the amount that is focused on Title Two. If any day is not that same balance, you then need to do a journal transfer to adjust the funding. For that reason, I, as a CBO, try very hard to limit significantly those folks that are funded with split funding of categoricals or different grants because it's really hard to have every day be the exact same in our business. And that means you also need to keep some dollars protected so that you can switch funding back and forth. And so part of it is making sure people know how they're funded. We're still doing the final cleanups of that. It usually takes two years to get everybody in the right place. And we're trying to avoid significantly having people in the most restrictive ones such as Title Three and moving those dollars to serve just kids. So we also talked about it here. We needed to update some board policies and we'll keep bringing those forward. We know the next slide, please. So the time and effort we talked about, we're making sure that everyone knows their funding and that their funding is aligned. This is becoming a challenge. I can tell you that Ruben and I and his team are talking, and folks are going, wait a second, I don't do exactly that. And so we're having a distinct conversation. If you don't do that, then we need to move your funding to something that is aligned and make shifts so that we don't have those issues long term. We've talked about the board policies. I'll keep moving on those. They'll be coming in the next couple of meetings. Title III, there were quite a few things that weren't funded correctly, and it was not intentional. It was just the budget rolled over and that resource account happened to still be there. LPAC testing is a perfect example. That cannot be charged to Title III. We knew that. Everybody knew it. It was never supposed to have been. When we found it, we already had it budgeted appropriately in LCAP. We decided to make the transfer. But it shows up as a finding because it was there. It was, in a sense, double budgeted. Move to the next slide, please? On the concerns about supplanting, again with Title III, you had the rollover position control that equaled 209,000, that their accounts were still Title III, but that wasn't what they were doing. Those were moved over outside of Title III. In total, 521,000 was appropriately budgeted in LCAP or other places in the budget, but it's still, when the budget rolled over, was still in Title III. So it moved over. We made those changes, and as the board knows, when we closed the books, we had a surplus. So it was something that did not impact our abilities. And what it does is it leaves us much cleaner for Title III now to be freed up to focus on intensive interventions for our most needy English learners, which is what our goal is. As we talk about what are we going to be doing over the next six to 12 months? We need to focus on African-American student achievement. We need to focus on English learner fluency. And we have the dollars that will be dedicated to do that. Next slide, please? On Title II, we received $1 million. Again, it was making sure that our induction program is fully aligned to the benefits of our learners. And we're working on that with our TIP and TSAT program and our recruitment to maintain better teachers. We believe we're going to stay compliant and focused on that. The Title I had to do with proper notification. If you have a teacher that is not credentialed within the first 30 days, we did not have a warning system that triggered that to make the notice automatic. And we're working towards doing that. That's actually one of the proof-of-concept reports that we're doing now, where we're going to link teacher credentials to the master schedule in Power School, and it'll actually create an alert if something doesn't align that we can see without having to go look for it. So we're actually excited that this finding drove us to innovate something that no other district has. Once we have this, we're going to be the first to have that. I've been trying to build it for five years and never got it. And we're real close to getting it. Move to the next slide, please? So again, that just talks about the same thing I just did on the previous. We can go to the next slide, please? So we are trying to build structures that are going to interchangeably communicate with each other. And so we just put the top-level positions between Ruben's division and the division that I'm overseeing. So you can see the synergy of our work. So when you look at the business side, and then I'll let Ruben talk about the synergy on the academic side, we have purchasing, we have state and federal programs. The compliance is sitting in the room when we build the budget. They are making sure that the accounts are correct from day one and that they're articulated to the school sites with district operations. That is our arm. Those two departments connect directly with principals to make sure that they know and we know that they're aligned together. We've got our whole focus athletics charter together and budget and food services, all in that same piece that we're making sure that the right hand is talking to the left hand so that when Ruben and his team go out, their focus is we're going to improve achievement because we're going to have the resources to do that. And I'll let him talk about that side.
And I thank you, Dr. World. And I do appreciate that. And you can see in the academic division, the majority of this team is new as of this school year. It's a very new team, and we're in the process of developing our synergy and working together. State and federal, having moved over to business office, does allow us to have that interplay. Lynn Potter, who is still under state federal, and she is here, really does work closely with both divisions. She, she does kind of go back and forth and work with us as well because we, we really have to lean on her to make sure that we're aligning not only our budgets, but our programming as well. And so you can see, we've now hired Kristi Resigno as our Director of English Learner Achievement. Most recently, we hired LaShonte Smith as our Director of Positive Schools Climate, and that needs to be added to this, this list here because the academic side is finally complete. We have a complete team, and that's very exciting as we move forward.
And I believe that's our presentation tonight.
It is. And we're here for any questions.
Thank you so much to Director Resigno, Dr. World, and Mr. Orellito as well for your presentation and overview that you gave right now for the federal program monitoring findings. If we could open it up for public comment first, and then we can have an opportunity for the board to discuss and ask questions.
At the moment, I see no hands raised for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Orellito. And if we can give it a couple of seconds, just to make sure that there's no one that would like to share their feedback with us? So if there's still nobody, we can get started with the board. Thank you. So we can start with trustee Garcia Avila, trustee Cotton Blake. And if you would like to go last, please feel free to say so as well, and when we can do that, followed by trustee Lada, trustee Cuevas, trustee Panas, trustee Phillips, and then myself. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation. I just have one quick question. I know that you mentioned that y'all were recounting. So what does that look like and what's the process of it?
I can share that it's not as much of a recount, but it was just an error when someone was asked how many students they were, that they double counted some students. For instance, they counted students, they added DLI and Students International's to the total number. So we're, it was an adding mistake from within the department.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Garcia Avila. Trustee Cotton Blake?
Yes, thank you. That was an extremely thorough and well put together presentation, very fiscally thorough as well. I have no comments or questions at this time.
Thank you, trustee Cotton Blake. Trustee Lada?
Yes, thank you. That was very informative. I'm, you know, a longtime ELD teacher in the district. Some of the things that were very controversial, you know, a lot of disagreement, were things like the reclassification criteria, a lot of arguments over that. And also the ELD student who was in, has an IEP, that was always very controversial. And, and I just, also, a third thing would be the longtime learners, the longtime ELD students versus the more recent, you know, arrivals. Academically, they were so different. So those were really big issues for, for teachers. And I have to say that at Hales, though, at other schools where I don't think it was resolved very well, but at Hales, we really worked as partners, the ELD department and special ed. We really talked to each other. We decided, let's put the kid in the middle and think what's best for the student and then decided, you know, what was the best placement for them, whether it was full-time or part of the day, or it was all kinds of things that we did around that. Reclassification, what I learned was that, you know, when we actually told the students, here's how you're going to get reclassified. Here's how you're going to get out of ELD. Because a lot of them, I want to get out of ELD, you know, especially those longtime learners. And giving them that information, that was, you know, that was really a successful thing to do. And just overall, when, when we had to go back, when a student was exited from ELD and then we went back to check up on them because you have to do follow-up, lots of times we hear from teachers that they couldn't believe that they were once an ELD student because we always had this high criteria, this high standard of expectation academically. So then when they got put into the regular curriculum at school, they excelled. They really excelled. So I'm glad to see that, the criteria very specific, and it's maintaining those high standards as well. So my question about the longtime learners, is there anything special going to be done for those students?
At this point, we're in the process of doing a needs assessment to see, as mentioned in the three-year plan, to see what we have, how it's working, and then looking at what we want to layer on to better meet those students' needs if it's, if it's not yet working. The work that happens with long-term English language learners or LTALs is different across sites. We definitely provide support for those who are serving the students with professional development and thought partnership in terms of scheduling. But that's one of the areas that we're looking to do a full needs assessment in, to see where we need to layer in more support.
And if I can add to trustee Lada, with the change that we're looking at for our students with high needs, special needs, that a lot of times those students never reclassify, right? They get stuck because of certain factors. The fact that the state is really looking at an alternative to the LPAC, that's really powerful. And it's going to allow us to make sure that we reclassify those students who would get stuck in that long-term EL category.
That's great. Thank you so much. Great job.
Thank you, trustee Lada. Trustee Panas? Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Cuevas. Trustee Cuevas.
Just very quickly, I'm, I'm going to place my comments more on the remediation part of everything that you've outlined. I think it underscores one, how important our data, really accurate data systems are, and then how that is actually informing and being made public to our communities and our parents. I think in particular, this is evidence again of where there hasn't been enough infrastructure built around how we're supporting our multilingual youth who happen to be in our schools and maybe learning one or two, three different languages. So I'm hopeful that this will be a beginning. I think it does. I think the goal in the future is to not have a external audience reviewing and judging your work. The goal needs to be you all holding those standards as administrators and staff. And I think evidence, so I spoke to earlier, in terms of that is how we show each other that we care about youth in our communities, no matter who they are. And so those are common ways. We don't always have to be the biggest cheerleaders for whatever the program be sure of the week is, but it's those hunkering down on what are the ways that we can build supports within our system to accurately know and support is how we can kill folk. So my comments is that part of helping to keep each other honest and that is just please continue to build out stronger relationships with our parents and youth in our schools, the newcomer school in particular, the newcomer academy, but as well as the fact that there are students who have been longtime English learners in our district. And that's a different experience, but an important one. And I know their families and their parents have desire to want to partner more. So it's just a matter of what are the ways the district's going to find a way to make it grow. So thank you for your courage and willingness to acknowledge where the shortcomings have been. And I just continue to wish you well as you continue to, to really think about these things and build them into the way you're doing your practice. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Cuevas. Trustee Panas?
Thank you, President Hernandez Jarvis. I'd like to thank the staff for their comments this evening on the presentation. As I reviewed the presentation, to me, it had the feeling of no big deal. We've got this covered. And I don't view it that way. This has, looks to me like a kind of a scathing analysis of our ELO work, identifying serious inadequacies in our internal processes, as well as shining a very clear light on why our ELO community continues to feel and be underserved. Some frequency, MDAC members tell me that we're not spending our Title III money properly. And here, we're looking at direct evidence of that. And in my opinion, the tone of this presentation doesn't match the magnitude of the problems that need to be addressed here. On slide seven, it notes that we received about 9.4 million in Title I funding last year, while our unaudited actuals say 8.9. So I'm curious about which of those two numbers is correct.
So anytime you don't spend a dollar in federal Title I, II, or III, it carries over and it becomes revenue for the next year, and it gets reduced from the revenue from the current year. So the unaudited actuals are going to be different than where you start the year based on what you carry over each piece. So it's one of those unique parts of budgeting. It does not become part of fund balance. It becomes, re-characterizes revenue for the next year. So you always are going to see a variance.
Okay. So our unaudited actuals say we'll get 6.2 million in Title I funds this year. Why is it dropping by 30%?
Again, that has to do with the carryover. When you get all the carryover pieces that come at the end of the year, they then change it, and you'll see that it'll come back up to a higher number with the carryover later. And this last year, we started with more carryover. If you remember the board, when I walked in the door, we had made a decision to fund grad tutors with carryover funds, and those were part of those Title I funds that went away by the end of the year. So that's part of the challenges, that there was significant 2018 to 2019 carryover. That was part of the 2019-20 budget.
So is that then the same case with the Title III funds, you know, on actual say that we'll get 1.7 million in Title III? And that's versus 1.98 million last year?
Correct. Same thing. Title III has had significant carryover for several years. Again, not having staff dedicated in that department that focused on it. The dollars were not directed the way they needed to be directed. Our ongoing is just over a million, but the carryover was almost doubling that. And we're building a plan to make sure that we have both taking care of moving forward.
Okay. So I hear from the principals that a large part of the $521,000, the slide 18 says was improperly spent, had to be reimbursed because we did not properly classify our dual-language schools and because of how we set up the International's Academy. So how much of the $521,000 was because of those errors?
So 209,000 was in positions. As you can look there, you can see 104,000 was in the 4,000s. 111,000, as you can look on that slide, that's back up, was in a different piece. And indeed, the Internationals are still a core program. And so you cannot use Title III to fund DLI, which is a core program, to fund ELD, which is a core program. You can only use Title III for something that's above and beyond what is the base core. So it would have to be something outside of that. And we've made sure that that program is built into our core allocations now and not part of Title III in any way.
Okay. So you're saying that all the 521,000 was because we had programs misnamed?
You can look right on the chart there. You've got the 209,000 from position control.
But that, that doesn't talk about like, is it because they were misnamed? I mean, I can see the numbers that are on the chart, but like, there's this issue of, you know, we weren't careful apparently about how we're naming our programs to meet specific standards.
I wouldn't say misnamed. Misnamed is a misnomer there. We had an auditor that felt that the way we described the program did not meet that criteria. If you go down the road to a district within 30 miles of us, they call things the same exact program, and it's compliant. So that was more of a conversation as it pertained to Internationals. The funding, however, should be in either an LCAP support or a base program support because you don't use Title III for your base ELD.
Okay. So have we, in a, I mean, Okay, um, so have we, if, in a, I mean, when we look at the major findings on page six, I don't say, see anything that says we're going to be recategorizing or renaming our programs so they meet the standards. I also don't see anything that we're going to set up our Internationals Academy, uh, with its own codes and entrance and exit exam so we can apply Title III funds to them if we want to. Are we not going to do any of those?
Uh, again, base funding, if it's the daily instruction for a student, Title III is not an appropriate funding source to pay for that student. We get money for every student that's enrolled. We get base grant, we get supplemental and concentration. The Internationals is their core instructional program. That should not be Title III.
Okay, but so I was, when I read things, it says like, if the school has its own code and it's, and entrance and exit criteria, we can use it. Is that wrong?
That still would be incorrect because you still are required to use the base grant to fund periods one through six. Every student's entitled to an equal educational environment, just like special ed. You have to have a fair and a free and appropriate public education. English learners need access to the core and we're obligated to supply those first as part of our base grant.
Okay, thank you. So when we sent the 521 back to Title III, did that become carryover and then we can then use this year?
Some of that was carryover. Some of that, we found other things in LCAP that were appropriate for Title III. But there was a amount, I don't have the exact number, I can send it in a Friday letter of what the carryover was. And it is available for English learners this year.
Okay, is that, can you give me like, within 100,000?
I, I would need to look that up. I don't have it in front of me at this moment. And I don't want to get the wrong number.
Okay, um, then at the MDAC meeting on June 4th, there was a summary of Title Four, Three that was distributed and said there was another $470,000 from last year's Title III funds that could be carried forward into this year. Is that happening?
Yeah, all carryover, again, all the carryover is still in the budget for allocation. There is still a significant amount of money that has not been directed. With Christie and her team, they'll be able to direct those services. A lot of this will be able to help us as we start looking in the second half of the year to reopening and/or loss learning focus. That's going to be dollars that are going to be resources available to make a difference for students.
Okay, so Title III will be the 1.07 million plus some portion of that 521 plus this 470.
Right, some of that's already allocated out so we can create an updated budget in Title III and put that in one of the future Friday letters to the board so that you can look at how Title III is being allocated. And part of it is the resources are in limbo as we build the plan.
Okay, well, thank you, because I know like MDAC is constantly asking me like, how much money do we have? How much carryover? Okay, fine. So, um, you know, the fiscal compliance bullet on slide nine notes that multiple, you, you talked about the multiple staff members were inappropriately paid. So what safeguards have we put in place to ensure that everyone is paid out of Title III funds is 100% eligible to be funded by Title III?
So part of, if you go to the last slide, Ruben, when we talked about the reallocation of our departments, we now have state and federal sitting in the room when we do budget development. When I'm, when our department sits down and talks with a school about supplemental assignments or additional funding, state and federal's part of that conversation to make sure that we don't go and, oh, we're going to find somebody, oh, we need to find funding to keep Ruben Arroyo employed. Hey, what do we have left? Let's go look at the pot and we'll just use that. That doesn't happen anymore. It has to be, what's his duty statement going to be? What are the roles and responsibilities? Does that need a requirement? And so we have that in the position control matrix. You have to get something approved by several of us, myself included. If it's going to be categorically funded, I have to click yes. And I'm not going to click yes if I haven't talked to Lynn Potter or Ruben or Christie to say, is their duty statement going to align to this?
Okay, um, on slide six, it said the district revised the English learner three-year master plan. Um, you know, I don't actually ever recall seeing a three-year master plan before. Uh, I don't ever recall it coming to an MDAC meeting. So was there actually a plan before? Or is it basically created because we knew we'd need to, we'd need it to address some of these FPM findings?
Christie's, I know Christie started drafting that.
But I mean, I mean, yeah, no, the clear, the clear implement, uh, clear suggestion in slide six is this plan already existed and like, I'd never heard of that before.
There's always been a requirement to have an English learner master plan. I could not tell you because I wasn't here three years ago whether one was brought to the board or not. What I do know is that as we started to look at what was there and built the team that Ruben is putting together, we knew that we had to start building a new plan. And that's what those first draft is and it's by, and it needs to have the word draft because it purposely has not been brought to the board because there has not been time to complete that. And part of that is doing outreach with the MDAC and other groups to ensure that we've got the appropriate input in that plan before bringing it to the board.
And I do want to add, uh, trustee Panas, I believe they used to call it the EL roadmap. And I believe that was the EL roadmap that was brought. That was probably not, had a different name then.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I appreciate that. Um, and I, I, I get it that it's a draft at this point. And I think actually it's a very good start and it needs to be refined and filled out. You know, it also proposes a number of solutions. I have to confess that some of the solutions really have me scratching my head, like, really? Um, so a good example of that is, it says the primary goal of the data section is that teachers receive student names by English learner level. And like, I, it's unbelievable to me that this is not actually happening. And I'm just wondering if our data system is up to this task, you know? Do we need something better? Should we be investing CARES funds, you know, to better support our teachers here? Uh, so if they're not getting that kind of information?
Actually, thank you. The answer is yes, we need to invest in data systems. The board started that two months ago. We're not done. Tracy Logan, Ruben, myself, we are taking a deep dive in every system we have. We took an extremely deep dive into Power School's infrastructure and reporting to look, is that sufficient? We are not sure that it is. So we're looking at what do we need to add on top? Or what do we need to do to build the right structure? And we will be coming back to, uh, maybe this board for sure, the next board before this year's out. And we will be doing more one-time investments to build infrastructure because plain and simple, we need better data. Trustee Cuevas just said, you've got to show that you care for kids by building those systems that are going to give us the information to make a difference. It's the behind-the-scenes work that matters sometimes and we're committed to bringing forward more and appropriate systems, not just buy systems to buy systems. We're going to buy solutions that we can implement and sustain with our team.
Okay, thank you. So I got, I'm hoping that we'll also be able to address these things like, you know, 8,000 kids improperly accounted for or double counted. Um, 1,400 test results missing. It's just like, we need to be able to stay on top of this thing or we're never going to be serving our English language, uh, uh, community properly. Um, and I'd just like to say that, you know, we, we have, um, a number of items here, resolution and status. You know, to me, on the status, unless we have like a timeline and who's doing it, it's, it's not a real plan. Uh, I just, I just feel like it's just kind of a, oh, we'll get it done. Don't worry about it. And like, also, I, I realize you can't just give me this number right now. It's probably a very hard number. I gotta, I'd just be very curious to like, how much time are we going to have to invest to address all these monitoring FPM findings that we, we could otherwise be spending, you know, to directly support ELD? So those are my questions. I appreciate the report very much. We obviously have a ton of work to hear and I'd sure like to hear, you know, how much more work we have to do just to address these, much less move forward with our real work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Panas. Josie Phillips?
Thank you, President Hernandez Jarvis. Um, we should not be, uh, surprised, uh, by anything that we are hearing tonight, uh, in this presentation, uh, or any of the feedback that we've gotten, uh, on the level of service that we are providing, uh, to these children. We shouldn't be surprised about, uh, issues around supplanting versus supplementing. The reason we shouldn't be surprised is because we already knew these things. Uh, members of our community, uh, quite frankly, have been coming to us for years, complaining to us. And I don't even want to say complaining because that has a, sometimes has a negative connotation. Uh, but they have been coming to us, they've been coming to the board, they've been coming to higher-level staff, uh, and saying that monies are not being spent properly. Uh, not that monies are being taken or anybody's absconding with monies, uh, but that monies that are meant, uh, for certain things are, are, are not being spent on those things. Uh, we've actually had conversations at the board level around this. And there, uh, have been two schools of thought. Uh, one school of thought, uh, has been that, uh, and right now I'm going to start bringing in, uh, the supplemental and concentration fund conversation because it is a very similar conversation. You know, one school of thought has been, you know, the state underfunds public education. So all of the additional funds that come into the district, you know, we have to use those funds to backfill monies, uh, that the state is not giving us just so we could, uh, keep our doors open. Uh, I don't, I don't agree with this school of thought, but I mean, I'm, I'm, and I'm summarizing. Uh, but that's been one school of thought. Another school of thought has been, uh, we get additional monies uh, for, uh, specific children with specific needs, uh, specific backgrounds, uh, and that that money should be spent on those kids. Um, that's the school of thought that I fall under. Uh, but the idea that this is, uh, out of the blue, uh, uh, that's not, uh, really accurate and that's not really, uh, it doesn't really jive with the conversations that we have openly had, you know, as a district around how do we, uh, break even, uh, based on the amount of monies that we receive. Uh, and the majority, uh, are, are the school of thought that has prevailed thus far is the school of thought that basically says, you know, any monies that come into the district, uh, we need to use those monies for, uh, general operations. And now we have someone, uh, a higher level of government telling us to stop, stop doing that. Uh, now again, they're not addressing the, you know, supplemental concentration issue, but it's the same thing. We do the same thing there, uh, you know, as well. We also shouldn't be surprised that, uh, someone is coming in and telling us that we're doing a poor job of monitoring, uh, the effectiveness of our programs and services. Uh, Mr. Panis, uh, and I know sometimes, you know, he may sound like a broken record, uh, but almost every meeting, if not every other meeting, you know, he's talking about, uh, how do we measure effectiveness? Uh, President Hernandez, Hernandez Jarvis, you talk about that as well. Uh, the two of you are constantly, uh, you know, pointing out, uh, ammals and, and or lack thereof when that is the case. Uh, and all of that comes back to, uh, where we are now. We have someone telling us from the outside, you know, that we are, uh, not monitoring properly the effectiveness of what we do. Again, this is something that we all knew, uh, but we, for different reasons, uh, have allowed it to happen. Uh, and that doesn't mean that, you know, no one has ever raised the red flag. Uh, you know, that no one has, you know, ever said anything. And I just gave two examples of you, President Hernandez Jarvis, uh, and, and Mr. Panis actually talking about this. But like I said, this is something that we've heard multiple times from multiple members of our community. Uh, so we shouldn't be in this position because this is not new information. Uh, we really need to do a better job of listening, uh, to our community. Uh, that doesn't mean that everything that everybody says, that we have to do it every time. But if somebody is right, they're right. And it doesn't matter whose mouth it came out of. If it's right, it's right. And if it's right, we need to actually, uh, do it. And we won't find ourselves in positions like this. Uh, we were having a conversation in this presentation around split positions and how do you account for time if you're using Title I funds to fund half of your position and you're using other funds to? Well, you know what? The truth of the matter is, we're doing something very similar, uh, with the past budget right now that we just passed. Uh, you know, we have a situation where we have folks being paid single positions, but they're doing split roles and they're being paid out of multiple pots. So the conversation that we're having right now about cleaning that up should not just live within this wheelhouse around what's in this federal monitoring because there are other positions that we have in our district where we're doing the exact same thing. Uh, I do want to say that I'm glad that we are going to have an oversight person for Title I. Uh, I think that we should have an oversight person for these other pots of monies as well. Perhaps it should be the same person, uh, because this is not the only place where the district is operating this way. Uh, I understand that we have, are developing a three-year plan and that it's a draft. Uh, and my question, uh, is especially taking into consideration that the things that we are addressing on this evening are things that we've known for quite some time. We've known, you know, that the kids are not all getting the ELD time that they're supposed to get. We've, we've, this is not new stuff. I mean, and it's almost frustrating and I don't want to get excited. Uh, but it, it, it's a frustrating thing, um, to, to be hit with something. Uh, if there was ever a telegraphed punch, uh, where you just saw the punch coming, it's this. Cause there's nothing new, um, that they're saying about us. Uh, and, and my question to staff is, is this, uh, and I don't know who is the right person to answer this, so have at it. Uh, the three years that we are talking about implementing, uh, this plan to change these things, can we cut that down to a lower time? Can we do this work in a year and a half? Can we do this work in two years and do it right? And the reason why I'm saying is, it really is upsetting for me to hear us say that we're going to do something or finish something three years out that we've known about for years. So what can we do about shortening the time on this plan to rectify the issue so we could probably serve our children?
So let, let me start and then I'll pass it on to the academic side. That there was, there's several really key things you talked about. When you say a three-year plan, I, I just want to take you back to the LCAP that just ended. That was a three-year plan, but you implement the first year, you start working. It just happens to be called the three-year plan. So as you start talking about implementation, that's different. But I want to go back to the finance for just a moment because we do have, it's not just Title I we're overseeing. It's every fund that we have. And as you look at budget, it is important to understand how we get funded. We are not funded dollar for dollar what we received in 2007. We are that far behind. If you do the exponential change, we are in real dollars, more than $50 million less for the base general operations. And so we are indeed not getting enough dollars and like every district in California, this is not West Contra Costa. Every district I've worked in or worked around or talked to has to do what they can to stay afloat. That being said, this district is committed to doing the right thing. We are committing unspent dollars and moving things out of Title III. So the Title III is exclusive for that rapid remediation and that focus on English learners. It was a very big deal. You show me another district that called out ELD in their distance learning program in their distance learning program that put a premium on the necessity of ELD instruction. That was a tenant and a standing point in negotiations that we were not going to not have that be a high priority. We are doing the steps necessary to build that. You can't fix everything overnight, but what we can do is build a structure that is consistent irrespective of who sits in the chairs. What, and I'm talking the board, I'm talking my seat, I'm talking any seat. We build a structure that has pieces. Trustee Panis has talked about AMOs as many have. We're going to build systems that allow us to track those AMOs and train staff to program and code students so that we can pull data to answer those questions. You can't instantly pivot staff that are working full-time right now to fix everything in one day. What you can do though, is build and train a system to go forward. And so what I would say is, there has to be some trust that we heard this, we didn't need an outside party to tell us. We knew this before we walked in. And by the way, when they come and do this, they always have findings in every district. It's like the audit in ASB. It doesn't matter how good you are, there's going to be an ASB accounting audit finding. We are doing our own internal looks. I'm going to be talking to you about charter analysis in a little bit. And we're going to be taking the team that we've built there to do our own analysis of ourself as well. And so we're going to create structures that you're going to see. And over time, this community, I think, is going to be very proud of the work we're planning and we're starting to implement. But most of the folks are brand new in their roles. They need time to get there. I needed that time last year to learn this district. At this time last year, I didn't know much of anything. I had been here three months. And I was still learning the pieces. And I'm going to pass to Ruben on, how do we accelerate?
And trustee Phillips, can I acknowledge?
Just really quickly, Mr. Aurelio, before you go, I want to make this comment. And Dr. Wald, when you were talking just now, and I was talking earlier about the different schools of thought. You know, whether you use the supplemental or concentration money that comes in to keep, you know, everything afloat, or whether you figure out a way to actually target that money to those children. And like I said before, this is a discussion that we've had. What you just said is something that I've heard you say in the past. And so at some point, there really has to be, you know, a reckoning. And what happens when we have these conversations around the state and additional funding that we need from them? It's very hard, I think, sometimes to argue that you need more money when you're pretending that you can make it work. You know, because there will always be those people who say, well, you look like you're doing fine. But the truth is, you're not. You're pretending to make it work. And you're holding it together with shoestrings and tape and anything else that you can. And what we're doing here, I believe, and I think what is happening in some other districts as well, is we're getting a pot of money. We're doing the best that we can. We're pretending to make it work. And then that gives the people in Sacramento the ability to say, see, I gave you enough. I gave you enough. And I never have, and they never have to have the conversation that says, are the people in DC, they never have to have to have the conversation. They said, well, you know, but, you know, we don't have to acknowledge that you had to use your general fund to supplement sped or that you had to use Title I to do this, or that you had to use the supplemental and concentration funds to do this. Stuff that it was never actually meant for because we're all pretending to be able to make it work when we can't. And, and, and also I want to say before I stop and let Mr. Aurelio go is that, you know, I understand that we can't, you know, fix this, you know, overnight. But if we had started, you know, years ago, frankly, when we knew there was a problem, we wouldn't be here today. And so what I'm asking for is real, and I understand things happen. And I understand sometimes you, you set dates and, and there are contingencies and whatnot where you can't for whatever reason. But I am asking for a real timeline where we will really be able to ratify and change some things because people are tired and people are frustrated. And people don't have trust and they don't have trust because they've been telling us this for years. And so I'm going to be here for a few more years. And, and some of you are as well. And so I want, I want timelines. So we don't.
Thank you, trustee Phillips and Dr. Wald and Mr. Aurelio, don't interrupt. It's already 8:46 and I know that we just we need to move on. So if we can continue, and I have a few questions, well, actually just one question to ask. And maybe if Mr. Aurelio can insert the answer that he was going to give right now, if you can share that.
Really, really brief both to trustee Phillips and trustee Panis. This presentation is not to minimize what we need to do. And the urgency is felt not only by you, but by us as well at staff. Three years is a plan that we are going to work through, but that does not mean that year one, you're not going to see changes and improvement to the programs. But we feel a sense of urgency.
Thank you, Mr. Aurelio. Thank you, trustee Phillips, for your questions as well as your comments. I would like to just add very quickly, I know we have to move on and we have a lot to cover. I think trustee Phillips, trustee Panis asked a lot of questions that, that I had also written down. I think that I was going to ask more about the internal monitoring systems, what things are going to be put in place to prevent these types of findings from occurring again. And I think that you answered that partially. I was also going to ask about, you know, what, what was the, the purpose of the delay essentially? Because I know that we already had a similar discussion about getting the results, not the results, the findings earlier when they were actually brought, you know, to the district and to bring it forward to board leadership so that we can be also in the know formally of these arriving at our door. So I just want to know what, you know, and not in hindsight, but now thinking in the future with the next board. How, how is the district, how are we going to handle giving that information promptly and quickly so that it doesn't go months unnoticed and that it comes to board leadership right away?
So part of us building accountability is making sure as we're aware of concerns that we're updating the board. We've been working very hard to keep those Friday letter updates, keeping the board abreast of all things, good and bad, in areas that we're focusing on so that we don't have things that fall behind and don't have that focus. Part of it was transition of staff getting built in to get that there. And we're trying to build structures where everything does come to the board in a timely manner on each of the aspects. And we'll be working over next year to really refine processes and bring to the board presentations about how things are done so that the board understands the whole process.
Thank you. Yeah. And I think that is very important. I know that we recently had Director Ossignio and CAO Aurelio join the team in their respective positions. But I think that we had staff before when these were received and, and I just want to confirm, these were received in the spring, correct?
The first piece that we had to start responding to is at right at the end of the school year. And then you have the time where you have to do all the responses. And then many of the findings get changed and then you go through. So there's two, there's a couple back and forth that really take you through the summer into the fall. With the pandemic, it slows everything down quite a bit. And so that's partially why you see what might be deemed as a delay. It was more going through the process of the back and forth because it wasn't an in-person visitation. Everything is done in a much slower, more methodical way.
Thank you, Dr. Wolf. And my, my last question is, I noticed that in the three-year plan, I know it's a draft and I know there will be community input. But I was wondering if there is any notion of actually calling out bilingual education and dual language immersion programs in it? Because I know we still have, we still don't have a long-term DLI plan. That's something that I've been pushing since before I was on this board. And so I know that there's work being done to, to prep for this. But I just want to make sure that it doesn't get left out and kind of as, as a, as a marginal or high, you know, just as something that is not at the, at the core of the plan as well, because there's a lot that needs to be done with supporting ELLs and in terms of the bilingual education that they get and that it's rich and that it's not done, you know, just as the program grows, that it's actually focused on how to benefit the kids first and foremost. So I would really want to know just that, if you can share very briefly, how are you planning to incorporate that?
By one thing, I want to really sort of delineate between the dual language immersion and the EL plan. Because we, they, they aren't necessarily one in the same, right? We, we do have a separate advisory committee now with the DLI and the MDAC. And so we're going to see plans for vaults. We're going to see a DLI plan specifically. That'll be its own long-term plan and you're going to have your EL plan as well. Now, Kristi, if you want to add to that.
Sure. Just that it's something that is being built in conjunction with the DLI advisory and the administrators from the DLI sites. And it's something that is, has a lot of, there's a lot that needs to be done. I agree. And that the plan will encompass all the things that, changes that we might need to make and ensure that the programs are healthy and strong going forward.
And I'm just going to add on the compliance side. You don't want DLI incorporated in an EL plan. Because again, you can't use the funding the same way you want DLI to be a standalone, very robust plan built forward. So they're in conjunction because there's some overlap. But DLI is not part of your EL program. EL is above and beyond, and you have to make sure that you keep that differentiation so that you're ensuring that you're implementing both programs appropriately with the appropriate fidelity.
Thank you for, thank you for the explanation to the three of you. And I just, you know, I think I would like to have more clarifying information on that because I know that a lot of the purpose of having DLI is to make sure that ELLs are supported. So to support students that are learning English as a second language in, in a, in an additive way. I would like to just have more clarification on that. On, I understand the funding is different, but I want to know how, you know, how it's also going to be incorporated in some ways to, to call out that these programs do exist specifically to support second language acquisition of English language learners. Thank you so much. Thank you to Director Ossignio, to, to CEO Aurelio and to Dr. Wolf as well. Thank you all. I don't have any further questions and I would like for us to continue to the next item.
President Hernandez Jarvis, just 15 seconds, if you don't mind.
15 seconds, please go ahead. Thank you.
I know you probably can't do this tonight and this is back to staff, but the timeline that I was asking for earlier, I really do want it. And those are my question, the additional 15 seconds. Thank you, trustee Hernandez Jarvis.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. And I think that if, if we can have, if we can incorporate the feedback of the board today of the questions that were asked. And maybe that can also be part of the Friday memo. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you for the community too, for sticking with us right now as we go through the first discussion item. Our next discussion.
Madam President, can I just add a comment in my departure around the notion of what funding does for our schools? I mean, I think of the things I've learned over the last six years, the reality is there are students that are subsidizing through the funds dedicated to them all aspects of our district. And if we truly turn around and we can, we certainly can dedicate funds just for that. I guarantee you, we will hear from other parts of the district that will feel like they're, what, where we're going to fill those gaps. And so I get it. I totally get it when it comes to, what does it mean to not do that then? But in many ways, what that means is we're the ones who hurt because while we still try to go advocate outside of the district for funds, the real term of having to keep it together still lies with us. And so to Mr. Wald's point, trust me, when I say this, if you truly want to focus on the majority of the students in this district who are primarily low income, primarily English learners, there's a whole set of dollars that you can dedicate and say, if we went supplemental and concentration just for what it is, that should be used. But because we are 75% students of color, there's, there's majority black and brown students in this district. So when you talk about spending money outside of these dedicated programs, you're still supporting the overall programming for a majority of the students in this district who are black and brown. So it's hard to separate those dollars. So if the community is ready, then that means people need to come to terms with the fact that there are students who have subsidized this district. Because they're, without their presence, you wouldn't have 52 schools open. This district would collapse in itself. And I think that's one of the things that we need to think about when we talk about the interconnectedness of all of us and trying to find that balance. Is that it is not about me getting my piece, at least for our district. And I never thought that that's what the value system of this community is either. Because in reality, that fails to recognize our interconnectedness of the struggle together to put our energy where it needs to be. But if we start figuring out how to sectionalize things, then remember there's restrictions upon those dollars as well. It's not all unrestricted dollars. And that's one of the things to think about when we talk about, when we talk about collectively, what does it mean to fund our schools from one school versus another? I'd be happy to support school number two. And I'd be cheerleading anybody who could pull it off without the district collapsing in on itself. And those same English learners, those same black and brown kids would still suffer when that happens. So those are the things that I think it's important for our new board to consider where all these pieces come together. Because I think it's very oversimplistic to think about things in relation to, well, if I just pull this where it's supposed to go. The reality is, is we are not being funded at the level that we need to. But when you're hungry and your family is hungry, it don't matter that you know in consciousness you don't have enough. You still work to figure out how to feed everybody. I used to get a school stipend when I was in college that once I paid for all my books, all the things I needed for tuition, I had some leftover. I should have been using all of that just for my education. But I have brothers and sisters who are younger who might be hungry that week. And I use some of it to feed them. Those are the, those are the things to think about in relation to how much will we continue to do that? And how much will we want when we want to make a point to the leaders outside of the district? Those are just some things I think for us to remember in this complete context.
Thank you, Justice Phillips. Thank you so much. So up next, we have our next discussion item, E2, public hearing from Summit Tamalpais Charter Renewal.
So good evening, trustee. Trustees, tonight, can everyone see the screen because I lose being able to see everyone else?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So tonight we have the initial presentation from Summit Tamalpais. And we're going to do from staff, a brief overview of the process. We will be creating a staff, full staff report that'll be published on December 1st. By law, it has to be 15 days prior to the hearing. And the actual renewal hearing will be on December 16th. So tonight I am very pleased to introduce our director of, our coordinator of charter schools, Denise Sefeli, who's going to go quickly through the renewal process, what we've done. We're then going to hand it over to Summit Tamalpais to do a brief presentation and then open the public hearing.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Wolf.
And thank you. Good evening, President Hernandez Jarvis, Board Trustees, Superintendent Duffy, Staff and Community. We are here this evening for the public hearing renewal of Summit Public Schools Summit Tamalpais. Next slide? Oh, never mind. You're on it. Summit Tamalpais was initially approved on June 10th, 2015 for a term of five years, beginning July 1, 2016, and expires on June 20th, 2021. They are a grade seven through 12 charter school and is seeking a five-year renewal term. Summit Tamalpais is part of a network of charter schools centrally governed and operated by Summit Public Schools Charter Management Organization, or CMO, and are under the Eldorado Charter Special Education Local Plan Area, or SALPA, and has an enrollment of approximately 450 students. The school is one of two summit schools operating within the district's boundaries. The other is overseen by the Contra Costa County Office of Education. Next slide? Oh, never mind. With the provisions of Assembly Bill 1505, most of which took effect July 1, 2020, Ed Code 47605B states that no more than 60 days after receiving a petition, the authorizer shall hold a public hearing on the provisions of the charter, at which time the board shall consider the level of support for the renewal of the petition. And within 90 days, the decision of the renewal should occur unless that time is extended by mutual agreement for an additional 30 days. The decision hearing for Summit is scheduled to take place on December 16th of this year. Charter authorizers must also consider the charter school's performance on the indicators and Charter authorizers must also consider the charter schools' performance on the indicators included in the state's California school dashboard. When evaluating a renewal petition, there are now three tiers for renewal. Where a high performing charter could be renewed for five to seven years, middle performer for five years. And a low performer general generally would not be renewed. However, under certain conditions may be renewed for two years. Middle performers may only be denied if written findings show that the charter failed to meet or make significant progress toward meeting standards. That provide a benefit to pupils of the school and closure is in the best interest of the pupils. And decision placed a greater weight on measurements of academic performance. Another major provision of Assembly Bill fifteen oh five is that charter teachers much must have the appropriate credential for their certificated assignments. Regardless of whether or not they teach a core subject. So teachers employed in two thousand nineteen, twenty without a credential will have until July one of two thousand twenty-five to attain the appropriate credential. Any newly hired teacher must hold the same credentialing certificate, permit, or other documents required for the teacher's assignment. Similar to other public school teachers. Next slide. Staff has begun its preliminary analysis of Summit Tamalpais's renewal petition. Which has included requests for additional and clarifying information. So we have a very large team. Next slide.
So before I jump over, I just want you to take a look at how many of our staff are beginning the analysis and looking at. The charter as part of the law. We plan to continue to use the same staff to be looking at each of our own programs and using these best practices. And we'll talk a little bit about some of the areas that we're already looking at before we hand it over to Summit.
As the information is returned and reviewed, staff will begin drafting their findings and recommendations. Finalized findings and recommendations will be posted by December first of this year for board and public view. That information will also be included in the December sixteenth, um, decision hearing. And next slide.
And so with that, we will be handing it over in just a minute to Summit Tamalpais. To be able to give their presentation and then open the public hearing as they're going to begin. A couple of areas that we're going to continue to focus on, and we've already sent a series of questions. We're still looking at, had a long conversation about English learner achievement. That's an area we're talking with them about. Also, we're talking with them about their plans as it pertains to chronic attendance and suspensions of students. That are areas within the dashboard that have been concerns. So we're going to continue to have those conversations. We're going to hand it over to them to do their presentation as part of this public hearing.
Yes. And so we would like to introduce Summit Executive Directors, Jereem Gunter and Joy Jackson, who will present their information.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Uh, hello, my name is Jereem Gunter, and I'm the Executive Director of Summit Tam High School. And you also hear from my partner, Joy Jackson, who is the Executive Director of Summit Tam Middle School. Before we get started, I just wanted to ask you one question. This question is, I want you to think about this question when you hear about our students. I want you to think about this question when you hear about our teachers. I want you to think about this question when you hear about our families. The question is, what is your why? Why did you get into teaching? Why did you get in running for school board? And let me stop and also say congratulations to the new school board members. And thank you, trustee, uh, Suarez for everything you've done. And why did you want to be superintendent? I'm here because of my why. I believe all students can succeed and achieve greatness. Not just some students, but all students. And I am pro help, helping students become the best they can be. As I know we all are here for that. And that's why you're sitting in the CEU are, because we are all, we believe that all students can achieve. Next slide, please. Education is the most powerful weapon we can use to change the world. And the way we do this is by preparing a diverse population for success in a four-year college and to be thoughtful contributing members of society. We leverage our work by having a broader impact on public education. At TAM, every single student is equipped to lead a fulfilled life, a life of well-being. That is filled with purpose, financial independence, community, strong relationships, and health. Next slide, please. I came into this work because I am committed to equity for all. Not just some, but for all students. I was excited to see that this year our school has put anti-racism and equality front and center. From personal development and knowledge development to anti-bias, anti-racist content and curriculum. We know that the more our curriculum in school includes everyone, the healthier and more connected our school will be. We started building equity with Summit Tam staff. Our staff is by far the most diverse when talking about race, religion, and sexuality out of all the summit schools. Next slide, please. While working in education for over seventeen years now, the main thing that I've learned is students always mimic the behaviors of the adults in the room. And the more the teachers grow personally, it automatically makes them better teachers. One person's growth influences someone else's growth. Admin influences teachers, teachers influence students, and students influence admin. And that can go any way. But the point is, we all influence each other, and the better we are, the better the next person will be. This is a visual, uh, our teachers see to understand the personal development workshops they go through. Teachers go through this roadmap in partners with supportive partner organizations and community leaders to help them grow stronger personally. For teachers, the goal is by the end of the year to complete this roadmap. Next slide, please. In order to fulfill our vision for students, our approach is to teach, teach, excuse me, our approach is to learn and teach students. These, these four key outcomes. We are not just teaching academics for students to have good grades. We're focused on building universal skills. To equip students with essential and transferable lifelong skills to navigate college and career. Different from traditional schools, we are more concerned with mastery rather than completion, which helps us focus on content knowledge. Students must understand academic subjects more than just Google searches on the web. Every great thing I've ever done is based on a habit I created. That is why we focus on habits of success. Habits of success are social, emotional mindset and behaviors like resilience, social awareness, a sense of belonging, and a sense of purpose. That's for students inside and outside of school. When creating those habits, one of the most important steps is concrete next steps. Every student in the TAM family will have a plan for what they will achieve by the end of the time they graduate. Next slide, please. For those not familiar with our school, it's important to understand how a student days work. Student's time is organized like this. Mentor time that includes one-on-one mentoring, community time, project-based learning, self-direction, and expeditions. Expeditions help students discover passion outside of just the traditional academic classes. Core subject areas include arts, STEM, future planning, leadership, and much more. We also have internship placements in industry sectors such as technology, law, biotechnology, medicine, and a bunch of others. Next slide, please. And now I'm going to pass it to my partner in crime, Joy Jackson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joy, and as Jereem said, I am the Executive Director of the Middle School and a former teacher at Summit Tamalpais. When I look at the, our subgroup data, I am so thankful to know we serve the same students and families. But this does not come automatically. We have to be so laser focused in our recruitment efforts. Tonight you will hear from Ms. Carolina Zani, a founding parent and our current community engagement manager. Who is a mastermind at building and fostering and galvanizing family and community relationships. Our recruitment efforts are high, and we are intentional about every touch point families have after they accept. We make sure to build real connections so they want to stay until twelfth grade. I know as a parent, it is a family's dream to find a seven through twelve school option they can stay with. With this mission in mind, we can, we already see a hundred percent of our rising twelfth graders in this district. Saying I have been accepted to a four-year college or university in the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Next slide. We agree with the board's mandate that local educators must be representative of our students. Not only does representation matter, but a seat at the table of power is necessary in all levels of our work. We work to retain our teachers at a higher rate. We want our teachers to feel safe enough, compensated enough, and developed enough to want to stay. We give teachers pathways to leadership and development. I myself, who deeply identifies as a teacher, never thought I would become the dean of culture and instruction, and now in the seat as a school leader. Jereem and I both believe in working to create a happy, connected, cared-for staff that loves their students and their colleagues. And are proud of the work we do at TAM. Next slide. It is not acceptable to be orange on the state dashboard for English language arts and yellow for math. These scores in our second year were a complete shock to the system for us. The second year in the life of our school was hard. Our founding principal went on maternity leave in October. We added a great level of teachers and students and had one first-year vice principal leading the school. We didn't have scalable systems in place. We didn't have a way for our founding teachers to transfer knowledge and values to our new teachers. By year three, our school was at a make or break moment. We had a persistent walkout culture, send-out culture, play fighting, and physical fighting culture. And the biggest lever we didn't use was fortifying our teachers with a unified response and strategies to deal with behaviors that harm the community. Our families, teachers, students, these scores showed us exactly what we needed to address, repair, and redefine in our Tamalpais culture. We've done so much work to build and continue to define who we are. I am talking commercials on ways to behave and engage, a unified response to disruptions in class, which are three parts. One, we can come and check in with the student at the door. Two, I can come in and sit right next to that student and work with them for the rest of the class period. Or three, we can cover the class so the teacher has the opportunity to check in with the student at the door. But what we don't do is we don't rob students of their free, of their right to a free and fair public education. This is just one way we made it super clear what, how we can help when safety is breached. We implemented after-school restorative hours and in-the-moment backup and support for our teachers. I was sad when our students didn't get to take the S back last year. Because we were confident our students would have done much better because of the total reorienting of culture we made so that safety was a pervasive feeling. Our students are back to maximizing class learning, time supports, and this type of work takes everybody. Our parents, our students, teachers, support staff, everybody. Next slide. We believe in continuous improvement, and this is our benchmark. Our two thousand eighteen scores show our students only slightly ahead in English language arts. At TAM, instead of trying to solve our problems with technology, we know the teachers, the professionals in our building are our greatest gift. We pour development and care and mutual respect into our teachers. To improve ELA scores after addressing school culture, we focus on targeted small group instruction. Skills-based frequent feedback in finding and continuing to develop qualified teachers. Next slide. We hold ourselves personally responsible to every student at our school having the concepts and skills needed to meet and exceed grade level proficiency in math. We will always welcome students who have gaps in their conceptual and procedural knowledge. We have learned to strike a balance. To build conceptual knowledge, our teachers facilitate discussions about student work. And ask students to share how they came up with their understanding to their peers. To build procedural knowledge with teachers' input, we have found a measured way to build students' procedural knowledge in math this year. Next slide. Improvement Science says this, that every system is designed perfectly for the results it gets. At Tamalpais, we believe we are here to serve those that have been least served by our system. We are here in the yellow, which shows our students meeting our exceeding standards by subgroups. But this is not nearly enough. Equity to us is being so intentional about who we serve and how we serve our students and families better. How do we know what to do next? We always look for a positive deviance in our teachers' classroom practices. We know our teachers are the most credible sources of information, not paying an outside person to come in. They know the context, they have the relationships, they know the goals, and they really are our North Star. I will share some practices we adopted to better serve our subgroups from teacher, parent, and student input later. Next slide. Every single eleventh grader will graduate college-ready next year. We made a commitment to these kids, to these families, five years ago as our founding seventh graders. We are driven to prove something by graduating a hundred percent of our class as a public school serving our West Contra Costa community. Next slide, please.
Last year was my first year at Summit. I was dean of culture and instruction at Summit K2, our partner school in the West Contra Costa County. So I saw firsthand how students in our community can be successful at graduation. When I first walked into Summit, they told me that this was the first graduating class and that all students would get, get accepted into a four-year college. And I was like, no way. When I learned that regular Summit's school graduates complete college at twice the national average, I was so surprised. I come from a long history of at-risk schools, and I've never seen that done before. But at my, at the, at the end of the first year of K2, even with the pandemic happening. Ninety-eight percent of students was accepted into a four-year college. Summit K2 has provided a roadmap for how we support students and how to best help us understand if we're on track. Next slide. Everyone at Summit is a lifelong learner. When we see an issue, we pivot and make corrections. At TAM, we identify school culture as an area for urgent intervention due to looking at data over the, over two years ago and noticing the amount of suspensions. So we, we, we are taking action, and in just a short amount of time, we are beginning to see positive results. Next slide. We know that students must feel safe to learn. That is why we started with school culture. We began by creating a sense of belonging for our students, which resulted in a decrease in suspension and an increased opportunity for learning. Our suspension rate continues to improve, uh, and suspensions at TAM declined sixty-five percent from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty. Even though enrollment increased twenty-seven percent. We know this is a result of an intentional emphasis we place on relationships and building student-centered systems. Our teachers understand that life and death lies in the power of the tongue. So the more we can uplift and motivate each and every student, the more our culture is strengthened and our community can benefit. Next slide, please.
In English language arts, again, we focus on targeted small group instruction, skills-based frequent feedback and find, feedback. And finding and continuing to develop qualified teachers. Our teachers have nine weeks of professional development to collaborate, plan, and recharge. Next slide. Let's go on a project walk in math. Our eighth graders are learning how to write equations to represent linear equations, relationships, I'm sorry. So what types of questions could they ask? Here's one. If your brother puts forty dollars on his spark card, and with each trip, three dollars and sixty cents is subtracted from the amount available. How much money will he have after he takes one trip, two trips, five trips? How many of us have figured out this very real problem for ourselves? Not even realizing we wrote an equation to represent a linear relationship. Solving real-world problems, pairing students with supportive peers, pulling small groups for targeted reteaching. And highlighting student work and discussion is how we build conceptual understanding. Our teachers found our students could also benefit from targeted support using IXL. These gains in their foundational skills allow students to more deeply engage with con- concepts. At every step of the way, we are, we continue to be responsive to our students and teachers as we implement supports that can. as we implement supports that can be tracked for their efficacy. Next slide. Our first job and purpose is to be in line and raise the English language learner performance levels within the district. We've done that. But we will never stop developing and refining our EOL supports until we meet the needs of a hundred percent of our students. We will see them make one level of growth within one year, and we mean a hundred percent. How does EOL support feel at TAM? As an English language learner, my day starts with my mentor checking in with me about my reading achievement progress. My teachers are using EOL sedai strategies, grouping me with supportive peers in breakout rooms, and reminding me that I have co-writer, speech to text, and curriculum translations on my Chromebook. My teacher is also modeling and facilitating discussions with me in small group. Finally, my teachers attend a weekly grade level team meeting where they look at my data and suggest next steps. We will continuously improve our EOL supports at Tamalpais. We listen to each person and empower everyone around the student and the student themselves to be a part of the solution in raising performance levels with their EOLs. Next slide. Ensuring students attend is our first priority. We maintain an almost ninety seven percent daily attendance rate at Tamalpais. But attending just isn't showing up. Our teachers pushed our standard for attending to also showing evidence of engagement by responding when your teacher calls on you and completing work. Otherwise, students are marked virtually absent. When we see our students are not engaging, our support staff outside the classroom contacts families and builds relationships with them. We hear their roadblocks, their challenges, and with this context and family input, we form a support plan. I love that once a student shows two good weeks, we call and thank the family for their partnership. Again, we have to be intentional with our words and follow through with our actions to maintain and build trust with our families so they know the importance of not losing a second of learning time for our kids. Next slide. Through our initial mentor meetings, we build trusting relationships with our parents and students and also in their transition IEPs. As we transition into virtual school, we knew it was critical to have a hundred percent transition meetings to make sure their parents understood our HIPAA compliant tools and to really crystallize how their accommodations would translate into a virtual space or what they would need additionally. We have a safe, accountable, and loving learning center where students get project support, executive functioning lessons, and work toward their goals. Finally, coaches and school leaders check in on a weekly basis with learning specialists and teachers to maximize the diverse supports they are providing and provide professional development. Next slide.
The pivot to virtual school has been seamless for TAM. The Summit model was already set up for a pandemic even before the pandemic. We work to folk, we, we focus on developing not only academic skills, but also habits of success in a safe and caring community. We know the transition to virtual was hard, and most schools and students struggled. But our TAM students showed up and showed out, and attendance is ninety seven percent during virtual school. Next slide, please. In virtual, we do not just think about academics. We think about families as a whole. We focus on four different areas. Food for families, technology, and making sure all students have access to internet, specialized services for diverse learners, and family support. We are a community school. Our job is to identify a need and fill it. Next slide, please.
There is not a doubt in our minds. We know in this county, our graduating seniors next year are on track to be accepted into four year colleges and universities. Even though our data is limited to the first two years of our existence, our story is about who we are right now. We continue to improve and hold ourselves responsible to measure what we care about. How are we serving our students? Our English language learners, our diverse students, our African American students, our social, socio-economically disadvantaged students? Are they coming? Are they engaging? Are they learning? Allow our school a pathway to show you with our graduating seniors and four classes after that, a more fuller picture of what we can do for student achievement as we continue to serve this community. Next slide, please.
As I asked in the beginning of this presentation, what is your why? Because education is not easy. This is hard work. Every career has ups and downs, but not every job has the power to change the world. And if you see a school working hard to better the future of our students and succeeding, I ask you to remember your why. Good teachers impart good education. Great teachers groom their students to become leaders, to become excellent. Ordinary teachers direct us along the right path, but great teachers inspire us to seek our own path. They encourage us to discover our talents. And Summit TAM is a school full of great educators whose main focus is to build great community leaders. We would love to continue our partnership with West Contra Costa and ask for our petition to be approved for five more charter renewal, charge, five more years. Thank you.
So as they close their presentation, the next process would be to open the public hearing for commentary? And they can go ahead and stop the screen share?
Thank you very much, Mr. Gunter and Ms. Jackson, for your presentations and thorough details. I would like to open up the public hearing now for Mount, for Summit Tamalpais Charter Renewal. So if we can have, again, a reminder, members of the public, you can raise your hand by pressing the raise your hand button on Zoom, or you can also press star nine if you're calling with your phone. And depending on how many people we have who want to speak, that's going to determine the amount of time allotted for the speakers.
Looking at the number of hands we have up, it will be one minute per speaker.
Great. And how many hands do we have up right now?
Currently have twenty four hands raised.
Thank you. So one minute. Thank you, Mr. Adelio.
And if we can remind folks, make sure they have both a first and last name so we can call them.
Thank you.
We can begin with Carolina Zani. Carolina, you may unmute and begin your comment.
Just give me one second. I'm so sorry. I wasn't ready. Can you give me one second? Here we go.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Carolina Zani. I'm a mother of two Timberwolves. TAM offers everything parents look for in a school, a space in a small community, diverse faculty and staff, a mentorship program in college readiness where a pathway to college is available to every kid. My children are growing and learning in a very healthy environment that meets their needs. Students' mental and emotional health are also a priority to them. Mentors make this possible by getting to know our children and know them well. I cannot be more grateful to all of them, teachers, mentors, and Summit Tamalpais leaders. Together, we are working towards the same goal, raising healthy children, preparing them to be our next leaders and successful members of our community. I respectfully ask you to support Summit Tamalpais Charter Renewal Petition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Christopher, Christopher McPherson.
Good evening. My name is Christopher McPherson. I believe that Summit Tamalpais is a school that supports people of the neurodiverse and specific learning community, including myself, while other students from neighboring schools do not have the same support during the COVID nineteen pandemic. Summit Tamalpais is adapting activities and lesson plans to hold virtually engaging lab work, research, and more to engage students and to continue building scientific tenacity, mathematical thinking skills, and literary skills. Like Mr. Gunter shared in the mission statement, Summit TAM supports specific academic needs and also tailored to mental health outreach, especially during virtual learning. It's important for all students to have access to good quality mental and academic support from their mentors, teachers, advisors, and more. And Summit Tamalpais does just that. I ask you to support Summit TAM's Charter Renewal Petition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Angeli Luna. Ms. Luna, you may unmute and begin your comment.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Angeli Luna. I'm a junior at Summit TAM, and I live in San Pablo, California. I believe that Summit Tamalpais is a school of opportunity. Summit Tamalpais is giving every student the opportunity to go to college with the belief that everyone can become anything if they put themselves into it. With the support of mentors and counselors and every teacher at Summit Tamalpais, students like myself have a chance to be heard and a chance to have someone outside of home and family to talk to. I am a first generation college student, and I didn't have anyone to tell me about college or how to prepare myself for college until my mentor, Ms. Lopez, informed us about different ways to enter college such as internships and scholarships. So I ask you to please support Summit TAM's petition for a five year charter renewal. Please don't take this opportunity away from us. Thank you and take care.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Veronica Martinez. You may unmute and begin your comment.
Gracias.
Our next speaker is Jezebel Diaz. You may unmute and begin your comment.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Um, I wanted to say that I am proud parent of an eleventh grade student, and I recently added another wolf to the pack with my second son attending seventh grade at Summit TAM. I wanted to share how important the TAM community has been, from the parents to the staff and the student body as well. Since attending TAM, my son has learned leadership skills, self-direction, and understanding of strong community values. Summit has supported not only our children educationally, but as an active volunteer, I have witnessed the emotional support that is rendered to our children. This explains why I'm here, supporting the renewal for Summit TAM. Summit has created the ability to bring our families together and our voices and concerns and opinions. They have taken the time to address and hear such concerns. We are a small school, but I know that with your support, you can help our students succeed in the larger skill that is called life. Summit is setting the way for all of our students to get a chance to college, and they have to continue show that this is not only a goal for my son, but a personal goal of theirs. Please support Summit TAM's renewal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jose Sanchez. You may unmute and begin your comment.
Gracias.
Our next speaker is Christian Perada Zani. Christian?
My name is Christian Perez de Zani. I currently reside in Penola, and I'm a junior attending Summit Tamalpais. I'm one of the founding students, and I'm here in support of a five year renewal. The adoptability of Summit's curriculum is a perfect example of how effective and beneficial it is, not only to teachers and students, but for families as well. Summit's conversion into virtual school happened in a matter of days, while it took others up to a week or several and are still struggling. The reason for that is Summit has provided a wide range of support and has consistently met the needs of every student. Our learning platform provides students with the tools and resources to be actively engaged forward. If still didn't have, if a student didn't have access to a source of wifi or materials, Summit provided. Another thing is that families are dependent on this system. The school were to be shut down, that would strip every student from having access to a reliable curriculum, mental health counselors, high quality education, mentorships, and a well-established community. I plead that you allow Summit a five year renewal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Elijah Diaz. Elijah, you may unmute and begin your comment.
Uh, good evening. My name is Elijah Diaz from the junior class of Summit TAM. If I were to say one thing about Summit TAM that has really changed my life for the better, it would be that the teachers actually give me a chance to talk to them on a professional and personal level. I can always look for emotional support from any of my teachers, including my mentor, Senor Aguilas. It really helps me to talk to someone else, especially when I'm at home and I'm with my family, and they can actually speak to me. And I am in support.
Uh-oh. Elijah, I think you went on mute. I'm sorry, Elijah. I'm gonna have to move you back over. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Next is Celia Rodriguez. Celia, you may unmute. Celia Rodriguez? Okay, I'm gonna move on. Selena Durham. Selena Durham, you may unmute. Selena?
Thank you. We can go into the next speaker, Mr. Adelio.
Yep, I'm moving down the list. Joseph Glazer, you may unmute.
Hi, just making sure you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I'm ready. So my name is Joseph Glazer. I'm a history teacher at Hercules Middle. I'm speaking tonight asking that the Summit Mount TAM renewal be denied. I remember when I was at Penole Middle School, we'd get Summit students that were pushed out every spring, right around S back testing time. Usually students with low skills and or behavior issues. Must have been a coincidence. Summit Mount TAM has a declining number of English learners. Reclassifying, only thirty three point three percent of students are making progress towards reclassification, which is in the very lowest range of the dashboard. With a large population of English learners in our community, Summit should be doing a better job to serve those students that they can succeed. I've seen our ELD English teachers in this district do valiant work helping English learners. I've seen kids go from speaking barely a word of English to being strongly conversational. I've seen heroic efforts made by our students because they feel supported and inspired. Summit students deserve better, and I believe they'd be well-served in our public district schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's try Lucy Juusto. Lucy? Can you unmute?
Yes, I'm here.
Perfect. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Lucy Juusto, and I'm also a teacher at Hercules Middle School. In the English department, I have taught intervention and also speech and debate. I'm part-time at Contra Costa College as a speech communication adjunct instructor. And Summit is a great business model. They are wonderful. I used the Summit curriculum at Hercules Middle School for two years, and it is wonderful, but it wasn't sustainable because we can't afford the staffing that Summit can. Summit has Summit has businesses supporting them as well as pulling money from public funds. So, their presentation is inferring that you can't get that education in West Contra Costa, and that's absolutely not true. With a school of four hundred students, seventh through twelfth grade, and the class size that they have, of course, they can. They can also cherry pick the students. As Mr. Glazer stated, we have received students at our school that are behavior quote-unquote problems, but they were not heard, they were not supported, but they came to our school and then succeeded. If we have the model that Summit has with the smaller class size, we would be even going beyond further what we are now. Fridays, we have our professional development for teachers on equity to support our students of color and faculty of color. We're doing amazing things in West Contra Costa. Please deny this charter school and have the money stay within our school so that we can be better through our entire district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's try Gabriela Micaletti.
Sorry, just one second.
No problem.
Okay. So, I teach at Bertie Elementary and I would never say that the education I provide students is perfect. Every year, I learn more and more about educating my students and engaging with the community as a whole. In schools such as Summit that have even higher teacher turnover than our district experiences, there is not the opportunity to build those bonds. Each additional year I stay at my site, I work with younger siblings and cousins and I'm able to create stronger community that supports better education. In addition, as you are well aware, we are working hard to break free of historic punitive measures and ensure that our work is equitable and supportive of student success. Not only have we significantly lowered our suspension rate in my five years at Verde, we continue that work in self-reflection weekly to consider how we as teachers and Verde as a whole can support students rather than punishing them for not fitting white supremacist norms. My concern here is seeing that Summit Mount TAM is in the red for suspensions, whereas for comparison, Kennedy is in the yellow and my school Verde is in the orange. Again, I do not accept that yellow or orange is an acceptable range and we continue to work to improve every day, but they show more change than remaining in the red without path forward.
Thank you.
Let's try Selena Durham one more time. Let's see if they're able to connect now. Selena Durham?
There she goes.
Yes, Miss, you may go.
Hi, my name is Selena Durham. I'm one of the founding students of Summit Tamalpais. One of the reasons I like Summit TAM is because of the personalized learning. Being able to get ahead of class or slow down to get a better understanding has benefited us students to be able to learn time management and keep us accountable. Another reason why I love Summit is because of the office hours that they provide, where you can get help from your teachers on current projects or revise and improve old projects or if you just need a place to be productive. Most of the students have to wait in line to talk to a counselor, but at Summit we have mentors. Mentors not only help with making a plan for your future, but also improve your skills to get there and support you with your emotional well-being. Summit has an amazing support system from the parents for what the kids need. My father is the head of the parent org, so I know personally that the parents just want the best for the students here at TAM. So I ask you to support our renewal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Shelley Waits. You may unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hi, I'm Shelley Waits and I live in Richmond. I have two sons that attend Summit TAM, one in ninth grade and one in tenth. I am here tonight to ask you to please support Summit TAM's petition for a five-year renewal. My husband and I both went through the Oakland Public School system. We are big supporters of public school and we both wanted our sons to go to traditional public school. Unfortunately, our experiences in elementary school with the boys determined that this was not the best option. They weren't achieving academically or socially and we thought about moving. But when we learned about Summit TAM, we decided to give it a try. This was the best thing that could have happened to our boys. They are socially, excuse me, they are succeeding academically and have found a wonderful support group both socially and with their teachers, mentors, and staff. They have been taught self-accountability and determination. College is no longer a maybe, but it is a win. They have gone from C students to A and B students and feel pride in their success. Their future is brighter because of their opportunities at Summit TAM. Please approve the renewal.
Thank you.
Next is Joanna Pace. You may unmute.
Good evening, Board. My name is Joanna Pace. We at Public Core urge the Board not to renew Summit TAM's charter. Why? Number one, Summit's crank absenteeism and suspension rates receive the CDE's lowest possible designation. This is a school on a downward trend. Number two, Summit enrolls consistently fewer English language learners than the district as a whole by a wide margin. Summit reclassifies very few of its ELL students. Last year, we classified fewer than four percent compared to the district's nearly ten percent. Measured by state-provided data, their ELL program is a failure. This alone should give the Board causes reconsider this charter. Third, Summit student attrition rate is worrisome. It is said to be the highest of all the charter schools in our district. Students are leaving Summit for a reason. Mediocre performance and state-level priorities, poor results for English learning learners, and unusually high student attrition. These remote results make them a clear case that Summit TAM is quote "not serving all pupils" end quote.
Thank you.
Next is Hillary Voe. You may unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hi, my name is Hillary Voe and I teach 10th grade English and I'm a 10th grade mentor of the very fabulous Voe Loserupters, um, which is the best mentor group according to my mentees and sometimes me. And I can't help it because I really joined TAM because of the mentoring program. And when I was looking for my credential, where to get it, as a first-generation college student, it was really important to me that I recognized that I wouldn't be where I am without the mentors that helped me. So I really wanted to give back to the community in that way. And the mentoring is still my favorite part about Summit. And, um, I wanted to share some comments that my mentees left for me today. They just emailed me because we were doing gratitude. Thank you, Ms. Voe, for helping me get better at English and for making me feel less nervous. I, uh, love you. And I just thought that was really sweet, so I'm asking you to respectfully consider our petition for renewal because we are working on improvement every single day. That's what we teach our students and that's what we're aiming to do for ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hannah Exler, you're next.
Hi, good evening. My name is Hannah Exler. I am also a teacher at Summit TAM. I teach ninth grade history and I am a 10th grade mentor. This is my second year here at TAM and it's my third year working with a Summit school. Um, now I know that TAM is a younger school. Um, because of that, we are constantly being pushed to grow. Um, and because of this, there's opportunity for all of our faculty, even newer teachers such as myself, to influence how the school builds and reshapes itself. Through some of these growing pains, I have also experienced so much success here and pride being a part of the school. I was initially drawn to Summit, similarly to Hillary, for the mentoring program and the benefits of being able to form strong relationships with students. I stay here because I have students and mentees tell me things like, I don't want to go to another school. The teachers actually care and want to support us here. I have already experienced so much personal growth working at TAM. I've seen strides from my 10th grade mentor group and improvements in school culture, and I know this can continue if we are given the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Haley Richards, you are next.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, okay. Hi, my name is Haley Richards. I'm the 7th grade history teacher at Summit TAM. Although I'm new to TAM, I've never felt more supported or prepared in my three years of teaching. What TAM does differently is that it operates as a truly data-driven and value-driven campus. From the insights our platform gives to students about their weekly progress, to the personalized feedback that students discuss with a trusted mentor, TAM's commitment to developing thoughtful, self-directed learners is abundantly clear. Through the platform, all of my students are able to identify missed learning objectives and independently create goals to improve their understanding. Similarly, students receive weekly shout-outs that reward them for their habits such as kindness, organization, and academic achievements. With this culture of support and targeted feedback, the growth I've seen in my students' writing and interpersonal skills, even during these trying times, is impressive. Summit's whole student approach to education is the best model for our community's success and deserves your support for renewal.
Next is Sharifa Washington.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Sharifa Washington and I'm the Dean of Culture and Instruction at Summit Tamalpais. As noted by Trustee Cuevas, black and brown youth deserve equal opportunity to thrive. Trustee Cotton Blake also mentioned doing what's best for students. That is our priority. For twelve years, I worked within a district school in Southern California and the general conversation was always anti-charter. I naturally adopted this mindset with little knowledge as to what charters were about. Last year was my first year working within a charter school and had the ability to see firsthand the positive impact that charters have on the community. This is my first year with Summit Tamalpais as part of the admin team. From day one, our focus has been on putting students first and ensuring that students get all the support they need, like providing hotspots. And the Summit platform was designed with English learners in mind. However, we're aware that additional support is needed and doing the work needed for our students is our work in progress. What I most appreciate about Tamalpais is the platform and the mentoring program and students being equipped for college. We ask that you please support us in a five-year renewal.
Thank you.
Next is Jackie Wilson. You may unmute.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. My name is Jackie Wilson. I'm also a dean of culture and instruction at Summit Tamalpais. On behalf of the youth, parents, and educators that make up our school community, I call for your support for the renewal of our school's charter. I must share with your board what this school means to my family. In 2019, my daughter completed her eighth-grade year and immediately began sharing her thoughts about the type of high school that she wanted to attend. She did, however, share that she didn't want to remain in a district or state that we were currently residing in. Amongst many, many options, she in no specific order requested a high school with a strong mentoring program, diverse community, and a strong focus on pathways to college and beyond. As we began our high school search, my daughter began sending me videos about Summit public schools and I decided to take a leap of faith as a single mother of two to move across the country to fulfill her dream. The past year and a half have been amazing for my daughter, who is a diverse learner, who has struggled in the past academically and emotionally. As for the aforementioned reasons, I strongly request and urge you to please renew the charter for Summit Tamalpais. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jordan Martinez-Wallace, you are the next public comment.
Hello?
Yes.
Greens, everyone. My name is Jordan Martinez-Wallace. I'm currently a junior at Summit Tamalpais and in support of my school's renewal. I want to say something positive about Summit Tamalpais that changed my life for the better. It would be the one-on-one mentor time. I feel safe to share just about anything going on in my life with my mentor, Ms. Pedroza. Just talking to my mentor privately has improved my mental health and ultimately aids with getting difficult topics off of my chest. Shining down on Tamalpais and ending mentor time will be mentally harmful to me and my development because I'll be losing a person I trust and I can tell just about anything too. And somebody who's been there for me, they're digging thin. I ask that you all please allow Summit another five-year charter renewal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ernesto Umana. You may come off mute.
Good evening. My name is Ernesto Umana and I'm a resident of El Cerrito, but I have served students in Richmond for the past six years. Before I joined Summit, I worked for another charter school in the area whose renewal this board denied last spring against district staff recommendation and against legal standards. Still, I supported that difficult decision because of my experience there as an overworked and under-supported teacher. There are misconceptions in our community about the working conditions of teachers at Summit. And I want to be clear, Summit TAM is different. I have served as the math eight teacher at TAM for four years and I am now the site rep for our union. What has kept me and still keeps me at TAM is our culture of continuous improvement and collaboration. I feel seen and heard in our weekly meetings for our leadership team, Red Devil team, and coaching meetings. I know that no matter the meeting, there's always a role for me to play and it is this spirit that allows for honest, actionable, and timely feedback that pushes our work in the right direction. I extended an invitation to any board member, current or elect, to connect with me offline if you have questions about the actual teacher experience at TAM. I humbly ask for your support in our renewal petition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mark Rizcala.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Mark Rizcala, current dean of culture and instruction at Summit K2. Uh, prior to being a dean at K2, I worked with Summit's in-house teacher residency program. As a part of this role, I worked to support cooperating teachers, master teachers, and new teacher residents at multiple multiple schools, including Summit TAM and Summit K2. I know for a fact that Summit TAM is full of high-quality educators. Not only did I work personally with Jureem as a dean of culture and instruction at Summit K2 last year, I also worked with Joy in her time as a cooperating teacher before she became a dean and then executive director at TAM. In my work with the teacher residency, I worked with many of the current teachers at TAM, including Thomas Pedroza, Martine Vela-Sainchez, Hannah Exler, Hillary Voe, and Madison Friendstrom. In my personal experience with each of these educators and in being on campus at TAM regularly during my time as part of our teacher residency, I am confident that Summit TAM is achieving Summit's vision of all graduates living a fulfilled life. Although many traditional public schools attempt mentoring programs, Summit's mentoring program with prioritizing weekly check-ins and social emotional circles really does well to do that. I humbly ask for Summit TAM's petition for charter renewal.
Thank you.
Next is Sarai Camacho Alvarez. You may unmute.
Um, hello, I am Sarai Camacho. I am a founding student and I say with confidence that Summit has definitely provided any support necessary for my academic and personal growth. TAM is a place that nurtures my emotional and academic progress as well and well-being. As someone who left and returned to Summit, I can speak to the support that only Summit can provide. Without Summit TAM, many students and myself would be lost. I am also grateful of the relationships I have created with many of my teachers, especially my mentor. She has shown dedication to pushing us to our success, which I believe every student is entitled to. This support, this type of support while being shaped into their adult selves. I respectfully ask you to support the TAM renewal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next one is Selena Durham. And I'm gonna let the person know Fahima. You need to have a first and last name. I'm sorry, cannot call you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Selena Durham?
Hello?
Yes, you can go.
This is Anthony Durham. Selena Durham spoke. We have some computer issues, but this is Anthony Durham. I don't know if I should be on there. Anyway. Um, hi, my name is Anthony Durham. I'm a proud parent of an 11th grade founding student at Summit Tamalpais. I would like to speak on our parent engagement. When I first approached the school about starting our parent organization, Parents of the Pack, or POP as we call it, they were very excited and supportive of the idea. We have a lot of parents who are engaged in our school at various levels in a variety of ways. The staff and the teachers at the school recognize us and listen to our concerns and ideas. For example, when we told them that student cellphone use was an issue, they listened to us and we developed the process where student phones are collected upon arrival, secured, and returned to them at the end of the day. That is just one of the many examples of the parent engagement and empowerment at Summit Tamalpais. I pray and I respectfully ask that all of you support the Summit Tamalpais car renewal petition. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I see that Fahima now has two names. Fahima Zaman, you may unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay, perfect. Um, so hi, my name is Fahima Zaman and I have had the privilege of working for both the district as a teacher at Richmond High and for Summit TAM as a 7th grade middle school science teacher. At both schools, I worked with teams that put students first. At both schools, I worked with teams that put students first. At both schools, I worked hard to bring joy, education, and growth into my classrooms. Tonight, I heard some argue that Summit should not be renewed as they are pulling resources from the district. However, I want to remind us that we are all here to help our students and our community and we should not be pitting ourselves against one another, but rather figure out ways in which we can all thrive. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna try. There are four hands left. President Hernandez Jarvis, do you want me to just finish the last four?
I wanted to check with you if the last person that raised your hand, I thought it was under the name Selena Duran.
Yeah. The only one was the Celia Rodriguez. We had tried earlier. I can try that person again.
Yes, yes. Let's give them another chance. Thank you.
Celia Rodriguez, can you unmute now?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you may speak now.
Okay, hello, good evening. Hello, my name is Celia Rodriguez Misonich. I am an 11th grader and a third-year student. The years I've been here were making new friends, new relationships with my teachers, and getting the support I need. This provided me, the school has helped me to be more successful for college and provided me the support if it's emotional or academically. The years of high school, everything has been overwhelming, but they have changed my way of thinking. What I appreciate is that TAM teachers have supported me with decisions that are benefiting benefiting me into becoming an independent and empowering woman. They have prepared me for what is to come when I'm an adult and will do so for future students. I will hope you will help us renew our charter and let us grow as a community.
Thank you.
So that would be the last comment for this item.
Thank you so much. And so, thank you. The public hearing is now closed for this specific item for Summit Tamapaias charter renewal. I want to thank again both directors that are here with us, Mr. Gunther and Ms. Jackson. Thank you so much for your presentation for taking the time to be here and to share the presentation with the staff and community. Thank you. And so this was a discussion item, so there is no action being taken tonight. It's just for information and preparation of the action that will be taken on December 16. Thank you.
Thank you so much, President Hernandez Jarvis, and thank you so much to everyone that came up to speak and comment.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
President Hernandez Jarvis?
Thank you. Josie Panas?
Are you, are board members gonna be asked to ask questions or no?
Oh, that's right. Thank you for that. I'm sorry. I noticed it's 10:04 and I was thinking already about the next agenda item, the action item. So if we can, if we can actually extend the meeting first and foremost, I know that we have people waiting for the next two action items as well. So I would like for a board member to make a motion to extend the meeting.
I'll move, we extend the meeting to 11:00.
Motion, maybe a trustee Panas, is there a second?
The last thing on motion is on this board is to second Mr. Panas's. Support can continue to business.
Thank you. Was that a second trustee Cuevas? I couldn't hear you clearly. Great, thank you. Can we please take a vote? And I can remind you of the order. Trustee Lada beginning, or I think, yes, trustee Lada?
Lada, yes. I must, yes.
Anna, yes.
Justice Phillips, I think I saw you. Yes, I couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry, I did take it off mute. I meant to say yes.
Great. And then this driver is, yes, motion passes unanimously to extend the meeting to 11:00 PM. Thank you, board. So if we can ask questions and if I can ask you to please, if the question has been asked already, if the comments can be made via email or something else as well, if we can get right to the point because we still have a lot of other business to do in action items. The student trustees have left already, so thank you to trustee Garcia Avila and trustee Cotton Blake for your presence and your questions tonight. We can get started with trustee Lada, followed by trustee Cuevas, trustee Panas, trustee Phillips, and then myself. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation very much. I have several questions. So, Mr. Gunther, how have, how long have you been at the school?
So I have been at Summit Tamapaias since this year started.
Just this year, so just a few months?
Just this school year, a few months.
Just this school year. Okay, Ms. Jackson, how long have you been at the school?
Thank you so much, trustee Lada. I've been at this school since 2016. The year before that, I was at K2, and the year before that, I was in San Francisco Unified.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have some questions about finance. What is the average salary of your site administrators?
Thank you for that question. I have it right here. If you'll just give me a moment to pull it up. We have the average site salary. Oh, I cannot find where I put it.
The average site salary, yeah, the average site salary is 104.
104, 1,004, okay. What is the average teacher salary?
The average teacher salary is 70,000.
70,000, okay. In terms of your charter management organization, how much do you pay to them?
Thank you so much for that question. We don't have that exact number, but we can submit it for the board after this meeting.
Do you know the percent?
I do not know the percent exactly and I don't want to misquote.
The percent is 14.5.
Okay.
Okay. And do you lease, own, so you rent your facility?
Yes, we do.
How much rent do you pay?
Again, I appreciate the question, but I don't have that number right in front of me, Jureem, do you?
Yep, so facility, facility cost is $945,640, $46.
Almost a million dollars for your facility.
Yes.
Who do you pay that to?
One second, let me find that. We don't have that information actually right now, but we can make sure we submit that to you.
So who owns the land? Who owns the building? You've got to know that.
Yeah, yeah. Who owns the building is the Chamberlains.
Thank you. What is your annual teacher attrition rate? That means how many not returning teachers?
Thank you for that question. For 2017, 18, we had a teacher retention of 75%. We've increased, so 75% and currently we have a 65% rate. So it has gone a bit down, but that's why we're so focused on making sure that we have the right teachers and also that they feel supported and heard.
Okay, how many students, what is your disenrollment numbers or how many students leave the school?
Thank you so much for that question. Let me just pull it up. And so in the middle school, our persistence rate is 89.4% and in the high school, it is 73.9%. We had 89% the first year that we opened. We dipped in between and now we're back up to that 89% rate. We do see that between middle school and high school, students tend to leave if they are looking for a more robust sports program within the district. So that's where we see the most of our students transitioning. If students choose the high school, then we see that they stay throughout.
So, and the students that do leave, are any of the students low-performing students that you know of or that you can't tell?
Thank you. It's really important for us to be able to give an ins and outs report and so we can make sure that the board has that of exactly who disenrolled. We really don't see a trend across who is leaving, but again, the biggest retention loss comes between eighth grade and ninth grade for students that are looking for a more fuller sports option.
Okay. Now, I hear a lot about going to college. You've got 450 students and you're assuming they're all going to go to college? What about a student who doesn't want to? They want to get a job? How do you prepare them? Or you have career pathways? What do you do for those students?
Thank you for asking about them, Justice Lada. I'm thinking of two things. One, our expeditions program is really meant so that students have multiple options for different career paths and are exposed to different career paths in their high school tenure so that they know exactly what my concrete next step is going to be. We also want our students to have an acceptance into a four-year university. Whether or not they choose to go is up to the family and the student and their circumstances, but we want to give them the option by having that acceptance letter.
Okay, are you, during this pandemic, are you providing food for all your students?
Yes, we do have a food pickup. Those are our first priorities, thinking about one-to-one tech, food, mental health supports, and making sure our learners, you know, have family meetings.
Okay, thank you. That's all of my questions, but I have a suggestion for the staff. Thank you. Thank you for answering those questions. Mr. Duffy, I think it would be a good idea. I see we have a large staff now for oversight.
Yep.
Some of our best people are on that. That's great. I love seeing that. I'd just like us to add, if students are leaving the charters and coming back to our schools, we need to find out why. We need to start documenting that and creating that knowledge, that base of knowledge because I don't think we're doing that enough, where we're actually having an exit interview with those or an entry interview, especially if they're coming from a charter, about why. That's all. A simple, open-ended question and we just keep that. To create this knowledge, we know why and we know what's going on there because, I mean, that's the piece for me that's missing. So anyway, that's a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Lada, and we would love to be in partnership with the district as we all work to find that information. Thank you for that suggestion.
Okay.
Thank you, trustee Lada. Trustee Cuevas?
How many questions, if you may, I'm sure.
Thank you, trustee Cuevas. Trustee Panas?
Thank you, President Hernandez Jarvis. I do have a few questions. I'm looking at slide nine, faculty demographics. What percentage of your staff is Black, Indigenous, or people of color?
Thank you so much for that question. Jureem, do you have that pulled up?
I don't have exact numbers, but I will say that if, like, looking at the eye test, we probably have more than half people of color on our staff, more than half.
Okay, thank you. I'm looking at slide nine about the California dashboard. Do you have any subgroups where both indicators are orange or below?
A great question. I don't have that information right in front of me, but we could provide it in our report after tonight.
Okay. I have a question for staff on that same subject. The entire, sort of, the major part of the rating system for charter renewal seems to be based on the California dashboard. And here we have a new school and students take the state testing in seventh grade, eighth grade, and 11th grade. And so, am I correct in assuming that we have two years of testing results for like the current cohort? Although you've got more seventh and eighth graders who take the test every year. Is there any provision in the, I didn't see it in AB 1505 that talks about this particular predicament, like we don't have CASP scores for the current class that's on its way to graduation?
So the answer is there is not a provision in AB 1505 that was a oversight in the way the rules were designed. We have already put out additional requests for information from Summit regarding some of their performance because those assessments are not available and staff is looking to what other assessments and indicators they're utilizing so that we'll put that in our staff report as well.
Okay, thank you. And along those lines, I'm wondering, use the NWA map. And I'm just wondering, do you see much alignment or much predictability between MAPS scores and CASP results, at least for seventh and eighth grade?
Yeah, thank you, trustee Panas. Previously, we did use the NWA. This year, we are not. As we mandated, but when we used it, we did see a correlation between being an early predictor of what aspects were something.
Okay. Looking at slide 13, am I correct in thinking that the average cognitive skill score of six on the graph would indicate a student to the 12th grade level?
Yes, it is.
Okay, fine. I just wasn't quite sure about that. One of your stated outcomes is that every student graduates, every student who graduates is accepted to college. And that's like an awesome goal, but I'm just one further question. Can you tell me what percentage of them are A to G eligible?
All of them are A to G eligible.
Oh, they're all A to G eligible. Okay, okay, thank you. Slide 16 about restorative practices and school culture. On that graph, does 20% mean that 20% of your students have been suspended at least once?
Formerly, yes. In that second year where we were really rebuilding, building our culture.
Okay, so that is okay. And now you're at, at least the last year where we have official results, looks like you're eight or nine percent. Okay.
And that eight or nine percent doesn't mean that situations didn't happen on our campus. We just have a bank of restorative practices, projects that students do. We gave way for teachers to be able to have one-to-one check-ins with their students after school and really worked on a unified response. So we were really intentional about getting that number down while teaching the student how to reorient and really be accountable to the community for their behavior.
Okay. So what's your chronic absentee rate currently?
So currently, I apologize, I'm just going through a bunch of different slides that I have here.
I mean, our teachers' union said it was 13%. I'm wondering if you agree with that number. I don't know what year that's from, although I'm guessing it's 2018, 2019, 2020. And I'm just thinking about how that fits in with your very high ADA number. And they're not impossible, but I'm just trying to understand how those two numbers play out against each other. But if you don't have that, maybe you want to get back to the board.
Yeah, if we can get back to you because I'm trying to find it and I want to get that number down.
Where do you stand in terms of the grading practices that Joe Feldman describes in Spoke Grading by Equity? And I'm actually particularly interested in whether you're doing mastery-based grading.
Thank you for that question. We do do mastery-based grading. What we do is we grade our students on that cognitive skill rubric where teachers can pinpoint exactly on the rubric what needs improvement and where students have mastered. And so we give a high level of feedback of 110 students in a grade level. They're getting feedback weekly because we really know with feedback, that's what changes behavior.
Okay. And my last question, on slide 21, you talked about major improvements, percentiles for special education students with disabilities. Are those scores you're quoting, I mean, are they CASP, BLA, and math scores or something else? What other scores you're quoting on slide 21? He said 35th percentile, 53rd percentile, then up to 60th percentile. On, of what?
Thank you. Just give us one second while we look at. We don't.
So for the performance on what is CASP?
That's the state testing.
Yes.
Yeah. So those are CASP numbers?
Yes.
Okay, are they math or English? Okay, are they math or English, or are they combined?
Uh, they're combined.
Okay, those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Panas.
Trustee Panas, um, Trustee Phillips? Sorry, Ms. Jackson.
Uh, hello. Um, so I don't have that many questions. Um, my first question is, how many graduated classes have you had?
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. We have had none. We have eleventh graders that are on track to graduate next year.
Okay, so you guys started in sixteen?
We got started in fifteen. I joined a year after, um, the school was started.
So when did students start coming?
Students would have started coming in twenty fifteen.
We started with seventh grade, Mr. Phillips.
Okay, thank you. You saw me trying to do math.
And I was doing math too. I'm like-
Yeah, no, we started-
I didn't graduate by now.
Thinking about my kid and everything, like, it's been three years. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you. That cleared some things up for me. Thank you very much.
We started with the middle school, and then once they, uh, progressed to high school, then we opened up the high school.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, cleared something up. Um, so my next question is for each, I guess, cohort, so each grade of children that have come in since fifteen, uh, how many of them are still there? Uh, and I did look at the presentation, and I didn't see that, but maybe you have that information. Maybe you could send it to us if you don't, but basically, every time a new class comes in, like, how many of those kids, uh, are still there now?
Give us one second. I'm gonna look for that.
So we don't have it all the way from seventh grade to ninth grade, but in the ninth, in their ninth grade year, the twenty nineteen class, the assistance rate was sixty-eight, and then in twenty twenty, it went to seventy-three. Uh, but we can give you the class-by-class breakdown.
I would like to know the class-by-class breakdown. Uh, and I would like the class-by-class breakdown disaggregated, so, um, I just don't see the larger number of who stayed, but also who left uh, in the subgroups, uh, and I would like to know why, uh, they left. Uh, and those things are very important to me, uh, in, uh, in this process, so I really hope to see that information.
Mr. Phillips, we'll make, we will make sure that we get that to you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, and then my last question, uh, is if the district, uh, adopts new policies around, uh, charter oversight. So let's just assume, uh, that, uh, your petition is, is granted and you renewed, right? So, uh, if the district were to adopt new policies in, say, a year or two around charter oversight, don't ask me what they would be, because this is a hypothetical, and I don't know the answer to that. Uh, but if the district were to do some work around, uh, charter oversight to kind of strengthen that, uh, area, uh, would your school, uh, agree, uh, to actually follow those new policies even though the renewal was already approved?
Thank you for that question. Absolutely. We want to be transparent. We want to be working with this district. We want this district to be proud that we're here, and so we are all for, um, additional oversight and partnership with, um, the school district.
And well, thank you, and then that leads to, there's a third question now. Um, questions, we get questions.
Yes, we do.
Would you all actually be willing to put that, uh, either in the petition or any MOU that you enter into, uh, with the district? For your renewal?
Of course, we check everything through our legal team, um, but that seems like something that we would be able to do. Um, because again, we truly believe in partnership with our district and oversight, and so we are not trying to hide anything. Um, and we want the charter schools that you do approve to be ones that you're proud of.
So can you do me a favor as well? Uh, can you make sure that you do check, uh, that, um, and that that information, uh, is ready for the next time that you guys appear before the board, because that is important to me as well.
We can, Mr. Phillips. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And that concludes- Mr. Phillips, we're gonna create a running record of the questions that we're gonna send out as a matter of a public document to Summit. That'll be part of the staff report as well.
Thank you very much. And that, uh, President Hernandez Jarvis concludes my, uh, comments and questions.
Thank you, Jesse Phillips. Um, I don't have any questions or comments at this time. I think that, um, trustees, Lotta, Trustee Panas, and Trustee Phillips asked a lot of, uh, questions that I think, um, we're clarifying. Thank you all. Thank you both.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So with that, we have, uh, completed the first discussion item, and we're moving on to the, no, I'm sorry, the second discussion item and last discussion item, and we're going to the first action item, F1. Um, approve the Lake Elementary School Campus Replacement Educational specification. Um, I want to give a little overview. Um, I know that I think Superintendent Duffy will likely give an overview as well. Um, I have to refresh my page very quickly. Sorry about that. One second. And so at the last, at the last board meeting, um, we had we had a, an action item. We, we actually talked about this, and, and it was voted down. Um, and it was pointed out to me that in order to actually have this item, I had requested for it to come back after having a meeting um, and learning more, um, from, uh, Mr. Bonner, the principal at Lake Elementary, about the planning and, and what's going into, um, the instructional planning of, of this. So I wanted to give an opportunity to bring it back to the board for consideration, and then I learned that actually bringing it back would necessitate for us to have a motion to reconsider, because it was voted down with the majority of the board, board voting, including myself. So if you look at the PRC and the comments, it says that before hearing this item, the board is asked to vote on a motion to reconsider. Specifically, the board will be asked to take votes prior to hearing this item. Um, the board is asked to vote to suspend the rules to allow the motion to reconsider at the current meeting, a meeting other than the one where the action, where the other action was taken. This motion requires a two-thirds majority to pass, so that would require four out of five, four members voting yes to reconsider this. And, and then the motion, the actual motion to reconsider, uh, the lake construction item would need to be, um, three out of five, so not, not a majority. Um, not the, not the two-thirds majority to pass, but just the regular three out of five four members. So I, I hope it's not too confusing. Um, Superintendent Duffy, would you like to explain, um, anything else that I may have missed?
Sure. Um, just to clarify, so we really heard two things at the last meeting. Uh, one was, uh, directive to make sure, uh, the lake community had enough community input around this project and to come back with more community input. We also did technically vote no on the item, and therefore, that technically closes the item. So we have to technically do a motion to reconsider, and that motion to reconsider is supposed to be done at the same meeting. So to do a motion to reconsider at another meeting, you actually have to suspend the rules, then do the motion to reconsider, then bring it back. So we did consult with legal counsel about this when this item was brought. Um, so the recommendation is to just go through that quick parliamentary procedure to make sure we're in firm legal standing, suspend rules, motion to reconsider, then hear the item.
Thank you, Assistant Duffy, and, and the motion to actually suspend the rules, um, has to be the two-thirds majority, so it actually has to be four out of, four out of the five trustees voting yes to do that. Trustee Phillips, do you have a question?
I have a, a question and a motion. I'll give you whichever one you want first.
Um, the question probably first, so that we can clarify.
Okay, so the design that is before us is the exact same design as before. That's the question.
Yes.
Okay, um, and do you want the motion?
Yes, if you're ready.
Okay, I move that we suspend the rules, uh, to reconsider this one item, or to be able to consider this one, uh, reconsider this one item.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Trustee Phillips, seconded by Trustee Lotta, to suspend the rules, uh, of order for this item. Can we please take a vote?
Lotta, yes.
Hannah, no.
Phillips, yes.
And this Jarvis, yes. So the motion passes with four, five. It does carry the, um, majority of two-thirds of the board, and now we need to have, uh, another motion.
I move for reconsideration of the item.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Trustee Phillips, seconded by Lotta. Can we please take a vote?
Lotta, yes. Oh, yes, yes.
Hannah, no.
Phillips, yes.
And then the service, yes. Motion passes a four yeses, one no, with Trustee Panas voting no. So then we, we have done the first two motions that we needed to do, one to suspend the rules, and the second to have a motion to reconsider. So now we can have this item presented.
Great, okay.
So tonight, uh, Ms. Mihia Hooper's with us. Uh, she's gonna give us a brief presentation on the community outreach and our outreach to the parents of the lake community.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening, and thank you for having us again tonight. Uh, we'd like to bring back the Lake Elementary rebuild. Uh, just to remind the board on the overall plan, uh, looking at this from the eleventh and twelfth street perspective, this is a conceptual design that includes the, um, kindergarten preschool complex, office, community support, and library building, two learning suites for the first through sixth grades, and a, um, stage dining and kitchen area, um, as well as the redo of the grounds that includes new drop-off, um, and parking, as well as additional staff parking from a Manchester access point, uh, new playgrounds and field. As far as additional outreach goes, uh, we did two lake huddles on November twelfth, one in the morning and one in the evening, and I'd like to thank Mr. Bonner for, um, helping coordinate that activity. We had ninety-four families attend. Uh, after the presentation of the design of, including, um, a description of the flexible suites, we had a polling completed, uh, through the Zoom application, and ninety-seven percents of the responders uh, said they were supportive of, of the flexible design. We also attended the City of San Pablo, uh, city council meeting on November sixteenth, and, um, while it was not a decision item, the, each council member, uh, did express their support for the, um, project and design. Um, overall, our recommendation is to move forward with the, uh, lake project-specific edu- ed- educational specifications.
Thank you, Ms. Mihia Hooper, for the presentation. Um, and if we can go to public comment, because of, uh, this late in the hour, it is ten thirty-four, I would like to request for public comment to be, um, one minute, since we want to make sure we get to the, um, to the action items that we have left. Thank you.
Yes, um, so we're gonna start with Patricia Ponse. You may unmute.
Good evening, trustees. Um, I am here again tonight to speak in support of the Lake School rebuild project, and would like to request for you to approve this project so we can move forward with it. Um, I know that there was two presentations that, um, the principal invited us to, and there was a big turnout of parents. We wish there would have been more turnout, but being in the time that we live right now, so meetings are not very popular amongst, um, a lot of community members. But I believe that there was really good turnout. And when I heard the vote tonight, um, I'm really interested to know why Mr. Panas is voting no, uh, for this rebuild of the Lake School, so it's gonna be really interesting to hear from him of his wife. Um, and again, I just, I'm just here in support of the project, and, um, the, um, presentation in the building of the school was, again, very popular among, among the, the students. Before my time is up, I would like to, uh, tell Trustee Cuevas that I thank her very much for her service, and I wish her the best, and, um, also, thank you so much for always being in support of, um, Lake School and the community. Thank you, trustees.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Maria Ponse.
Hi, good night, um, trustees. My name is Maria Ponse. I am the mother of two Lake School Lions. I just wanted to let you know that I do support, and I love the option of flexible space learning, um, that will help my child, um, a lot. And, um, I'm here just to support the rebuild of Lake School. Um, this school really needs to be rebuilt, um, for our safety of our students, and because it is the right thing to do also. Um, I know that it will be rebuilt, uh, but we must move forward with the project. I think it has been way too long and it's past overdue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Maritza Luna.
Hello, uh, board members. Um, as a new parent to the Lake School, um, and also a mother to a kindergartner, um, I was very conflicted about sending my daughter to, um, our local public school. Um, but I can happily say that I feel very confident in the choice we made to send our child to Lake Elementary. We are seeing great progress in our daughter's learning, and she's even starting to read. So, um, I fully support the Lake School, um, rebuild, and also the flexible classroom design, which I think would be better, very beneficial to all the students and their learning, and I can't wait for my daughter to benefit from this, and our tax dollars, of course. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next is Adinia Ramirez.
Hello, my name is Adinia Ramirez. I am a parent of two students at Lake. Um, I am here to support the flexi- flexible design rebuilt for Lake. Um, me too. Uh, my daughter is currently in the sixth grade. When she started at Lake, I was very hesitant for her to go, and I know Lake loses a lot of, um, students because of the current condition, so I hope you guys support in, in this, uh, rebuild for Lake. Um, and thank you.
Thank you.
Jacqueline Dominique, Dominique?
Yes, hello. Um, my name is Jacqueline Dominique. I teach fourth grade at Lake Elementary School. Uh, Mr. Phillips actually had the privilege to come to my fourth grade class and read at my, uh, at our last African-American read-in, um, before the pandemic hit. So nice to see you, Mr. Phillips. Um, so hopefully my classroom was memorable, um, but as a quick reminder, um, I have a plethora of flexible seating options, beanbag chairs, wobble stools, standing desks, a bunch of different stuff, and, um, the flexibility has truly been a saving grace the past few years. Um, this is my six-year teaching, um, but in those six years, I've noticed a shift in my students' learning. Um, I've had to alter the style of my teaching and my classroom so that I can, um, help my students learn. And, um, with teaching this flexible model, I have seen an increase in engagement, comfort, and collaboration. Um, and these learning suites represent this, um, just the modern classroom. So please consider approving these specifications for our rebuild. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Monique Lopez Jones.
Hi, yes. Uh, my name is Monique. I am asking the board to approve the schedule flexibility in the classrooms at Lake. So not only am I an alumni at Lake, uh, but I'm also a parent of a first grader who is a fourth generation in our family to attend Lake. Um, I'm also a member of the community that lives within houses of the school, and the school definitely needs to be rebuilt. But the flexibility classroom will not only allow the students to get more small group and help, but the teachers can provide the flexibility within one classroom to provide the max support as possible to all of the students that need the different support in different areas. So as a parent of a- So as a parent of a student that can use the extra small group and support from the teachers, grad tutors, psychologists and other staff members, I am asking the board to please support the flexibility classroom so that our teachers and staff at Lake Elementary can give our children the best education, our children best education and support as possible that they need in order to succeed in their future. As well as, you know, the traffic around here, we, it, it can do better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jamie Brukers.
Hello, my name is Jamie Brukers and I'm asking that the rebuild plans be approved for Lake. I have been a teacher at Lake for six years and I am excited about the flexible model because I know that flexibility and choice are extremely important for a child's learning and engagement. This could mean flexible seating, which allows students to sit or stand in ways that help them focus better. It could also be as simple as allowing a child to choose the type of paper or pen they want to write with. Flexibility does not change with the curriculum, but enhances it. Having space that supports flexibility is absolutely necessary for our students. Classroom and school environment should also be prioritized. So I'm going to try to mention a few problems that we deal with at Lake. Imagine trying to learn or teach in, in a pod with so many students and no walls, just as an example. And we understand that the, the plans have already been approved, but we don't need to prolong the process. And the community has been giving their input for years by transferring their kids out of Lake. So please approve the plans to rebuild.
Thank you.
Zalon Harrison.
Good evening, guys. We did receive input and thank you, Mr. Bonner, for hosting those community meetings and parent input. And I'm praying the board supports us in getting our school, a new school for our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, last speaker, Arturo Cruz.
Hi, yes. Good evening, Madam Chair and School Board. This is Mayor Arturo Cruz from San Pablo. And on behalf of our city council, we sent a letter of support to rebuild Lake School. We ask that you support this item to continue the process to rebuild Lake School, which will also create many jobs in our community and help the local economy. Thank you very much. Good night and God bless you.
Thank you.
And that is all the comments.
Thank you, Mr. Aurelio, for facilitating public comment. And thank you to everybody who shared their public comment with us this evening. I want to remind the board that it's ten forty-four and we have another very important action item and other items to go forward. So if anybody has any questions or comments, now would be the time or we can be ready for a motion as well.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion. And Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve this item as presented for the rebuild of and design of Lake School.
Trustee Cuevas made the motion to approve and trustee Lada seconded to approve the, the Lake Campus Elementary School replacement educational specification.
President, I'd like to speak.
Yeah, I think, I think it'd be appropriate for board to comment on the motion and then I'd like to call the question as soon as possible, Madam Chair. I'll leave that to your discretion.
Thank you. So trustee Pana, if you could.
The trustee Laura or trustee Cuevas wants to speak first. So in my mind, you know, we live in the San Francisco Bay area, one of the most technologically advanced parts of the world. The design here proposing is very similar to what they did in San Francisco with the Dr. Charles Drew Academy. And they reproduced that a few times, but they stopped reproducing that. Beyond that, I want to make it clear that I'm taking my position because of how much I care about Lake. And I've gone out of my way to support it and be engaged there. You know, since I've been on the board, I've probably visited Lake ten or twelve times. Mr. Bonner will, will say that. I wear my Lake, Yellow Lake Lions T-shirt all the time. I visit classrooms, I practice my Spanish there with the parent group, talk to Mr. Bonner. I know I'm the only one who takes up donuts because they always say, you're the one person who ever brings us donuts. I, I personally raised twenty-five thousand dollars to buy books for Teachers College. I really care about this school. And, and that's why I'm feeling this way. I have a deep commitment to the school, but this is Lake's one swing at a new facility. They won't get a second chance. So it's key that we really understand what we're doing here. And I just consider it extraordinarily risky to invest in this school design without proof positive that actually improves student outcomes. And I'm really not interested in replicating what we haven't even piloted here. I'll also note that as we peer forward into a post-COVID world, I actually question the wisdom of purposefully implementing a school design that features placing larger groups to get, of kids together in a confined space. So that's why I'm taking this position. I really care about that school. I've raised lots of money for that school. I go there. I just feel like we don't even know if this works and here we're, here we're doing it. So that's, that's, I know everybody wants to know why I feel this way and that's why I feel that way.
Thank you, trustee Pana, for sharing that. I think that it helps to, to put into context your position on this item. So thank you for clarifying that and for sharing that with the community. So we have a motion on the floor now. It seems like we don't have any further comments. So if we can, trustee Phillips.
I do have comments. And I have a few. So the first thing that I want to say is that I really wanted to see more input from the community regarding this school. And I do realize that due to the current situation that we're in, you don't, you can't go to San Pablo Road for example, because those folks are not meeting in person. But there were two more community gatherings that were put together for the families. And we also went to San Pablo City Council and got feedback from the council persons. But it's not just the fact that we were able to get feedback from the council persons. That's also another public forum that people are able to watch on television or online because those meetings are broadcast as well. So while I would like to have gotten, I think even more feedback from the larger San Pablo community, I do see how it would be very difficult to do it under the current circumstances. So I do appreciate what was done additionally to accommodate some of my concerns about making sure that the community is actually have some say and input in what the design of their school looks like. The next thing that I want to say, and this is just kind of about Lake. I used to substitute teach at Lake quite some time ago. And Lake is a special place with special people, kids, families, administrators that have come and gone in that space. And to say that I do remember Ms. Dominique, your class. It was a wonderful class. I came to read to them and we ended up having an impromptu discussion about global warming, which totally threw me for a loop, but the kids were right there. And they were talking about it intelligently. And it was just a beautiful thing to see. I have a couple of, of questions and I think Mr. Bonner is in the Zoom. Is he here? Mr. Bonner, can he be promoted or is there some way that I could?
I'm here, I'm here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bonner. So the questions that I have for you are very few. And they are similar to the questions that I had for Ms. Velez over at Obama, who has a similar, or had, they have a school that has been built already. What Ms. Velez and Mr. Aurelio, this may be for you as well. But what Ms. Velez was talking about was the kind of instruction that goes on, you know, in this new space and the training that they went through to be able to utilize the space. And all of the things that they had to do to get teachers on board, she told me that there were actually some teachers who said for different reasons that they didn't actually want to teach, you know, at the school anymore because they were going to be transitioning to this new, I mean, it's the same material, but I, I just, based on what I'm hearing and I'm understanding, there's just kind of a different way that you do things and learning how to utilize the space properly. So I'm asking for you, Mr. Bonner, and I do have confidence in you. Are you and your staff fully committed to doing what you need to do to learn how to utilize the space properly?
I think that's part of the work of the early meetings when we met as a staff with Ellen. We talked about the spaces and how the spaces could be used and how we would transition from a more traditional model into models that were better fit for our students and provided us more flexibility. Do I think that there is going to be a need for us to transition and to better prepare and be trained? Absolutely. But I think we have the beauty of time, like this school will not be built for a while. So we have time to train people to really get consensus on what these models will look like, to also think about teacher leadership. And part of the reason that I really think that this is a way that we go is I want to be able to build to the expertise. A beauty of Lake is I also have veteran teachers who have been at Lake and are committed to stay at Lake and are committed to students. And this model allows us to be able to best utilize their skills and talents and experiences. So I think that this will be the way that we go. But I do hear you that, yes, it will require us to make some shifts and some changes to better fit, but I think that we're definitely committed to the challenge.
So one of the things, and not to compare you, but because this is the only other space that I have, this, so I have to talk about Obama and I have to talk about Ms. Velez because I don't have any other frame of reference. One of the things that she told me is that prior to them actually, well, they're technically not even physically in the space yet, just because of, of the COVID. But what she told me is that they were already moving into this model, okay? And that they were already kind of doing these practices without the building. And so when they get in there, it's going to kind of enhance what they're already doing. So it sounds like they have somewhat of a head start. So I would like to hear, I've heard Mr. Bonner say that, you know, he's committed, his staff is committed. But they can't do that, you know, by themselves. And so Mr. Aurelio, as the chief academic officer, or I mean, I know Dr. Wall, that you do work with Mr. Aurelio closely as well. Can somebody talk about the support that, because this is because we're not talking about doing a traditional building. We're talking about doing something different, which means that some of the practices that go on in there are going to be different. And the Lake community is going to have to get support to be able to pull this off in a way that's best for the children. So some of the people on that academic side of the house, you know, cabinet level kind of folks, Aurelio's, Wall's, the Duffy's, you know, can you talk for a moment about the commitment that we're making to Lake for them to be able to make this transition successfully?
Sure. So I can give the example of what was Wilson and now is Obama. We spent considerable time over the last couple of years and would do the same with the Lake staff to determine what was going to be the best fit for getting the staff ready. So we sent that staff or members of that staff to see models. We brought guest speakers in. Claudia herself spent a year with her assistant principal in a fellowship, visiting lots of different schools. And so, you know, there was a process that we put in place. She went through sort of an evolution with her staff of, you know, what was this going to look like? Did they need to fully restaff the school? Did they not? And at the end, some folks chose that this might not be the right place for them as they got closer. So, you know, we'll do the same process with the Lake community with Mr. Bonner, knowing that we definitely have a bunch of years to get ready, but really work with him and his team to think through like, what, what do you think is going to be the best? Here are all the options that we can provide to support you, to get you ready, different types of fellowships, visits, folks coming to talk with you, et cetera. And interestingly, at Lake, I know we haven't really talked about it, but they have a kindergarten building that's been like where folks have been figuring out this kind of crazy space actually together for so many years, which one might argue is actually too open, right? So we're actually even building a building that's less open in some ways for, for that space. But yes, we'll do a similar thing with the group and you know, work to get everybody ready, but we'll also take the lead from Mr. Bonner and his team on what he thinks will be best with all the options we can provide.
Thank you. That's very helpful. And I, you know, I know that I may be prolonging this, but the, this part of it, because we're not talking about doing a traditional school and this, what I'm saying right now is more for the public because we're not talking about doing a traditional school. This is part of what goes along with it, you know, it's, it's kind of like buying a fast car and not getting any training on how to drive fast. And then it's kind of like, what's the point of buying the fast car? And that's why I'm asking the questions around the training that they're going to get. And my last question really is for, and there's one more thing that I don't want to say and it's, it's to Mr. Bonner. Mr. Bonner, I know you worked with former principal Wendy Gonzalez, who I think is great. And I think that you do good work as well. And I know this is something that is different. This type of school that we're talking about. And I told Ms. Velez that one of the reasons that I was supporting the change at Obama was because I believe in her. And I can't necessarily say that about everyone, but I do believe in her and I, and I do believe in you, Mr. Bonner and in your ability. And I'm very thankful that you're willing to be here in the Zoom and commit to this process because it really is a process. The last thing is Mr. Freeze, and I, I don't want to be a downer, but this is very important as well. Mr. Panas raised the issue around the COVID and this kind of new world that we're in. I think that at some point this will pass. But if there is a reason, and I think you've spoken to this before, but if there is a reason that we need to change the makeup of the space, one, just to reconfirm that, that is possible. And two, what kind of financial expenditures would we have to make to really do something like that?
So just confirm, yes, the space will be flexible enough that we could redesign and turn it into some additional, traditional sized classrooms. It's really hard to say what the cost would be for that. Just really because of, depending on how far we'd have to go, you know, what would, what would be the parameters for redesigning and redistributing the walls, if you will, inside the building. So you know, traditional classrooms about nine sixty, the rooms we're building around are around eight forty, so they're just a little bit smaller. But the flex area is much larger than a traditional classroom. So it does give you the ability to spread out during these times of COVID. But that space would have to be reallocated as hallways were created within the building. So I can't really give you an exact number tonight.
If you were just gonna like ballpark it, spitball like, what are we talking about? Like if we were really, if we really had to go in there and change things? Are we, is it cost prohibitive to do that? Or what, what are we talking about?
Well, I would say it would be. I'm sorry.
What we're talking about, because actually even in the flex model, you might be able to bring more kids back because of the way the space flows. So, I mean, are you saying like, what would it cost to just ball everything in so that?
No, I'm saying, I'm saying if the flex model for some reason, and I'm not trying to be a downer and I'm not trying to jinx, you know, what Mr. Bonner is about to try to do. I'm saying if for some reason in the future, the flex model doesn't work or it doesn't work the way we thought it would and we decide we need to do a more traditional thing. I'm trying to ask what would be the cost or, and I know you don't have a number, but if we were to estimate, what would it cost to actually do the reconfiguration? Because I've heard you guys say that this is possible, right? But like, the truth is nothing's possible unless we have the But like, the truth is nothing's possible unless we have the money to do it. So what are we talking about really?
Thing before we go to cost, because I would say actually if you closed all the doors and brought all the walls down, like if you were in Obama, brought the garage doors down, closed the flexible walls, you, your school would look pretty traditional. You would have just a set of closed up classrooms.
So, Mr. Duffy, sorry to interrupt. It is eleven and we have other stuff that we also have to do. So trustee Phillips, I think, asked a very pointed question and I don't know if I'm hearing the answer already. Like, will it cost more money to actually put the walls down or something to be built into that?
Well, the walls would have to be built and so we would have to establish a budget for that. And to, you know, to be honest, I, I really can't put a hard number on it, but I would say it's probably less than a million dollars to do that work, depending on how extensive that it went. But, you know, depending on the reconstruct, reconfiguration, I mean, you would spend, you know, lots of money, but I would say, you know, just walling in the sweet area, you'd spend probably less than a million dollars to reconfigure that space.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Thank you, trustee Phillips, for your clarifying questions. I would like to see if we're ready to move along because it is eleven o'clock and I would like for us to vote.
I don't have any more questions or comments. They've been answered.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. So the vote, the motion was made by trustee Cuevas to approve, seconded by trustee Lada. I believe trustee Lada, you seconded the motion? Can you please take a vote?
Lada, yes.
Cuevas, yes.
Anas, no.
Phillips, yes.
Hernandez Jarvis, yes. Motion passes for yeses, one no. Trustee Pan is voting no to approve the Lake Elementary School Campus Replacement Educational Specification Rebuild. Thank you so much. Thank you, staff, and thank you, everybody, for your questions as well and comments. On board, it is eleven oh three. We have three action items and we have three consent calendar items that were pulled. I know we extended our meeting to eleven and unless we want this to roll over to the next meeting, I would really appreciate if we could extend the meeting by thirty minutes.
So moved.
Motion made by trustee Panas. Is there a second? Second, trustee Cuevas. Thank you so much, trustee Cuevas.
Because I just can't leave. I just can't let it go. I'm going to stay here till 3:00 AM in the morning. I'm kidding. I'm kidding.
Thank you, trustee Cuevas. Can you please take a vote?
Lada, no. Cuevas, yes.
Anas, yes.
Phillips, no.
Hernandez Jarvis, yes. So the motion passes, yeses to no. Trustee Lada and trustee Phillips voting no to extend the meeting to eleven thirty. So if the items that we don't get to today, we're going to have to table them. So I really want us to work as succinct as possible with our comments and questions, please. So the next item that we have is action item F two racial equity community oversight council recommendation. And this is noted as twenty minutes and I'm hoping that we are able to get through it in the twenty minutes. Superintendent Duffy, would you like to introduce this item?
I have a question.
Trustee Lada.
Yeah, I was one, I'm sorry. President Hernandez Jarvis, I was just wondering if we could postpone this one. I think it, you know, it's a brand new thing or I think it just would take a lot of discussion and I think I would like to have it at another time so that there would be plenty of time to discuss it.
Trustee Laura, I move to table.
Okay. Okay, I will second that.
So I would be okay with that. I just want to check. I know that we had a lot of people who were here for this item and who have been waiting the whole evening for this specific item. We have, we have the motion on the floor and I would love for us to even get started with the conversation and table it if need be. I know we have a motion made by trustee Phillips, seconded by trustee Lada. Can I hear from trustee Panas and trustee Cuevas very quickly before we vote?
There's no discussion on that.
Right. There's no discussion on a motion to table.
It's already tabled. Okay. Well, then let's vote.
Lada, yes. Cuevas, no.
Anas, no.
Phillips, yes.
Hernandez Jarvis, no. So the motion does not pass the table, this item? Thank you, board. So that means that we're going to get started on item F two. Thank you, superintendent Duffy. Can you please introduce this item?
Sure. During the LCP process, Healthy Richmond brought forth a recommendation to have a racial equity community oversight council. That was then taken up in governance committee. And then it was asked to be brought to the full board. So we're here. There's an attached proposal that was crafted by Healthy Richmond that the governance team had a chance to look at in one governance meeting. And now we're, we're here. So we've definitely had a little bit of discussion, a little bit of back and forth about it. But I know this is the very first time the full board is getting a chance to hear about it, think about it, talk about it. And that's, that's the intro to the item.
Thank you, superintendent Duffy. And if I may add to that, this has been a work in progress that has been happening for a few months now, conversations that have been happening in governance and so Healthy Richmond really wanted to partner with the district to bring forth this recommendation and the LCP. And this is the latest iteration of it and it's more profound and it includes the fiscal impact. And I would like to know if, if we could entertain, I know that Director Garza Carrillo is in the audience. So it would be great if maybe we could promote her to panelist so that we, if she's okay with that, so that we can have any overview if she would like to do so, in case board members have questions as well.
Just to be clear on, on the panelists, I mean, on the attendees, that Roxana Garza, is that who we're?
Yes.
Make sure I'm promoting the right person.
And if Healthy Richmond's director Roxanne Garza Carrillo would like to give a brief overview and then we can dive into public comment and then we can do questions from the board. Thank you so much, Director Garza Carrillo, for being with us this late in the hour.
Yes, you'll excuse my blanket in the back. It's been a long night. Yeah. So I think I'd like to first start out by thanking the governance committee for actually deliberating, deliberating on this, I think for at least three meetings. And the president Hernandez Jarvis is correct in that this was actually a recommendation that came before the board in June. And I think we also brought it before this board in March or April as well. So this is not a new recommendation, the, and not a new topic, as was suggested by trustees Laura and Phillips. This is actually something that has been in the discussion. And in fact, I came before this board and did a presentation as well. And I'm trying to remember what month that was. And so the recommendation is really to launch a parent student led racial equity community oversight council. The work that we've done with the consultation of the governance committee has been to clearly articulate that this oversight council would work in tandem with district staff. In fact, we have several district staffs that are listed in the financial impact section that we would closely coordinate with. We would also be working with the parent advisory committees and particularly ASAT, which wanted to do public comment tonight, but couldn't wait because of the late hour. But there, we've had discussions with a couple of the leaders of ASAT because they also have language around this kind of oversight group in their resolution and offered to, you know, closely partner. So it's, you know, and we also talk about in, in the proposal, working with the school families and the infrastructure that exists currently within those school families to engage parents and students who are interested in participating. So it wouldn't be a disjointed sort of process from the work, internal work that the district is already starting to work on around racial equity and the racial equity team and the consultants that, that are going to be hired by the district. It's going to be something where the district can actually partner with the community to move forward the diversity, equity, inclusion policy and can begin to define and discuss how to implement that policy. So I'm willing to take any questions.
Thank you so much, Director Garza Carrillo. And if, before we have any questions, if we can have public comment. Thank you. And we will do one minute public comment again.
Great. Our first public comment, Ianan Burrell. You can unmute. Ms. Burrell?
Thank you. This is Ianan Burrell, a twenty-five year resident of Richmond, and I have been volunteering with Healthy Richmond for over two years. I am here to support Healthy Richmond's third recommendation to launch a race equity community oversight council. It is often difficult to see the picture when you're in the frame. So through that lens, Healthy Richmond's proposal clearly states that the council will work in partnership with the district to meet the shared goal of increasing and improving services for groups that need to be prioritized in all work the district does. These groups are African Americans, foster youth, English language learners, low income. Without a partnership with the community voice, I believe it will be difficult for the district to do the work. Also, this proposal plans to address the academic inequities that have been existing long before COVID nineteen but are now hugely amplified, ensuring academic gaps are closed. I'm skipping because it's a minute. I didn't prepare the minute. Let me go down. From the slide that was shown tonight during superintendent Duffy's report to have only eighteen percent of African American students with hotspots continues to act, exacerbate the inequities and the chasm of learning loss. I know I'm out of time, just a second. In closing, I am a lived experience of the racial inequities that have been exasperated this society for several hundred years. The missing link to anything close to a resolve to moving the conversation from under institutional constraints and to have those who are closest to the impact and have lived the experience and affected by the inequities, not just at the table, but the fabric of the table. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cheryl Lane?
Hi, everyone. Thank you, superintendent and board. My name is Cheryl Lane. I'm the executive director at BBK. I also wear multiple hats. I'm a mother of a fourth grader in this district. I'm a Richmond resident. Want to quickly just state, I don't think we need to overcomplicate it, this matters, so I hope we don't. I hope the discussion is straightforward. We need to move forward with concrete solutions, practices and policies that move forward equity and inclusion. As the mother of a son, a black son in this district, he needs to be in a culture that's welcoming so he can achieve as well as be feel well socially and emotionally. And during this time, he's struggling, but and even pre-COVID, there were challenges there. So we have the opportunity to move forward policies. Our organization BBK is open to contributing to parent leadership for this council as well as other resources that we're looking to secure, that will, experts who are really primed with community building on equity inclusion. And so we look forward to working with everyone on this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Camacho.
Hello, my name is Sarah Camacho and I am a community member and the college access coordinator at the Ed Fund. I'm calling in today in support of Healthy Richmond's third recommendation to launch a racial equity community oversight council. I want to first start by thanking the governance committee for their consultation and partnership on this proposal over the last three months. This proposal is important because the council will work in partnership with the district to meet the shared goal of increasing and improving services for African American foster youth, English and English language learners and low income students. This proposal plans to address the academic inequities that have existed long before COVID nineteen but are now greatly amplified by ensuring academic gaps are addressed and results are measurable in order to prevent and remedy learning loss. We believe establishing the community racial oversight council will help eliminate structure, structural inequality in the educational system and bring the community into this policy and decision-making process. Thank you for your time and consideration. We will continue to work in partnership with you to meet the needs of our students.
Thank you.
Jordan Thompson. You may begin. Jordan Thompson, you're, you're unmuted. You can begin now.
I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay. Thank you. So my name is Jordan Thompson and I'm the director of mental health at Catholic Charities of the East Bay. We're a provider of support services to both children and families in the district. I'm also a parent in the district. And so I'm here today to support Healthy Richmond's recommendation to launch a racial equity community oversight council. So thank you so much for taking the time and for consent to the, thank you to the governance committee for the consultation and partnership on this proposal over the past few months. This proposal is really important because the council will work in partnership with the district to meet the shared goals of increasing and improving services for African American foster youth, English language learners and low income students. I also think that the process of discussing racial equity policies is incomplete until youth and parents are included in the decision-making process. And then we're racial equity community oversight council can provide the opportunity to develop a more formal structure to include parent and youth voices and all policies related to racial equity. So thank you so much. This proposal is really important to me because schools can be places of safety and healing for children in our community. And racial equity is a cornerstone for providing that healing. So thank you for your time and consideration of this critical issue.
Thank you.
V, though. You may unmute.
Hello, my name is V and I'm the campaign manager for Healthy Richmond. I'm here today to support our third recommendation to launch a racial equity community oversight council. I want to first start off by thanking the governance committee for the consultation and partnership on this proposal over the last three months. This proposal is extremely important because the council will work in partnership with the district to meet the shared goals of increasing and improving services for African American foster youth, English language learner and low income students. In addition, this is an opportunity to develop a more formalized structure. So parents and youth voices as well as leadership can be expressed through all policies related to racial equity. This proposal will also address the academic inequalities that have long existed before COVID by ensuring academic gaps are addressed. Lastly, this is a moment to lead with our values. We must prioritize the voices of students, parents to define how anti-racist, anti-blackness, anti-bias plans are developed, implemented, evaluated for direct, for direct impact. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Cheryl Lynn Magallanes.
Hello, my name is Cheryl Lynn Magallanes. And I am a community member of Contra Costa. I was raised in WCCUSD. I still live here. I still vote here. I'm here today to support Healthy Richmond's third recommendation to launch a racial equity community oversight council. This proposal is important, as stated, because the council will work in partnership to meet the shared goals of increasing and improving services for African American foster youth, English language learner and low income students. In addition, we know the district made investments in providing staff with racial equity training, but it is equally important that parents and students have a voice and a formal structure to support their voice. The process of discussion racial equity policies is incomplete until youth and parents are included in the decision-making process. And lastly, I came from WCCUSD K through twelve and as diverse as the student population was, the teachers were mostly white, teaching white Eurocentric histories, enforcing Eurocentric ways of learning and over punishing and over policing kids of color, especially black youth. Abolitionist teachers call this spirit murdering, murdering. So a racial equity council that works directly and collaboratively with parents and students should honestly be a no-brainer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carlos Linu.
Hello, board members. Carlos Lemos, Healthy Richmond and lifelong Richmond. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm here to support the Healthy Richmond and the Schools and Neighborhood Action Team's recommendation for a racial equity community oversight council, which we've been working on in partnership with many parent leaders and some student and community organizations and the governance committee. So a lot of people and a lot of people, when we present the scope of work, which you've all. So a lot of people and a lot of people, when we present the scope of work, which you've all should have a copy of, they all are happy to see some of a lot that's in there. And we've had a lot of good conversations of how to improve it. And unfortunately, a lot of people couldn't stay up this late to say public comment. They really wanted to. But so I appreciate extending the meeting and President Jarvis for keeping everyone on track. And, you know, I have family who are English learners. And so I appreciate the comments that Panas and Phillips and other board members of the urgency when in that federal audit. So let's not wait for a federal audit with no public comment to create this relationship to eliminate structural racism and so on. Have a good night and thank you, Quavis, for your service.
Thank you.
Yolanda Vieira Allen.
Good evening, Trustees and Superintendent Duffy and to the West and the West Contra Costa School families and community. My name is Yolanda Vieira Allen, and as an asset leader, I was is I helped to craft this recommendation and urge your support of it. It's so important for all of us to stay watchful, especially right now where when our economy is in such shambles and our district has this $30 million deficit. It's so important that we pay attention, especially to ensure that our children receive the support that's so desperately needed right now. It's time for us to be full partners, for us to step up to this moment to ensure that our resources are fairly and equitably distributed and that our systems are open and transparent. The Community Oversight Council offers us an opportunity to flatten our hierarchy, to create systems that will bring about transparency and hold us all accountable for its outcomes. I hope you adopt this work and join with our partners and with our students and our parents to enhance the achievement of our young scholars and so that we all really create systems that are open and accessible for all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Skylar Clark.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm Skylar. I'm a university student and founder of a club called Education Reimagine the Bay on campus. I'm also here to support Healthy Richmond's third recommendation to launch a racial equity community oversight council and wanted to thank the Governance Committee. Like it's been said before, I think it's important because it's going to work in partnership with the district and increasing and improving services for underserved students, especially African American foster youth, English language learners and low income. Particularly, I think this proposal provides parents and youth with platforms for leadership development as well as engagement opportunities, because this process of discussing racial equity policies is incomplete until everyone, especially youth and parents, are included. And not only is this important for ensuring that the discussion of racial equity policy implementation continues in a meaningful way, but this recommendation defines what a meaningful way should be, and that is through community engagement and prioritization. It's absolutely essential that in all these policies moving forward, but especially those related to racial equity and representation, that we foster spaces which value community input and moreover, the voices of youth which these policies directly impact. Youth should definitely have a stake in their education and have a forum through which they're able to advocate for their communities and themselves through racial equity, in particular, when it comes to issues of institutional racism. Students need to feel empowered and they need to have tools and spaces to affect real change toward their education. And I think this proposal is a great way to start. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our last speaker on this item is Leslie Reckler.
Good evening. I am wishing that a new board would get to weigh in on this. I'm not sure what could be done at this time. But since we're so close to a board change, I was hoping that, you know, this, this the typical policy has been to have discussion first and then bring it back for a vote in one meeting and at the next meeting. And I'm not entirely sure what could be done at that, but I hope that you'll take that into consideration. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you to all the public speakers who share their comments with us. Thank you for Mr. Mr. Leo for facilitating it. And Ms. Director Garza Carrillo is with us right now still as a panelist. I would like to begin, you know, by stating I don't have any questions since I've been on the Governance Committee working on this with Trustee Panas. And so I would just like to get started to give an opportunity for Trustee Leta, Trustee Cuvas, Trustee Panas and Trustee Phillips, if they have any clarifying questions. And I do want us to be as succinct as possible, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, I do have several questions that may be Trustee Panas and President Hernandez Jones, you can answer for me. Can you tell me what date this document came to the board for discussion?
Yes, so this document, the document itself, I think that it was part of the the Healthy Richmond's third recommendation that we saw in the summer when they did the LCP presentation. And Trustee Panas, feel free to clarify, or Director Garza Carrillo as well.
That's correct.
It was part of another document.
It was part of the LCP recommendations in the summer, correct?
Also, it says in here that this council would report to the Governance Committee. Is that correct?
Yes.
It also does not include any teachers or site administrators. Is that what you intended?
That's not correct. So if you read it, it says that there's going to be more. And if somebody can help me out to find it, there's going to be representatives from district staff. It's actually in the objectives. The first point, it says that the structure of the council will be further defined as a planning group is assembled in November and December. So the structured is going to be, you know, it's going to be parents, students and representatives from the district staff. So that includes teachers and principals. Feel free to add anything else. Director.
Says that this is going to create an office. Is that correct? It's going to create an office. Is that correct?
Yes, that is going to be a long term plan that the council will actually create an office of diversity, equity and inclusion.
And this council, this council will be able to coordinate policy. They'll be able to create policy. Is that correct? Because that's what it says in there.
Yes, and that, and you know what, that can be the comparison that can be made with that is with the when the Positive School Climate Resolution was created. It was created with the work of a committee specifically working on that. And so the work that is carried out by that office that now Ms. LaShante Smith, Director LaShante Smith is going to be leading. The hope is that this council will help to bring those fragmented bits of the work that the Office of African American Student Achievement and the Office of the Positive School Climate is going to work together in tandem to make sure that all of these things come together in the lens of racial equity.
And this document is going to cost us some money, but yet we don't know because it says to be determined. So we have no idea how much it's going to cost us, but we are asked to vote for it. Is that correct?
No. If you look at the document, page eight and page nine delineate how much it's going to cost. What's the estimation and where the funding sources will come from? And Director Garza Carrillo, if you want to expand on that, that would be great for clarity for Trustee Leta and the public.
Right. So when it came up to the Governance Committee at the last meeting, the financial impact was, there was a request from Trustee Panas to look at the financial impact. So we worked with the superintendent to look at the in kind contribution that the district could provide. And so the superintendent gave us the figure that you see there in terms of percent time from existing staff. So it's in kind personnel, so it's not adding new money to the district costs necessarily. And any new money that it would cost Healthy Richmond will actually fundraise for it. Now, we just had a conversation that we had originally asked for this to be funded out of the LCP. Since it wasn't, Healthy Richmond stepped forward and said, we would be willing to do the fundraising for the additional cost for this for this council. In addition, we've been talking with partners who are also looking at fund development that they are willing to do to support the parents and the students in their leadership role on this council. So no, I'm not asking for additional money from the district for you to vote on this evening.
And I have one, a couple more questions. Did, so you had a lot of community based organizations, CBOs, who participated in this, correct?
No, it was mostly, it was mostly talking actually initially to the parent advisory committees, talking with some of the staff of the district. And then, yes, our Schools and Neighborhoods Action Team, which is a cross sector team. It has organizations, it has district staff, it has one teacher from the district on it, did participate in helping to craft the recommendation. And as Yolanda stated in her public comment, she was actually one of those parents who participated in writing the recommendation.
And will any of these outside organizations donate money to this council? Or training or anything like that?
I imagine they will be providing some in kind support. Yes, correct.
Okay. And then among the people helping like with training or with the document, was Go Public Schools involved in this at all or any of their employees?
So Christina Baumgartner is on our SNAP team and has participated in the meetings leading up to this board meeting. Yes.
And who is she? What does she have to do with Go Public?
So I believe she works on policy, work for Go Public Schools.
She's employed by Go Public Schools.
Correct. Yeah. She's one member of our of our SNAP team.
Thank you, Trustee Leta, for your questions. And thank you, Trustee Garza Carrillo, for your responses too. Trustee Cuvas?
Just very quickly, ma'am, how much more time do we have? Are we going to midnight?
It's actually, it's 11:32. I really want us to make sure that we get this item. And I know this is your last meeting.
I'm just curious, what are we going to, based on the last extension? Midnight?
Last extension, it was until 11:30, I believe, 11:30.
Okay, so we're in the middle of this. I'd like to move extending this meeting, and I don't want to have to move it again. So I'm going to ask the board an hour extension. I thought we would take that, but just so we don't have to be interrupted again.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Trustee Cuvas. Motion seconded by Trustee Panas. Can we please take a vote?
No.
Cuvas, yes.
And a yes.
Phillips, no.
And then this is yes. Motion passes. Three yeses, two noes. Trustee Phillips, Trustee Leta voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I can just have some perspective and comments. One, I don't necessarily see this as any different around what's important to us and conversations that we've been for a while. Diversity, equity and inclusion is something that I've heard multiple members of this board talk about, that they wanted that to be a contribution to their legacy on this board. So for me, this is not a new issue. In fact, the district itself has been moving in this direction with all the different trainings we've been doing, with all the different engagement we've had with public, with all the ways we've even set money aside. To me, this is really organizing a space for folks outside of this board to be able to have a place. It doesn't replace policymakers. It doesn't replace board members. Board members are the only ones who will ever vote on policy at this level. So I think that's important. Number two, I think this work is important because, as I mentioned, there's this interconnection question that nobody's been talking about, which is, yes, we are all important. We are all people. We have our own legacies, our own community come from. But we are also sharing this space in this district. And this also becomes a place to do some of that coalition work of building more connection and understanding our, our ways that we need to center and give folks center opportunities because they haven't had them, but also to make sure that we're still staying connected as community. You run the risk when everybody starts to talk about their own group without knowing that diversity, inclusion, the diversity, equity and inclusion is the glue that holds all of us together. And the third thing I'll say is that we, it's not new to us to ever approve something without, with a fundraising component to it. As a matter of fact, I believe Trustee Phillips was there for one time to help us approve the school, the school kitchen at Perez and other places with a caveat for fundraising. So that is not new to us. And I'm willing, for me at least, to say that this would definitely be something that I would support in one of my final overtures on this board. I don't need to leave that in the hands of a new board. And I actually think that the fact that this board would say we want to not leave the superintendency in the hands of the new board completely to say we need to leave diversity and inclusion and equity conversations, diversity, equity and inclusion conversations to the new board, I think to me is a false choice. So I'm ready to support this. This is if you read the policy correctly. Mostly what it does is just organize a group to have space to help work with the district to come up with something. That's what it comes down to. This is to me a vote on our values around whether we really believe what we say. Now, that asked, I know folks to suspend their suspicions about other folks and other motivations. That is actually, I think, what will be the downfall of any type of work related to this. Because you can take that slippery slope and start applying it to race and ethnicity and sexual orientation. I don't like that group. That's at the heart of what we're talking about in terms of why I would support this effort. So I will be voting yes on this tonight. Ma'am, thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee Cuvas. Trustee Panas?
Thank you very much, President Hernandez Jarvis. So I want to, first of all, just second Trustee Quavis's comments about connectivity, intersectionality, this work that is so important here. I firmly believe we need to move this work forward. Many people have been advocating for this type of work inside the community, community partners for a long time, yet historically there hasn't been the willingness or the ability on the part of the district or even our bargaining units to push this work forward in a meaningful way. And I'm really excited that Healthy Richmond has brought this forward because they have a long history of unwavering commitment to anti racism and racial equity, partnering with community members and bringing people into the work, you know, viewing parents as leaders and partners, not seeing them as passive advisors. And additionally, we see students as active leaders in their own right and in their own communities. WCC, there will be, there will be staff on this, but WC staff have strong voice and power at multiple tables throughout the district. This committee needs to give equal power and voice to the broader community who is greatly impacted when negative practices persist. Their stories, experiences and truth need to be at the center of the work. So I'm thrilled just to be able to support this.
Thank you, Trustee Panas. Trustee Phillips?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment on this. I'm going to be looking at split screens. So I won't always be looking at the camera because I have notes elsewhere. So the first thing that I want to say is that I do support the district having a diversity and inclusion policy. I've said this in board meetings. I am restating it now. I think that that is a great idea. But I do have problems with the way this process is unfolding right now. And I will begin with what these concerns are. I did read the document. One of the first things that I will point out is that over the last, I don't know if it's been the last two meetings, but we have been discussing the contract with, I think it's Dr. Nowes. I don't remember the first name. But this board, this board did not pass that policy or pass that contract because we hadn't had enough information about what Dr. Nowes was to do. This board asked for a presentation from Dr. Nowes because this board, or the majority of this board anyway, did not believe that we should be entering into a partnership with someone to create a multi-year strategic plan without the board even having a presentation. Well, Dr. Nowes has written into this proposal that we are talking about today. The same proposal or the same person again that we, as a board, decided that we were not going to approve because we didn't have the information, but he's in here. The second thing that I want to say is I do not support us creating at this time a new infrastructure. And the reason why is because the things that we are supposed to be doing right now, we're not doing well. We have an ASAC committee that We have an ASAC committee that, uh, historically has not been staffed the way it's supposed to be staffed. That historically has not gotten the attention that it's supposed to be getting. Uh, now we have, uh, a director and things may be going, it seemed to be going in the right direction, and I'm very happy about that, uh, but we have committees right now that we're not focusing on, that we're not giving the attention, uh, that we should be giving. We have an MDA committee that, uh, is not included in the decisions that it's supposed to be making. Uh, or the, not decision so much, but it's supposed to be advising the board. Uh, but that committee, uh, is not serviced the way it should be. It's not, uh, respected the way it should be. We have a climate committee, uh, that was created out of the positive school climate, uh, resolution that we passed. I don't know when the last time it was, uh, that those folks actually met, which again is another committee that we have for our parents, for our residents, that's not being properly serviced. It's not good enough just to keep creating committees on top of committees, on top of committees, just so we can say we're doing something. But then the committees that we actually have are not being respected, they're not being included, they're not being serviced properly. But we create another committee so we can say, woo-hoo, we did something. And that's not what we should be doing. The other thing that I would like to point out is I think we're making a lot of assumptions about the governance committee. This board, uh, trustee Cuevas is here tonight. This is her last meeting. The next meeting is, for the rest of you, it's your last meeting as well. You are proposing that we put something in place for somebody else to do. And specifically right now, I'm talking about the governance committee, and we're making a lot of assumptions about the governance committee. First, we're assuming that there will even be a governance committee under to the next board. The next board may actually come together and say, you know what? All of us were elected and all of us came here to govern, and we want to do this work collaboratively and together. Um, and get away from the model of two people going into a corner and coming out with policies and pushing those on the rest of the board. Maybe the new board wants to work under a different model. Maybe there will be a governance committee, and maybe the two people who end up on the next governance committee, maybe they don't want to work with the CBOs that you're putting into this proposal. Or maybe they want to work with different CBOs. You can't tell the next, assuming there even is a governance committee in three months, you can't tell the next governance committee who they have to work with as you're going out the door. That's not the way democracy is supposed to work. In addition to that, another issue that I have is I don't like the idea of right. If we decide as a, as a board, uh, that we're going to enter into uh, a contract with a community-based organization to provide services, that's fine. That's something that we do all the time. We pass contracts every meeting that we have. But what we are doing with this is we are literally writing CBOs into our budget. And we are, based on this, and I'll explain why, but we're literally writing CBOs into our budget. Um, and without any real discussion from the people who are actually going to be making decisions in just a few weeks about whether, who we want to work with and why we want to work with, and it, that, that's not the way I think things should be done. And I heard a lot of comments around the funding. And, you know, but what I want to point to is page nine. And, uh, trustee Laura brought this up as well, about where this funding is going to come from. And yes, it does outline initially where it's going to come from, but there's a footnote on page nine. And it says, we quote, "We will seek the sustained funding from Local Control Accountability Plan, LCAP, that will be finalized in March twenty twenty-one and funded in July twenty twenty-one." So not only is there an attempt to dictate to the next board how they go about creating a diversity and inclusion plan, and I'm sure, um, that the people who are coming in just from knowing them would support a diversity and inclusion plan. But the problem here is this board is trying to dictate to the next board how to do that. That's the problem here. And not only is this dictation happening, this board is also trying to put something in to say how the LCAP fund is going to be spent six months after they're gone. I mean, that says we will seek the sustained funding from Local Control Accountability Plan. That will be finalized in March. So what we're really talking about is, yes, people may be donating things on the front end, but they are saying very clearly that after that initial in-kind donation on the front end, we expect you to be paying us out of the LCAP. And I don't think that that's a decision for this board, this current board, to make. Um, I don't think that that's right. Um, and then the other thing that I want to say is I asked for this item to be tabled. Not because I don't think that we should have a diversity and inclusion policy. And President Hernandez Jarvis, well, not because I don't believe, because I think we should. And by having this vote tonight, this is not going to get us a diversity and inclusion policy, but it's going to, you know, try to set out a path for other people to follow, and they may want to go a different direction. My request is this, and I already asked once, and it was, it was voted down. I am telling you, President Hernandez Jarvis, Mr. Panas, this came out of your committee. I am telling you, I am one hundred percent fully committed to us having a diversity and inclusion policy. I just don't want it to be done in a way where this board is forcing the next board to do it the way this board wants it done. If you would just step out on, 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 on a limb and just have a little faith, I promise you that I will push for a diversity and inclusion policy. I promise you that even when you're not on the board, if you want to help advise or make recommendations on what it would look like or should like, I would try my best to carve out some space for you to, 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 to be able to do that. But don't force your way on, on the next board. And you had, uh, Leslie Reckler call in and ask to be, to table, uh, this item. I've asked to table this item. Watching this meeting, Jamila Smith Folds has actually sent me uh, uh, an electronic message saying she wants the item tabled. The majority of the incoming school board is telling this board, will you please just let us act on this? It's not that it won't happen, but it's not democratic. What this board appears to be attempting to do, so if you could just trust that people are not, if we want to talk about trust, trust the new board, trust that this, the new folks are not lying about the desire to have a diversity and inclusion policy and that we'll actually do it. And I promise, I promise you, and you could, I live at twenty-three thirty-six Roosevelt Avenue. If, if, if the new board comes in and I don't work on this, you could show up and egg my house and TP it and everything else. But be democratic, don't try to force your way on the new board as you walk out the door. That is, uh, those are my comments. And I'm really asking, I know the motion to table died, I'm really hoping that the group would actually come back to that.
Thank you, trustee Phillips, for your comments. Um, I, I hear you. Thank you for, um, thank you, everybody, for your comments. I just want to say, um, some, some, you know, clarifications, um, for everybody. Um, to understand, um, this is not work of two people in a corner bringing it all of a sudden. This is months-long work that has happened in partnership and publicly notified in public meetings, um, via Zoom, of course, but it's, it's work that hasn't just happened with trustee Panas and I. This is work that Healthy Richmond has been pushing, this is work that community partners have been pushing, this is work that, um, student trustees, Garcia Avila and Cotton Blake have also been involved in. And so I think just to say that it is two people going to a corner, that is not factually accurate. And just like we brought the Lake Action Item back, I found out more information, I wanted to bring it back to the board for reconsideration because I believe that when we have that opportunity, we, we do it. Just like we started the superintendent search process, we didn't say, like, I remember that, you know, when we voted on things, um, I had your support, like, we had your support with this, and, and you were just commending the work that we did at this special meeting. So I just wanted to say that, you know, and, 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 and now in my general comments, um, after clarifying that, I think that we, you know, I am still sworn in, we're still sworn in, I'm not just sitting here until midnight, just for the sake of sitting here until midnight. Um, so until it is my turn to, to pass the baton over in this really, um, a public service to the next board, I think that I still need to do my part to support the long-term vision of having a school district that moves toward racial equity and, and has a clear commitment to diversity and inclusion at the heart of the work that we do. Um, I believe that approving this recommendation really to create the council will enable people to, you know, to, to have a voice in, in our communities and students, parents, family, staff, including principals and teachers, to say how we move forward. Um, I think this is very, this is a first baby step in the right direction, um, and I think this council is definitely not done. This is just about creating an opportunity for this to exist, for this space to exist. And, you know, people are going to, to be serving on the council. It's not like people are already selected or, none of that has happened. This is barely at the inception of it. And so the council will be created by the people, with the people of this very community we serve. And, and some of the larger goals of this council are to really help craft the, the next steps in creating a diversity, equity, and inclusion policy. Um, at the, at the governance committee, we wanted to do this, we saw that we couldn't just do it ourselves, that it had to be a community effort, that it had to be collaboration, that it had to be transparent, that it had to be long-term, and maybe take even a year to create. Um, we, we talked about, you know, creating an office of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and we saw it had to be a long-term vision that was not going to come out, out of, of, of governance at all. It was something that has to come from the community and the school district as a greater whole. And, and you know, the community continues to exist and continues to be and thrive even after the new board is sworn in. So regardless, the, the community continues to be and their work and their voices continue to be as well. Um, so I think that this is really about putting in the work together, and what's going to be different about this council is that it's going to bring together the fragmented pieces that have been brought to our attention through, you know, the creation of the Office of African-American Student Achievement, of Positive School Climate. What does it look like to bind all of this work and to really create a long-term, um, idea of what diversity, equity, and inclusion really are? And, and specifically talking about the LCAP, who does LCAP funding benefit? Who is it for? Why do we, why do we have, um, LCAP funding? Why do we look at low-income students, at students, um, of color, at students who, who are English and which are white? Why do we look at that? And so I would argue that this is not about dictating, but it's about collaborating to create. And how do we move away from institutional racism? That's a term that a lot of us use, um, at these meetings. And, and we, we talk about institutionalized racism, but how do we, how do we move away from systems that, um, I actually just, you know, continue to, to, um, to hurt kids? And, and I think I would say that we move to institutionalized systems that actually benefit black and brown kids, and we start moving toward anti-racist systems and anti-bias systems in our school districts and schools. So, so this is not about dictating to the next board. This is about saying, these are the first steps we need to take, and then you continue the work, and you help to shape it along the way as well. So this is not about power moves. This is about actually giving the community a place to, to have this space and to talk about how they want to shape the diversity, equity, and inclusion vision for our district long-term. Um, so I just wanted to, to clarify that, and I'm in full support of this. Um, I see that trustee Lada has her hand up. Um, so if, yeah, if, if we can just really look at this, at the work that it is and that we're called to do. And, and I think that this is a very important topic to not just say, we can put it off, we can table it to another meeting. Um, because there is urgency, there is very much urgency in this work. Um, trustee Lada?
Yes, uh, thank you, President Hernandez Jarvis. I have a question for Mr. Phillips. Um, Mr. Phillips, you know how we just went through a, a revote of Lake? And we brought it back, and we voted, we went through two votes to get to revote. Could the new board do the same thing with the vote, if we take a vote on this? Could they do that?
The new board could do that. Uh, yes, the new board could do that.
Okay, okay.
Thank you for that question, trustee Lada. Um, so with that, um, trustee Cuevas?
Just, just very quickly, the new board, any, any board can do that at any time, which is why I find it quite inauthentic, the, the chest pounding that we're having around this, because we all know that. So this is really about a power move on whether some side assumes there's a power move and another side assumes there's a power move, and I don't agree. And to me, trusted above consistency. This board made clear choices, that they said, no, we're empowered at this current, as this current board to do A, B, and C. But now, we want to make the same argument that it's wrong to do that when it's not convenient on a topic that I don't agree with. I have nothing to do with this policy. I didn't go to governance. Again, I will vote my conscience around the value of this work. And again, consciously knowing that there is power in who sits in these positions while they're sitting there, because they were elected, and who will sit in it. And the assumptions, again, that have been thrown out, even the way that we choose to frame this work is more evidence of why we need to continue. Because that's on purpose, that's intentional. That is what's wrong with what we see in our politics today. Is that we're framing things in a way that might be somebody's opinion, but are far from fact. And so for me, this is an issue again, where I'm ready to take a vote on this. Madam Chair, the same way folks were ready to take votes, uh, along the way on the superintendency, starting the superintendency search, on the way people wanted to take votes to even get rid of the superintendent, long time ago. And we use democracy as we did then, that was still relevant on that date, at that time, as it is relevant now at eleven fifty-seven on this date, which is a vote. So, Madam Chair, I'd like to move the question. I'd like to place some, uh, first, I'd like to place a motion that we, uh, move this item for approval.
Second the motion.
Motion made by trustee Cuevas to approve this item, seconded by trustee Panas.
President Hernandez Jarvis, I actually have a couple of more comments.
And did you, um, I just want to clarify, trustee Phillips, so trustee Cuevas, did you call the question to trustee Cuevas?
I'd like to call the question, but trustee Phillips, if he wants to have more time to state your point, which I think you've stated quite well, sir, but you are entitled to have more time, it'll just delay a vote.
Thank you, trustee Cuevas, for clarifying. So trustee Phillips, if you can, um, be succinct with your comments, please, and then we can take a vote.
So, just a couple of things. One, I supported the, starting the superintendent search process because I thought that it was right, the right thing to do, but I also supported starting the process uh, because it was clear, and I've made it clear through this entire discussion that the, that the process and all of the, the work and how the work is going to be done is to be left to the new board. And so that's why it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. Yes, I did say, and I did support this board starting a process, but I did not outline, and at no time have I outlined how the next board is to proceed. Not only did I not outline how the next board is to proceed, I actually made sure that the board members elect were written into the process so that they were being consulted along the way. That hasn't happened here. So that's something that is very different. The other thing that I want to, so if the issue is, and I'm going to make another motion, hopefully it gets a second, uh, if it doesn't, it doesn't. Uh, but if the concern from this board is that it wants to start the process of having a diversity and inclusion policy, then my motion, and somebody else can make it if, if, if they want to be the motion maker, but my motion is that the board vote to start the development of a diversity and inclusion policy, but let the next board to figure out how that process will be done. So if that's the thing that, like, this board is just wants to leave tonight and say, we voted to have a diversity and inclusion policy, I'm totally fine with that. But just let the next board decide the process of how that, that policy is going to be shaped. And that is a win-win. The people on this Zoom call get what they want, and the next board has the ability to actually shape that process. But you will be, you will have gotten the ball moving, and you will have done that. Is that something that would work for you, President Hernandez Jarvis?
Thank you for that question, trustee Phillips. That won't work for me, unfortunately. Thank you. So I would like for us to take a vote on the motion to approve that was made by trustee Cuevas and seconded by trustee Panas.
Lata, no.
Cuevas, yes.
Anna, yes.
I am going to abstain because I don't think this board should be doing this. And I think that this is a power grab. No, you know what? I'm not going to abstain. No, no, for all of the reasons that I just said, no, I vote no.
Hernandez Jarvis, yes. Motion passes three yeses, two noes, trustee Phillips and trustee Lata voting no to create the racial recommendation for the Racial Equity Community Oversight Council Recommendation by Health U Richmond in partnership with the Governance Committee. Thank you so much, Director Garcia Carrillo, for being up this late and to all the community who stayed up to participate and trustee Cuevas too for helping to extend the meeting. I know that this is your last meeting, so thank you. Thank you, board. And the work will continue with the next board too, and I'll be happy to partner up with anybody who would like to work on this together. Thank you. So the next, the next item that we have is the action item F three, Community Connectivity Wireless Proof of Concept Project. Superintendent Duffy?
I just need to ask staff, I mean, it's midnight. Now, where are we with this item?
So both Tracy and I have been talking about it. We think the preseason was pretty clear on the concept of what we're trying to do. We'd like to forego the presentation unless there are significant questions. What we're asking for is we're going to use CARES Act to do a proof of concept to try to address the digital divide and move forward towards removing long term cost of hotspots by having community wifi for our most needy students. And we want to prove that we can do this, do it well. We've already got the potential agreements with both the city of San Pablo and the city of Richmond to create MLUs to use the same infrastructure backbone to make this work. So we're asking the board to approve a contract with the Infinity. And we did make a mistake. We posted it in the consent as well as where it should have been on this action item. So we apologize for that mistake. But the idea is use CARES Act, one time money that expires in December thirtieth to do this RFP, proof of concept. Try to address the digital divide.
Thank you, Dr. World. Is there a public comment for this item, Mr. Adilio?
There are no public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Adilio. So do any board members have any questions or would like to? Trustee Panas?
I think trustee Laura had a question.
Well, I would just like to move to approve this item.
Motion made by trustee Lata, seconded by trustee Cuevas. Does anybody have any questions before we?
My only question is, are we, are we picking back, piggybacking off our existing fiber or are we doing something else here?
So we would actually be utilizing fiber that the cities have laid down. There may be some areas where there is no fiber. And then in that case, part of our RFP would be that we would lay down that fiber to make sure that we get the backbone in that place. We're going to start with the most dense areas, get a proof of concept, prove that it works before we come back to phase two to expand the project. We would then
We have fiber that goes to every school, right?
Yeah, but this isn't school. This is going out to the community. This is taking it to their homes.
I see. But like, okay, fine. Okay.
Thank you. Can we please take a vote?
Lata, yes.
Cuevas, yes.
Panas, yes.
Phillips, yes.
Hernandez Jarvis, yes. Motion passes to approve the Community Connectivity Wireless Proof of Concept Project.
Thank you, trustees.
Thank you, Dr. World. The next item is item F four, the last action item before we go to the consent calendar items that were pulled. It is the agreement for the design and construction of the Riverside Elementary School Critical Need Soil Stabilization Project between the West Contra Costa Elementary School District and C over, Overa and Company.
So tonight, so the question would be, if you'd like to do further presentation, we can do that as well. Otherwise, I can go through the presentation. But basically, this is a design bill contract for overseeing company to design the soil stabilization project for Riverside Elementary School. It is a lateral spread restraint element design that will stabilize the soil to eliminate liquefaction effects on the buildings that run along Wildcat Creek.
Thank you, Mr. Freeze. And I know that we do have a presentation. If we could put it up just so that we can have it visible for the public too. And the staff recommendation is to approve the agreement. Can we check if there's public comment for this item?
There, there are no public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Adilio. We can go ahead if there is any questions from trustees.
Move this item?
Motion made by trustee Panas, is there a second?
Second.
Second of a trustee Lata, no questions then from trustees? Can we please take a vote?
Lata, yes.
Cuevas, yes.
Anna, yes.
Phillips, yes.
Hernandez Jarvis, yes. Motion passes unanimously for the agreement for the design and construction of the Riverside Elementary School Critical Need Soil Stabilization Project. Thank you, between the West Contra Costa and the High School District and C Overa and Company. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeze. And now we're going to go to the three items from the consent calendar that were pulled. And it was C two, C four, and I believe C six. Yes, so we can go to C two, pulled by trustee Phillips.
So I'm assuming C two is contracts and part of the problem was we had the Infinity contract listed in there. I don't know if that was the issue for pulling it. And just to prove that previously.
Trustee Phillips, your mic is off. I don't know if you were talking a little bit earlier, but your mic is off.
Infinity was one, and I realized we just did that. I will say about the Infinity proposal, I saw in there that it says that the CBOC is going to be reviewing bids. I don't think that that is their role. I know that they do have oversight functions, but they don't traditionally see, receive bids. And I know that this is going to start sometime down the road. So this board's not going to even be dealing with that anyway, but I'm just saying to staff who is still going to be here that please do not submit the bids to the CBOC to review. That's, that is not their role. That was my comment for Infinity. And then the Youth Code Now contract. What I wanted to to ask was how this org was selected to do this work. And the reason that I want to ask how they were selected to do this work is because there are a lot, I don't say a lot, but there are several orgs here that have been doing work with local kids. So the Social Engineering Project is one and Code Nation is one. Black Girls Code is one. So there are multiple orgs that do this work. And I'm just wondering where any of them considered, how did we just get to this one organization in that? So that's, that's the question. Can someone answer that?
Mr. Phillips, I'm going to have to get back to you on that. It is pretty late and wanting to text Martine Blake at this late hour to get the response for you.
And I know it's part of the after school program, so I know they work with a set number of providers for a lot of the different pieces. So I don't know the answer as well on how it was that group. But I know that there's sort of a fixed group that tends to work with the after school programs.
So like, I know that, like, for example, Code Nation is working or going to be working with BACR, who, you know, is one of our providers. So like, this is work that they do. So that's why I'm trying to figure out, I know that there's a connection to the egg fund. So I'm just trying to figure out, like, you know, there are people in this space that do this work and have been doing this work with our kids. And then like, poof, you know, they're here. And so, you know, as we move forward, doing this, you know, kind of work, and they're focused just on the younger children, is that correct?
Correct. It's elementary schools for this project. I I can tell you at the next board meeting, we're going to be bringing something with mastery coding for an esports initiative on SEL. So there are multiple things in this space and we look at each one based on the clientele that we're trying to reach.
Okay, so as we continue and have additional conversations around coding and and extracurricular activities that children could get related to this. When we know, and maybe that's the issue, maybe staff didn't know. But like, reach out and and ask, because I could have, like, just ticked off a number of folks who are in this space doing this work and who are already working with our kids. And they should be considered for things like this. So if we do more, or we do high schools, for example, like Code Nation is going to be working with Kennedy, or at Kennedy through BACR. But we just ended up doing this. And I don't think that's the way we should.
And and we do a partnership recruitment. Martine Blake has done a really good job of putting out an entire protocol for partners to put proposals together to do work with us. So if there are people that didn't hear about that, if you provide the information to Martine so that she can provide that partnership criteria, so they can submit, so that they are considered. That is the protocol.
I I will, I will do that because we have a lot of folks here who are doing a good work and they should be considered.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. Thank you, Dr. World. Is there a motion then to approve this item, trustee Phillips?
I will move this item.
Is there a second? Second of a trustee Panas, can we please take a vote to approve C two?
Lata, yes.
Cuevas, yes.
Anna, yes.
Phillips, yes.
Hernandez Jarvis, yes. C two is approved unanimously. Thank you. The contracts. The next item that was pulled is C four, and then we're going to C six, and that's the last one.
So I pulled this item because, you know, the red budget resolution we passed said that every month is supposed to get an updated cash flow projection for the unrestricted general fund. And just like last month, we ended up here with a cash flow, a cash flow for the entire general fund. And I just, the board and the public are shortchanged. We don't see just the unrestricted side. So I hope in the future, the board will get what was promised and what was in the resolution. With that being said, I was curious about, what's the ADA and unduplicated assumptions that support our expected level of LCFF funding for twenty one, the year twenty twenty one through twenty two, twenty two?
So right now, we're in a hold harmless situation where we will still get the higher of the current year or the previous year. Since this year is a hold harmless year, we're back to the nineteen twenty year for two years. What that means is any changes that occurred in those two years will actually impact dramatically your twenty two, twenty three NYPD. We believe that there's going to be the need to address some inequities with CDE. Tomorrow, we're doing a fantastic immunization drive. Those students have not counted in our ADA yet. I'll tell you right now, I plan to submit a J thirteen to the State of Ed, State Board of Education to get paid for them. And I plan to do so extremely publicly to make a point that the state has not taken care of our students in this environment. And so for that reason, we're not going to adjust our NYPD yet, because I do believe there's going to be some adjustments that are going to happen. But the answer is twenty two, twenty three, we could see the results of declining enrollment. But, and I'm going to say a big but because I think this is important and this will be part of the first interim. While we had a decline in kindergarten, like everyone in the state did, those kids probably exist. They're sitting at home not being served. They're going to show up in September, in August next year. And it's going to change our whole piece. And so we're already planning that they exist and we're going to be ready for them. So I think you're going to see that this is an anomalous year and next year will be a much different baseline year.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to move C four.
Thank you. Trustee Panas, is there a second for C four?
Second.
Second of a trustee Cuevas, can we please take a vote?
I actually have a question.
Trustee Phillips?
So, Dr. World, when I was reading the the cash flow projection, it had a negative balance. And what confused me, and perhaps you could explain this, and I understand that the budget and the cash flow is not the same thing. But we've heard multiple times that we should be ending the end, this year with a small surplus. And so what I, what I don't understand is how can we end the year with a small surplus? But at the same time, have a cash flow projection that is showing negative. How can we be ending the year with a small surplus and at the same time be having to get advances from the county and borrow money from the county? I don't understand, and I'm not an accountant, but I don't understand how those things could coexist. So if you could explain that, I'd appreciate it.
It's a fantastic question. I'll give you the two minute answer and the twenty minute answer at first interim. But if, hopefully the two minute answer will suffice tonight. Simply put, the state of California is not going to give us our paycheck for the months of February through June. That is equivalent to seventy five to eighty million dollars we're not going to get in cash in our bank account. However, they're requiring us to put it on our books as if we have it for budgetary purposes. So what that means is that when you look at the actual amount of money, if you think of budget as cash, we don't have any money in our wallet, but we have a giant IOU in cash. And so what ends up happening is where we're going to have reserves that are over forty five million dollars at the end of June that we're going to close the books with. We're going to be ten million negative in cash because we're waiting for the state to actually send us that IOU. We will borrow some, some money. We'll bring a resolution to the board in March to do some borrowing because the state is doing deferrals. Now, they may change. There's some news that there may be some changes and I'll talk about that next month. But as of now, we would not have enough cash in the bank, even though we'd have fund balance of forty five, fifty million, we would be negative cash on that day, we would have to borrow. So it has nothing to do with budget. We are fine this year budgetarily. Our problem is two years from now, not today, but cash wise, the state is not giving us money.
Okay, so just so I understand. And on paper, right, we have a surplus or we will have a surplus on paper because the state is requiring us to basically act like we have the money. But we really don't. And so it's technically true that we have a surplus, but it's really not because we have to get advances from the county. At some point later this year, we're going to have to borrow money. Because like you said, we're not going to be getting the funds from the state. But so it's not really, this is helpful for me. It's it's not really accurate that we have a surplus. It's it's on paper, but the money's not really there. That's, that's what I'm hearing.
It it, it's hard to explain. It's one of the more complex things I've ever had to explain to people that we have to show that we earn that money. Think of it as paying your taxes. You have to pay taxes on money you never got. And you're sitting there going, how's that fair in any way? But it allows the state to make a budget cut without actually making a budget cut. Now, what they do is they have to owe us double the money the next year. I don't think they're going to pay us. So I'm already planning that we're going to have to borrow again in twenty one, twenty two because it's going to take them a while to catch up.
No, I think, I think I get it. And I just want to make sure that I got it and I want to make sure the public gets it as well. That on paper, we have a surplus because they're telling us we have to put it on the books. But the truth is, we don't really have the money. And at the end of this year, we actually will end in the red, even though it's going to show we have a surplus because the money's really not there. That's, that's, okay.
It's the state, it is not us. We're doing our, we're doing it right.
I I got it. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a shell game. I got it. I'm done.
Thank you, sir.
Phillips? And so there was a motion, I believe, that was made by trustee, can I be reminded again, trustee Panas or trustee Phillips? Trustee Panas, and it was seconded by? Trustee Panas, and it was seconded by trustee Lada, was it? Could somebody confirm, Mr. Duffy?
I don't remember.
It technically doesn't even need a vote. It's just receiving information.
That's true.
I'll second it just in case it doesn't matter.
Trustee Phillips, let's take a vote, board.
Yes, I think. My final vote on this board, yes. Thank you, everyone.
Hannah, yes.
Phillips, yes.
Hernandez Jarvis, yes. And again, this for information in the consent calendar. That was item C4, update on cash flow. And the last item that we have that was pulled by trustee Phillips is.
I thought that was the last item.
C6, no, this is the last one. This is the trustee Cuevas.
You can't leave.
I'm not as good as you guys, staying up late anymore. I just lost it a long time ago. I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay.
Let's go, yeah.
Disproportionality, item six. And that was pulled by trustee Phillips.
I pulled the item for the same reason that I raised last time. I think that these policies give us an opportunity to make some systemic changes. And I think that the community should be part of, and particularly some of our community committees like ASAD, MDAK and whatnot. And I think they should be part of the process. They're not. That's why I pulled it. But it could be moved, and I'll vote accordingly.
Is there a motion to approve this? Thank you, trustee Phillips, for your.
So moved.
Second.
Move by trustee Panas, seconded by trustee Lada. This is the trustee Cuevas, this is the last vote. Can we please take a vote?
Lada, yes.
Cuevas, yes.
Hannah, yes.
Phillips, no.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear trustee Cuevas's vote.
That was a final yes. For the last time, yes.
Yes. Hernandez Jarvis, yes. So that passes four yeses, C6, board policy updates due to significant disproportionality. With trustee Phillips voting no and sharing his input regarding involving committees to be part of these, making these policies, updating these policies. So thank you, trustee Cuevas. Thank you. I know this is your last meeting here with us. Thank you for staying this late or this early.
Okay, in the morning. But just real quick again, I wish you all the best. Thank you to my fellow colleagues on the board. You truly made me a better person for this experience, and I'm definitely going to always cherish and be thankful for the experience. No matter how we agreed or disagreed, please know that I always wish you the best. And we'll always be pulling for you and your endeavors moving forward, whether you stay on this board or not. And thank you, superintendent, for just being on this journey as well. And thank you, Dr. World, Mr. Freeze, Ms. Haney. You are the one that does everything around here, and I just want to give you recognition for that. Thank you, Ms. Haney. I have to say, I think I'm going to miss you the most. You've just been so great to me. Have a good night, everybody.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Much. Thank you. Meeting's adjourned at 12:24 a.m. Thank you, everybody. Stay safe. Have a great break with your family next week. Have a great holiday season. Thank you. Thank you, trustee Cuevas. See you all one more time, December 9th. Thank you. Meeting adjourned 12:24 a.m. Thank you.